Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will please come to order. Would the clerk call the roll? Please to establish a quorum.
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan. Councilmember Laloe. Councilmember Telemontes. Councilmember Valenzuela. Councilmember Maples. Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Mayor Protem Vang.
I'm here.
I expect Vice Mayor Gata momentarily. And Mayor Steinberg.
I am here. Councilmember Kaplan, would you please lead us in the land acknowledgement and the pledge of allegiance?
Absolutely, everyone. Let's begin with the land acknowledgement. Please rise for the opening acknowledgements in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands. To the original people of this land, the Nisanon people, the Southern Maidu, the Valley and Plains Miwok, the Putwin-Wintune peoples, and the people of the Wilton Rancheria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe, may we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us, still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands, by choosing to gather today in the active practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous people's histories, contribution, and lives. Please stay standing for the pledge. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for
Well, good afternoon, everyone. Let me welcome my colleagues, the city staff, and most importantly, of course, the members of the public. Let me give a special welcome to our former colleague here, Councilmember Jeff Harris. Welcome to you. We have a very important agenda today, and we will get to it forthwith. We are going to take up issues relating to homelessness, our unsheltered population. Specifically, we are going to discuss Councilmember Valenzuela's initiative around amending the weather respite activation criteria, the effort brought forward largely by Councilmember Jennings and maybe some others. Telemontes, I think, was involved in that. There were others. I'm sorry. Everybody who brought that forward around updating the homeless persons protocol file. And lastly, not least, we will consider an initiative that I am bringing forward regarding the opening of more safe ground and shelter. In addition, though it's not on the agenda, at some point, just as we had talked in previous weeks, some update from the Assistant City Manager Mario Lara and/or the City Manager about some of the things we want to regularize, right? Every week, how many beds are available? How many people have been placed in beds? How many people have been enrolled in mental health or substance abuse services? I know I asked some very specific questions about 28th and C., and I would like to hear some of the updated information at some point on that because it is such an exemplar of what it is we intend to do and seek to do going forward, and we have to learn from the successes but also what hasn't gone right or well with that operation. So that's the day, and we begin with the consent calendar. Are there any items that members would like either discussed separately or voted on separately? I see. On the consent calendar? Do we have comment on the consent calendar?
Yes, Mayor. Do you have two speakers on the consent calendar? And I do. We have quite a few people online, so I would like to remind people the meeting is being video streamed. Members of the public who wish to address the council should complete a speaker slip, which can be found at the back of the room, and speaker slips need to be turned into the clerk prior to the beginning of each item. If you'd like to speak on an item, if you're in chambers, fill out a speaker slip. And if you're in Zoom, raise your hand, and you raise your hand in Zoom at the time of that item start. So we're currently on the consent calendar. After the first speaker, we will no longer expect speaker slips, and the raise hand feature in Zoom will be disabled. Each person will have two members, two minutes to address the council, so that everyone has the opportunity to address the council. Members of the public are asked to observe the rules of decorum. Council rules of procedure outline decorum expected in the chambers. It can be found on our website. It copies from the back of the room and is embraced on the back of the speaker slip. And for the audience, we do not have matters not on the agenda on this agenda since it's a special meeting, and the Brown Act prohibits that at a special meeting. So we currently have two members in chambers, Charles Fost and Kathleen Williams. Charles, if you'll come to the podium. Following Charles is Kathleen Williams. And then if you're in Zoom, if you want to speak on the consent calendar, this is the time to raise your hand.
I didn't actually sign up for this. I signed up for everything but this, so I'll be back. Sorry.
I wanted to comment on the infrastructure proposal. Is that comprehended in item one? That was what I was told.
The critical, yes, the critical infrastructure list resolution.
Right.
Number one, yes.
Right. And I wanted to express what I believe is characterized as the advocate position. Services Not Sweeps had a meeting last night that was attended by many people. You know, we are connected to dozens of organizations, hundreds of people. And this list, as we understood it, comprehends 80% of the city, which has been classified as infrastructure. It goes far beyond the federal definition of infrastructure. It goes far beyond what is identified in Martin v. Boise as permissible restrictions. And it's not legal. It doesn't make sense, and it's not practical. So I urge you not to pass this over and have this massive restriction on where people can live. You have 10,000 people who are outside. The numbers, it's a river, it's a flood, the people are here, and it's time to sit down and address them as people. Get upset, there's trash, there's crime, there's waste. Those things can be dealt with, but let's support the people where they are. Let's provide the sanitation, the other kinds of services that other residents of the city who are housed take as matter of course. And this infrastructure is, it's a clear undrun around Martin v. Boise, and I don't think it's what we should be doing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Charles? Did you want to speak on the item? No.
Okay.
I have four, five speakers online. HHF Los Angeles, this is on the consent calendar. HHF Los Angeles.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can. Please proceed.
Hi, I wanted to speak on agenda number four.
That will be later. We're on consent calendar. Next speaker is Maria Elena on the consent calendar.
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Maria Elena, and I'm here on behalf of Padres Organized Community. I am a parent leader in the Sacramento area, and the reason why I'm speaking on these two items today is because, while we understand that the city had to move because they were asked to by the county, we're very disappointed to see that the city is moving so aggressively on sanctions when they move so slowly on services for our unhoused neighbors. And this seems like it is very hastily moving forward, and it is not considering the needs of the unhoused nor of the housed community when you're looking at how to displace people. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I want to remind the members of online, if you're not speaking, this is the consent calendar. If you're speaking on the consent calendar, please keep your hand raised. Otherwise, please take your hand down. The first is Bob Erlinbush on the consent calendar.
Good afternoon, Bob Erlinbush. I'm the Executive Director of the Sacramento Regional Coalition to End Homelessness. As many of you know at this point, about six months ago at least, advocates with the public, health advocates and myself, were curious about how many locations this rather expansive list from the city manager comprised of critical infrastructure since it doesn't, what was passed in October of last year, just lists categories rather than specific locations. We totaled it up. It comes to over 1,500 locations specifically in the city of Sacramento, which, as Kathleen said, if you map it out, comprises about 80% of the city. Do we really want to be known as the city that bans our unhoused neighbors from 80% of the city? I hope that we take a stand today to say no to that and have a much more thoughtful process and definition of critical infrastructure that really is critical infrastructure, not community meetings, not gathering sites, but everything that we understand is levees, electrical grids, power stations, et cetera. We need to align our critical infrastructure with the federal definition, which is used by the federal agency, the Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency, part of Homeland Security. So my recommendation, as you already know, is that you put this resolution back to your Law and Legends Committee and have them reconsider this to align with the federal definition of critical infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Shelley W.
Hi, Shelley Williams, District 5, parent outreach worker. Yeah, and just in terms of framing with this critical infrastructure ordinance, I just want everyone here to understand that this ordinance was put into place as a way to circumvent the Martin v. Boise ruling, which made clear that forced displacement of our unhoused community members was unconstitutional if an alternative place was not offered. But in that ruling, an exception was made for cases where these residents were living near anything deemed critical infrastructure, and that's why we saw this ordinance pass and why it was written so broadly and vaguely as to cover 80% of the city, like Bob said. So the entire spirit of this ordinance was never about critical infrastructure but to create a loophole in which the city may violate the basic human rights of the vast majority of our unhoused community members. It is shameful, and I echo what Bob said, send it back to law and ledge, rework it, but it is a really shameful way of just circumventing, you know, a ruling about constitutional rights. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Christina, and then I have Nick as the final speaker on the consent calendar.
Hi, my name is Christina. I am a parent and community volunteer, and I live in District 7. First, I want to say thank you to Rick Jennings, Karina Telemontes, Lisa Kaplan, and Howard Chan for bringing the items on this agenda forward. Bringing back common sense to illegal camping is something our city desperately needs. It's the first critical step to saving our city from the trash, filth, and crime that's harmed law-abiding citizens and local businesses. The tide is turning, and people have had enough of being screamed at to be compassionate by allowing lawlessness and chaos to take over our city. No one should be above the law, no matter their circumstances. If you want to help people rise up and do better in their lives, it starts with setting higher expectations. Help them, yes. Allow bad behavior to harm everyone else? No. Accountability is key. I will ask that you add parks to the critical infrastructure. I live near a city park and oftentimes see old campers and cars in the park after closing hours. Neighbors have found used needles and plenty of empty bottles and hard alcohol strewn around. We have a man who's been sleeping around the park and wandering it daily, sifting through trash bins. He's also been seen masturbating, but police aren't there, so there isn't much they can do. Our parks are a sanctuary for many lower-income, law-abiding citizens who expect them to be safe to enjoy. Thank you again for your efforts today and for all the hours and you and your staff to get to this moment. It's a good foundational first step.
Thank you for your comments. Nick is the final speaker on the consent calendar.
Hi, thanks, y'all. I can mostly reiterate what other speakers have said, the things, the way that it was outlined as, you know, you didn't have a list like this until someone said, in the law, you can't criminalize, you can't sweep, and then here comes a list of places that are outrightly exempt. I mean, Bob's point that there is a federal law that covers, or there's a federal agency around infrastructure that really defines what infrastructure is versus our sort of, you know, we're just grasping at literally anything. You heard the last speaker say, let's add parks. You know, we could add the whole city. It wouldn't make the people disappear. We have 10,000 at least folks experiencing unsheltered homelessness in these elements, in this awful, this isn't a choice people are making. The system to help relieve it is broken, and that's what we really need to be focusing on, not all these millions of ways, and we're going to see it later in the agenda too, but all these carve-outs that you've built so that you can carry out displacement, forced internal migration, is just honestly what we had thought would happen, but it's really, really terrible to the people on the ground. I mean, the move-along orders, as it stands, are truly torture. You talk about C Street, but those people moved down the street, they were made to move again and again, and now where in the world are they? You know, it's not, it's not as clean as cleaning up one corner looks. You can remove all the trash one day, but the people truly don't disappear. And so critical infrastructure would be housing, so I encourage you to focus in that direction.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers on the consent calendar.
All right. Obviously, this item, Councilmember Valenzuela, I assume you want to speak to and ask for a separate vote. Go ahead. You may not need a separate vote. Go ahead.
Well, I just, I want to note and ask a question about the changes in here because the key changes, as I see it, are the addition of courthouses and, quote, "legal system offices." So I wonder, City Manager, if you could provide a clearer definition? Because when I see legal system offices, that means like any building where there's lawyers working in who work for the government, and I guess there's an intention here on like public access versus just every office?
Sure, absolutely. Maybe I'll ask the city attorney away, and then Daniel Bowers, please be prepared to talk about this footprint that people are talking about, this 80% of the city. So, City Manager, City Attorney?
Yes, the, actually, our ordinance does track the federal guidelines, and in fact, the critical infrastructure federal regulations are much broader than our ordinance does. So that's why Office of Emergency Management actually manages the critical infrastructure that's covered by the ordinance. Now, the council recalls, you actually, the council adopted this ordinance back in 2019, I think, and in doing so, it asked the city manager to come to the council and have them approve any additions to the list of critical infrastructure coverage. So this ordinance has been in place for quite a while. It's also served as a model for other cities throughout the state, including the counties of Sacramento, and other cities throughout the country because it actually very exactly mirrored the footnote date in the Boise decision, which allowed cities to regulate for health and safety reasons, and allowed the cities to actually put in place health and, excuse me, times, place, and manner regulations that would balance the needs of important government functions with the lack of available housing. And so that particular category would cover the district attorney's office and other government functions. Under the federal guidelines, it actually puts forth that critical infrastructure is any city operation, excuse me, any government operations. So we're being a bit smart strategic about what we're adding to ours, and I'm not sure where the 80% is coming from. I know in 2019, I myself mapped out the areas, and it's nowhere close to being 80%. So I'm not sure where that number's coming from.
Okay. Thank you for answering the question about the legal system offices. I think based on looking at the map, it includes private property. So the basic premise is that when you layer on, because obviously we don't allow people to camp on private property, and you layer critical infrastructure on top of that, things like streets, you know, you can't be in the middle of the street, and you can't be, you know, in the middle of a park because we already have rules around parks, it's already part of critical infrastructure, that when you layer those existing restrictions together, it covers 80% of the city. I think that, is that your, does that jive with your analysis as well?
Private property, actually, you can camp with the permission of the property owner. So that's, and then we have ordinances that apply to that. And so, and then some private property could be medical facilities, you know, healthcare facilities. Yeah, yeah. So that's critical infrastructure.
And that's a critical infrastructure as well, yeah.
You know, I'll add on to that, that fairly recently, we added parks and schools, 500 feet within schools. That expanded the footprint as well. I don't know if we've done an analysis of what that percentage is, but 80% of the city does not sound accurate at all. Daniel?
Yeah, I agree. It's definitely nowhere near 80% of the footprint of the city. As the city manager said, that 500-foot standoff from the schools did increase the footprint, but just to be candid with everybody, I mean, we lead off these meetings with an acknowledgement to the First Americans, right? And when I look back on some of their trials and tribulations of just enduring this harsh climate, I think back to some of the wisdom that they shared with us, that we live in an inland sea, and we've built the center of our state governance in an inland sea. That requires a significant amount of critical infrastructure to do and maintain. So I'll use a case in point. We all remember when the Natomas flooded a couple times, that was because of the failure of some of our critical infrastructure. So everything on that list has been vetted, it's been ran by the city attorney's office, myself. We've had some debates. I've had a lot of calls from folks from the community. They want to include sound walls off of freeways that's critical infrastructure because there's encampments there. I tell them that's not critical. It might be a little bit of noise pollution, you know, if it falls, but there's no disruption to quality of life and public safety if that thing goes down. They wanted it added because there was encampments there. I don't entertain those conversations. I've had conversations with business owners. They want to label their office building critical. There's got to be a need for it. There's got to be systems that are critical to our continuance of government, life safety, life preservation, protection of property, so that we, when we do endure these storms, like we have these past few months, we're able to respond effectively.
You know, I appreciate that, and your comments. Have we done actually an analysis of what that footprint looks like as compared to the footprint of the city?
What I would suppose that number is being drawn from is ACM Lara shared a general footprint with, it was fairly accurate about the locations of that, but it had bubbles. What we don't want to do is we don't want to share a map of our precise location of all of our critical infrastructure, because while we enjoy these sunny, you know, Sacramento days, there are adversaries out there that would love to attack that critical infrastructure, especially given that we are the capital city of California, and they are plotting that. And the FBI has made some very good arrests around the country of folks targeting critical infrastructure related to utilities, and we don't want to share that data. We don't want to share that information. There's a very small number of folks who have access to that, and it's a very protected document for rightly so purposes. So I can say that it's nowhere near 80%, but what's on there is important.
Thanks, Daniel.
Sure.
So, yeah, I would love to, for us to map that in a way, obviously, without disclosing what specifically is there. I think we could probably get a little bit closer because I think what's missing, and what I think the advocates are justifiably pointing out, is that, yes, are the actual critical infrastructure sites 80% in the city? No. But when you layer that on top of other places that folks can't go, like they can't, you know, go on private property without permission, right? They can't be in the middle of a road, you know, they can't. So there's already other properties that by law, even under Boise, folks can't have camps on. So I think that would be a helpful analysis because I do understand, because there's a balance here between the concerns of, obviously, we don't want somebody jeopardizing a levy, right? You know, that's something that's public safety for all of us. We don't want someone blocking a fire station access. That's something that would jeopardize all of us. But if we're starting to create a pattern where now there is no place for people to go, then that's also something that we need to think about, and I know we're going to talk about that in a later item, but that was my only question with regard to the legal services offices addition, was essentially how much more space in the city does that potentially make available? I don't know how this would affect the DA's office because I didn't, I mean, I've not seen any encampments on the DA's office, and there's a big fence there that kind of keeps people from coming onto the property. That's been there for a couple of years now. So I appreciate why we're doing this, just in case something might happen at the DA's office, because obviously, if someone has a court date, we want them to be able to be able to access the courthouse. I've just never seen that be a problem, but that's an observational note on my part. I guess I just want us to be thoughtful about that and how it interacts with all the other rules, because like, no, nobody is saying critical infrastructure itself is 80% of the city, so I just want to make that.
Yeah, and I think that what we can do, and to the city attorney's point here, is that I'm required to bring this list up every time we update it. This council can decide not to add those categories to that critical infrastructure list, and that's why we bring it back every time.
Well, I guess it's just a difference between like broad categories and being specific about, I think it's just, it's an implication for us as a council, if there's de facto a ban on encampments in most places of the city, and how does that jive with the fact that there are people who are outside, and where do we tell them to go? And that's kind of gets to the later item on here as well, but I just wanted to say, I think specificity matters in this.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Gata?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank staff for their good work on this, and I know it's come up before. I'll go ahead and move the item, Mr. Mayor, with the consent calendar, of the consent calendar, both one and two. With one direction, the federal law, and my understanding from the city attorney's staff, does include libraries, but I'd like the city attorney's office and city manager's office to look at that language. Right now, we have the summer meal program for many families and for kids that are walking there, and so I'd like to make sure that, you know, just like we do with schools and the Safe Routes to schools, that we look at that definition, but I want to make sure that we do the due diligence on that. So I'll move the consent calendar with the direction for the city attorney's office and city manager's office to do this due diligence on libraries. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, very good. Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Gara, bringing up public libraries, because I want it to be open for the public, but we also have to make it safe for the public, because it is, a lot of our families do use that, and it's the fine balance. But I also want to say this is about public safety and critical infrastructure, and thank you, Mr. Bowers, for highlighting that we are in the Natomas Basin, and the city of Sacramento was founded on flooding, and specifically, Old Sacramento raised itself a floor so that we wouldn't flood anymore. And then unfortunately, we live in a day and age where critical infrastructure is identified and exploited, so I would want to urge caution, and maybe we get review from city council if anything is coming forward to the council, that it still protects the critical infrastructure and the safety. And then I just want to say kudos, thank you to our city staff for updating the fire code. We need to make sure our fire code is in compliance with the most up-to-date rules, not that we've, I can say District 1, surrounded by the county and a lot of farmland. If fires get started out there, our neighborhoods are in some serious danger because we have the winds out there that are known to whip up, and occasionally, a tornado has touched down. So being up to speed on the best practices for fire management is something that is very important to my community, and Mayor or the clerk, I did second that and hope we can move forward, but thank you.
Okay, very good. There's been a motion and a second on the consent calendar. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oppose, abstain. That passes nine to nothing unanimously, the consent calendar. Thank you very much. We now move to item three, and that is the amendment of the weather respite activation criteria. I'm not sure who's presenting on this, whether it's the council member or the staff. Oh, it's Mr. Golling. Okay.
That's okay.
Okay. Well, I guess I only ask, I only ask because I've been assigned to present item five.
This is going to be a very brief item. It encompasses the things we've talked about.
Okay.
Nick?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Nick Golling, Homeless Services Manager with your Department of Community Response. So what this item is, is essentially broadening our criteria to activate weather respite centers. Previously, our cold weather criteria was when we had nighttime lows of 37 degrees or lower for two or more days within a five-day span, or rain for two or more consecutive days, also one day or night of rain combined with nighttime lows of 32 degrees or lower. For hot weather, it was when there was an issued heat advisory from the National Weather Service. So our updated criteria includes wind. It also includes if we have thunderstorm warnings. Our cold weather threshold is broadened. Our hot weather threshold includes an issuance of a heat watch warning or advisory, and also if we have an AQI of 151 or higher. So that's when we have wildfires or other types of issues that would create air quality that is a dangerous level for people being outside. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to take them now.
All right. Councilmember Valenzuela, why don't you speak first and see if there's public testimony?
A couple of questions first. Thank you, Nick. Would flood be included in this new adjustment?
We do not have flood listed.
Okay, I would, so part of the reason I, we had initially proposed, Councilmember Maples and I, extreme weather events kind of broadly, was that it would encompass sort of the unforeseen, hopefully not ever frequently, events, and I think flood in particular
of the unforeseen, hopefully not ever frequently, events. And I think flood in particular, given our region, would be an important one to note. But obviously, there could be other, especially as climate change progresses, there could be other incidents that come that are less usual that we just want to be prepared for.
Sure. And maybe, I don't know if Daniel, Daniel Bowers maybe just left. No, he's coming back in. I think the extreme weather piece does cover floods.
So that, that is actually a really great point. So the, what, what we're talking about here is specifically the weather respite centers that are managed by the Department of Community Response, which are separate and distinct from the Office of Emergency Management, which does cover for if there are flooding events or other types of mass displacement types of events.
So Daniel's right behind you. Maybe, Daniel, can you come speak to that piece of it? Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. Any sort of major hazard, including floods, we'd be activating a citywide response. We would be tasking our youth parks community enrichment through their community centers to activate emergency shelters, and then we would transport those folks in that flood inundation area over to those shelters.
Well, and that's also part of the broader response from our community, not just the city of Sacramento.
Absolutely. And, you know, we, we adhere to NIMS, right? The National Incident Management System. And all disasters are local, and they start at the, the ground through DCR in this regard, and it would work its way up. It would start operating into a crisis action team, interdepartment type response. If it got to the point that we needed to activate an emergency operations center to do so, we would do that, pull in a mutual aid assets as needed. As you remember, from the storms last year, we activated our Team Rubicon volunteers, our American Red Cross volunteers, and we activated emergency shelters through that and emergency responders to go out and supplement our city staff. So we'll start out small, and we'll expand as needed to protect everybody.
Okay. I guess then, like localized flooding, so like what we saw in January, you're saying that would meet the threshold under your emergency management protocols?
We did activate emergency shelters during that event. In fact, we, we activated the Pennell Center, not for city residents, but because it was a mutual aid request for the county. Some of our folks down in the Casumnas area, around that river, were displaced, and they didn't have a shelter capacity they could support. So we activated one of our shelters for them. And then we also activated the Hart Senior Center with American Red Cross staff to, as additional overflow in case any of our other shelters were at capacity. And while those, both those sites weren't used to the extent that, that they neared capacity, we would have, had they started to near capacity, activated additional shelters so that at all times, we have adequate housing for any, anybody emergency, emergency displacement.
That was also in conjunction with Sacramento County. We looked at Cal Expo, the whole nine yards.
Yeah, we all work together in a very, you know, intricate network, supporting each other. I mean, even when our, our sawyer teams, you know, cutting, cutting the logs, you know, they started to, to have to reach their, their kind of critical capability and take rest, we had sawyer teams come in off the, the Western Sierras to help us out, coordinated through our fire department. So we're always looking at those, those opportunities to make sure that we have the adequate staffing on hand to support the community.
Okay, that's helpful. Then I guess going back to DCR then, so we're updating outside of the, what would normally trigger an emergency management response. There were other criteria in here that we had proposed to try to increase utilization of those services when available. And I noticed that it's in the narrative, but it's not in the resolution in terms of storage and basic amenities and notifications and different standard procedures that would hopefully get more unhoused residents to use those weather centers when they exist.
Including transportation. So we're working very closely with RT to make sure that we have these micro shuttles that, you know, we have capacity at a shelter that's not close to the core or in an area where there's people that need to be moved, then that's, that's exactly what we will be doing. And we have their commitment through RT. I mean, have you sit on RT board here? So, so you hear that too, but.
I guess it was also about though, like the, what I, what I outlined in the staff report that you see is like very specific, like how far out notifications go out, like where those shuttles are, and also a very specific note around having respite in each part of the city, or at least two additional centers, so that it's not just in North Sacramento, but it's also maybe one in the central city, one in the south city, so.
So the timing of it is, you know, that's tricky, because we're going to go through the National Weather Service, and we get, you know, 10 days, 15 days out, and it gets closer than we actually move to mobilizing. On the respite piece, that's put in the parking lot until we can resolve these other issues that you're going to talk about this afternoon.
Okay, I guess then, I, I mean, 24 hours notice is somewhat essential, because I think it's one of those things that we lamented over in January, is that like, it's just, we, we knew there were thousands of people out there who needed help, who weren't coming and using that because it just didn't have enough time. And so I appreciate that the weather may change, but I feel like if we don't make a call at least 24 hours out, both our staff doesn't have super clear direction for the sort of non-emergency response-type system, when we're saying, hey, it's going to be cold, let's just call it, even if the temperature ends up changing, so that people know they need to get there in time.
I think that 24 hours is reasonable, absolutely.
Yeah, okay. So I'll include that as part of the.
I'd just like to jump in and clear.
Okay, this is separate than emergency management. I'm talking about DCR.
Right. I'm going to use the, the January storm, for example, that, the New Year's Eve storm. We made flights with helicopters days before that. We put it out to our park rangers and law enforcement to notify folks to move away from that area because of imminent water inundation. That night, it was all hands on deck. We had downed power lines blocking in, fire response to only small corridor areas. We did, we really saturated all of our staff to the point where, I'm not, I'm not kidding, this is not an exaggeration. It was myself, a park ranger, and the fire chief out there in the American River Parkway, notifying people with one of DCR's staff members with an SUV transporting them to shelter. And not everybody wanted to go. And that's, that's not hyperbole, that's not an exaggeration, that is what it was. And that's how stressed we were on staff. And everybody was doing all that they could. I had one of my emergency management coordinators, who, who was trained from FEMA, out there holding down an intersection because we had a large tree, redwood, right across that, and people were flying down at 45 miles an hour. The fact that we didn't lose a human being on that New Year's Eve storm, I can't even, I can't even comprehend how we didn't.
I appreciate that. So I want to move past that response and move towards moving forward with DCR response if we can, because I think the 24-hour notification, like in the case of the January storms, as we mentioned when we brought this forward, it wouldn't have triggered the weather criteria technically. It was outside of the scope of the weather criteria. So we were meeting, I know, because you were in the room, and the mayor, and Katie Maple, and myself, like, days before, with your staff, trying to figure out how do we stand something up. And so I appreciate why someone might not utilize something if they have little notice, if we're saying, hey, come with us now or don't. And I also appreciate why, when we talk to folks who've used these respite centers, they have those concerns when it comes to getting a ride back. Where do I store my equipment? You know, how, like, what to expect when I get there, so that they are less hesitant to say yes when they're in an urgent situation. So I guess I'd love to just hear feedback on, on that point, because I think we want to systematize this to a level that more vulnerable populations are moving indoors. And I think none of us were super pleased. I mean, I was glad people used the respite, but it was like 50 folks on some nights. And I'm like, well, 50 folks out of 10,000, like, that means that there's thousands of people out there who are potentially at risk of harm, and that's not good, you know?
Yeah, absolutely. And, and I appreciate you bringing this up. One of the issues that we had with the more narrow criteria, and it says it right in our documentation, that in particular, the, the heat advisories are often issued within 12 hours. So what this broad, this broadening does for us, and myself as the person who monitors these and makes the determinations when we do open, this broadens our ability within a timeframe to be able to know when these forecasts are going to change. For example, our most recent heat wave that we had, a heat advisory wasn't issued at all. An excessive heat watch was issued. But so managing those things and waiting for that determination to be made in order to make the notification has been a challenge. So this broadened criteria now allows us the opportunity to have more than 24 hours to be able to notify people that these are going to be opening. And we'd be utilizing 211, which is a 24-hour line, as well as our social media. Oftentimes, the local media will also share out the information on the locations. Furthermore, as far as additional locations, our most recent activations have included not only the Outreach and Engagement Center in the north, but also the Salmon Bonnie Pennell Center in the south area of the community. And our partnership agreement with the county has also allowed us to coordinate with them as such that there are multiple additional locations that are open at any given time. For example, our most recent activation not only included, I believe it was four or five locations that were opened by the county, but also all the neighboring cities. The first time, I've only been at the city for two years, but the first time that I've seen it, Galt, Citrus Heights, Rancho Cordova, Folsom, and others all also opened them, and we all coordinated in the way and such that Mr. Bowers was mentioning.
That's super helpful. So I'll let my colleague speak as well, but I will say that my interest in this motion is yes to the weather proposal, because this is fantastic, and thank you for bringing this forward. But additional direction on 24 hours notice, you know, if it's closed, if we think it's possible, we call it and say, okay, we're just going to do it. And that if, you know, whether it's our center or somebody else's center, like a county center, that there be at least three sites and geographically dispersed across the city. Because I know, like, DHA on 28th Street will open sometimes, like that would count in my mind, is having something in the central city that folks could go towards. So just want to make sure that we don't end up in a situation where we just have one center in North Sacramento open. So that would be my additional direction in addition to moving this, this staff report forward. So I'll let my colleague chime in as well, if that reflects her concerns.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Valenzuela. Excuse me, Councilmember Maple.
The other Katie.
The other Katie, sorry.
Uh, thank you, Mayor.
Know the difference.
And really, just want to appreciate my colleague, Councilmember Valenzuela, for, you know, bringing this forward in partnership, and also the staff for putting this together. This has been an iterative, iterative process over the years, and I just, I think it gets better every single time. It's more aligned with what we're seeing and the experiences that we have. And I think that that's the best, that's the best we can do, is we can learn from our mistakes or, or anything that's happened, and make sure that we have a process moving forward that makes sense and that protects people. And so I'm really grateful for this coming forward. And I also want to say that it's, this is for everyone. You know, I represent parts of the city where a lot of the housing may not have quality air conditioning, may not have, you know, things, things break down. I live in a house that was built in 1940. Things break down. And so this is for everyone. If you're in need, if something happens, you can go to these centers. This is especially for our seniors and our young people. And so I, I agree with all the comments that Councilmember Valenzuela made, and really appreciate you bringing this forward.
Thank you. I, I want to thank both of my colleagues for bringing this forward, and the staff for working so collaboratively with the members to really make an advance. I, I just don't want to lose sight of the fact that in the long term, in the long term, as we build out our partnerships with the county, the state of California, that we ought to endeavor for year-round respite. Year-round respite, not weather-based. If you remember, we've had a long, kind of circular, bumpy road on, on this question. And the reason we have not been able to get to year-round respite is obvious. It's financial, and we're sort of on our own when it comes to pushing this. But, you know, part of what we're trying to get to, and what we'll try to get to as we discuss item five, I hope people who are here for item four, by the way, are willing to hang in there with us and stay for item five as well. We are trying to build out our capacity in all forms, and we cannot do it alone. But one of the goals needs to be that we provide regularized respite for people to come indoors. Because by the way, summers are longer, winters are longer, the climate, you know, spring is summer, you know, it's, it's, we're going to be dealing with weather year-round. And so this is a good move and a good step. And that, my message is not just to our city, it's to everybody who has responsibility and is engaged in this. Because it's not not just be some, it's not, should not always be about technical requirements. It should be endeavoring to bring everybody indoors. And I just want to say that.
Very quickly, Mayor, I, I hope, I know this is a separate item, but I'm hoping with item five, we could maybe have this conversation as well, in the context of item five.
We can't, we can't, of course.
Because it does become an issue of these priorities and funding.
No, and I, I wasn't, I did not say that to push you to go farther on respite.
I just want to make sure we, we put that, because the councilwoman asked for three sites, and sometimes that's not possible. And I don't want that to be.
And I'm, I'm acknowledging that. But I'm saying that aspirationally, as we go forward, we got to keep in mind what the.
I agree.
The end goal here is, okay? That's the only reason I said it. Did you move, I'd have been moved, okay, been moved and seconded with the direction, thank you, by the two members who led the effort. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oppose, abstain. That passes unanimously.
And Mayor, do you have speakers on this item?
Oh.
I have three speakers and two.
All right, let's rescind the vote then, because the public ought to be heard before we vote, okay? With unanimous consent, please, without objection, we're going to rescind the vote so we can hear from the public.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. First is Charles Fost, Renita Wingson, and then Jay. And for members on Zoom, this is regards item three.
Please keep me on track here. You're safe on the vote. I'm in support of it. I'm wanting to say thank you to Katie and Katie for doing this, and that there's an open conversation about expanding it. So that's really mostly what I had to say. And then also Nick for the work he's done on it. And Katie and Nick have actually done a lot of work in the past week, helping a lady that I'm trying to get housing for in Miller Park. So I want to thank them for that, too. And I think that the goal should always be year-round respite. And I think that that's, I'm happy that we're going to be hearing about that in item five. So thank you guys for this, and I'm in support of it.
Renata Wingson, then Jay.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm very glad for what you said, Mayor Steinberg, about how you'd like to provide year-round respite. Because I'm not sure if you heard or not, but on July the 27th, the UN Secretary General Antonio Gutierrez quoted that this era of global warming has ended, and the era of global boiling has arrived. And he went on to say that the air is unbreathable, the heat is unbearable, and the level of fossil fuel profits and climate inaction is unacceptable. And so he went on to also say that leaders must act, and I hope that our leaders in Sacramento are going to choose to do so, and that no more hesitating, no more excuses, and no more waiting for others to make the first move.
Next speaker is Jay.
Hello, Council. Yeah, thank you for putting this forward. I'm in support of building more shelters for the emergency respites. I started doing outreach this last winter, and it was definitely pretty hard to get folks to come and trust in any shelter spaces in the weather conditions. So I want to say that I second Katie Valenzuela's saying about providing more communication to folks, that they understand the services as they are brought to them, and kind of like the last-minute communication can give people a lot of pause in taking those services. This kind of applies to almost every agenda item today, or I guess like five as well. But, but this is about the weather respite. So, yeah, we definitely need more resources, and we spend those, like you're saying, we can't open up three centers. Well, those resources are being spent on enforcement, right? Controlling, trying to maintain this homelessness issue, right? Enforcing encampments. And that also definitely leads into the lack of trust, because it's the same hand, right, that is extending a resource, is the same hand that is destroying their encampment. It's obvious that amidst, even, this is obvious, because even amidst the major weather crisis, people still refuse these services when they're in dire need, because they don't, the trust is that low, you know? That's part of the low trust. So, yeah, I do think year-round is really great. I think being consistent with the offerings is really good. So, yeah, if you just want to get engagement with the resources, you got to get the trust with the people who live outside. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Bob Erlinbush, and he has four, four speakers online.
Thank you. Again, Bob Erlinbush. I'm the Executive Director of the Sacramento Regional Coalition for End Homelessness. I know all of us, including myself, are anxious to get to item five, so I'll keep it really short. I wanted to thank Councilmember Valenzuela and Councilmember Maple and staff for moving this item. And especially appreciate your, your comment, Mayor Steinberg, that this is what we've wanted to be the goal for 10 years, is year-round respite, not weather-activated. So it's good to see that the city is not only saying that homelessness is a housing crisis, in addition to what advocates say, civil rights crisis, but it's an environmental justice crisis. So many of our unhoused neighbors have asthma and upper respiratory illnesses. So adding, adding the quote-unquote new normal of fires and air quality is critically important in addition to severe weather. So we, we strongly support this and, and hope that the city council continues to move forward to get resources to make this respite centers year-round. Thanks again.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Colin User-1.
Hello, yes, this is Lambert. And as I listen to this, being a native, that was the worst storm that I've ever seen this year, from New Year's until it really eased up. I've never seen, I've been in bad weather, but not in Sacramento, not like that. The wind, the rain, the combination of both, and as I rode around. The wind, the rain, the combination of both, and as I rode around the city, I saw a lot of people doing a lot of good things, because that was, I would say, that's the worst weather that I've ever seen in Sacramento. And I can say that because I know this city, and I commend you on trying to do something about year-round. That's a very humanitarian gesture, Mayor, because as a, as a person who actually witnessed that, that wind, I've never seen that. And then when you have rain, it's just an incredible combination. So it's good to hear the two city councilwomen say what they said, and just keep it going, because that's a, that may be a once-in-a-lifetime event, but then again, it might come back, so you should be ready next time, because you've seen it. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Dylan Hoy Bianchi.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Excellent. Yeah, so I'm calling in first to just thank the city for, at long last, listening to the community on this issue and doing something about the weather respite issue. It's a shame it couldn't have happened sooner. A lot of people who died didn't need to die, but it's good that it's finally happening now and that you're listening to the people who have been telling you over and over again that this is a problem that needs fixing. I do think that Mayor Steinberg is correct, though, that we do ultimately need year-round respite that is not weather-activated, because the climate crisis is only going to be getting worse as the years go on. Weather like this, extreme weather conditions, are going to keep happening more and more frequently, and, to be frank, 24 hours notice is still not enough. And I understand that it's hard to do better than that if you have a weather-activated criteria, but it's not enough for people. People need more warning than that. They need to have a place that they know they can go to if it's needed, and if it's only being activated when the weather is extreme enough, then people don't have that safety net. It doesn't exist as a safety net. I will say, though, Mayor Steinberg, you said that the primary barrier to implementing a year-round respite is financial, and that's just not true. I've said this before, and I'll say it again, you are not serious about addressing the homelessness crisis in the city of Sacramento if you are not willing to cut the police budget significantly. We have the money. The money is there. You just have to take it away from the cops and give it to some other priorities. The city hasn't, isn't, the city doesn't, hasn't set priorities in their budget. There's supposed to be a list of priorities, and the city has not, has chosen not to set that. So you all claim to care about homelessness and claim to be compassionate and all, blah, 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 blah. You're not showing it with your actions. Take them, the police have more money than they need, take money away from them and spend it on things that you claim are priorities, or you're just not serious about them. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our final speaker on this item is Alexander. Alexander, if you'll unmute.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can.
Great. So this is a noble objective, just like most of the items that are bad, but they appear good on the surface. All that glitters is not gold. Prior speaker mentioned the UN. UN's not to be relied on at all. World War I was fought, the League of Nations was defeated, which was the banker's first plan for one world government.
This item is amending weather respite activation criteria. If you'd like to speak on that item, please proceed.
So I am addressing points, and none of you are up there to police speech. No one in the audience, not you.
Cut him off. Cut him off.
Mayor, you could, you could add.
Cut him off, please. I'm the presiding officer ordering that you cut him off.
So, Mayor.
He's a bigot, and he calls in to just spew hate, and I'm not hearing it. You want to talk to the item, call in and talk about the item. End of story. Next.
So, Mayor, Government Code Section 54954.3 provides that members of the public may address the council on an item that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body, and as such, that was not under the jurisdiction of the legislative body nor on this item.
Exactly what I meant. Thank you. Okay. All right. Thank you. Here, here. Okay, not, we're not, we're not listening to bigots. Okay. Just going to do my damnedest to maintain a civil chamber here. Let's, now, now we have a motion and a second. Please vote. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, oppose, abstain. Okay. Let's now move to item four. And thank you again to the members and staff for leading on that issue.
Honorable Mayor and Council, Mario Lara, Assistant City Manager. The item before you is the Updated Homeless Response Protocol. So the Homeless Response Protocol is being updated to incorporate comments that was received on June 27, 2023, at the homeless workshop, and also Councilmember proposal request that was submitted by Councilmembers Jennings, Kaplan, and Telemontes. As will be indicated in the next few slides, the updated protocol will focus on incorporating a greater emphasis on seeking compliance with City of Sacramento City Code and state law, in particular, California Vehicle Code. The updated protocol will be implemented utilizing existing personnel and resources, but will require usage of overtime to enhance the capacity of code enforcement teams, park rangers, and PD Impact. Here you have a summary of the response activities that are incorporated into the Homeless Response Protocol. To ensure public health and safety, the city will employ three main types of activities: outreach, encampment management, and compliance. The Department of Community Response will continue to be the primary agency for outreach activities. Outreach will focus primarily on assessing the needs of encampment residents and connecting those residents to social services as appropriate and available. For larger and more complex encampments, DCR will prioritize and assign city-county partnership teams to conduct outreach and engagement and to provide linkages to behavioral health services. Encampment management activities will primarily include cleanup and removal of trash and hazardous materials. The city will continue to procure contract services to ensure that removal of trash, needles, and other hazardous materials is conducted daily. DCR staff will continue to prioritize locations based on calls for services, field assessments, and input from constituents. Compliance activities will address violations of city code and state law. Primary focus will be on city code violations that pertain to park use regulations, storage of personal property on public property, California Vehicle Code, critical infrastructure, sidewalk ordinance, and the 500-foot buffer zone for K through 12 schools. The lead agencies for gaining compliance will be the Sacramento City Code, Sacramento, the lead agencies for gaining compliance with these codes are the Sacramento Police Department, the Park Rangers for calls that are within parks or bike trails, and Code Enforcement Division for removal of vehicles such as unlicensed or unregistered or illegally parked RVs. When carrying out these activities, outreach, encampment management, and compliance activities, the city will employ three main strategies, as are summarized in this slide. Firstly, a general DCR-led strategy will be used when responding to calls for services that are encampment-related but do not have, do not have an indication of a city or state code violation. The primary response activities will be outreach and encampment management. However, if violations are observed, DCR staff will seek to gain voluntary compliance, and if not successful, will immediately move the call for service to a rapid response strategy. A rapid response strategy will focus on gaining compliance with city or state code as soon as possible, and will typically apply to small and medium encampments. Services may still be offered, however, the primary focus will be to gain compliance. For the sake of clarity and transparency, it should be noted that a shelter bed does not need to be offered or available prior to seeking compliance with a city or state code. For example, gaining a four-foot clearance on a sidewalk. If we have a sidewalk blockage and gaining four-foot clearance, you do not have to offer a shelter bed. Finally, for large or complex encampments, a coordinated response strategy will continue to be employed. City-county outreach teams will provide intensive outreach and engagement with the goal of enrolling individuals into behavioral health services and shelter programs prior to scheduling compliance activities. And Mayor, I'm using 28th and C as the example of a large, complex encampment where a coordinated response strategy was necessary, and this is in response to some of the questions that you raised. 28th and C encampment grew over several months despite earlier outreach efforts. Some of the individuals who ended up there were displaced from other encampments that had been cleared from nearby freeway underpasses and surrounding areas. DCR outreach efforts started in the beginning of the year, in January, and city and county teams were deployed, and they conducted intensive outreach and engagement from mid-April to mid-May, and once again in July, prior to compliance, with the coordinated cleanup efforts. Eight people were relocated to Miller Park, safe camping prior to coordinated efforts, and 11 more people were relocated to Miller Park during coordinated effort. Encampment management activities were conducted over several months to remove trash and needles. The coordinated cleanup and compliance activities were scheduled after extensive outreach and engagement efforts had been exhausted. Compliance activities were conducted over a three-day period. There were no citations or arrest issues during this operation. Again, 11 individuals during that period were transferred to Miller Park. Over 12,000 pounds of trash and debris was collected, and 813 needles were safely disposed of. Follow-up efforts are ongoing and will include both outreach activities and compliance activities continuing in the surrounding areas. As previously indicated, a rapid response strategy will be used to address smaller and medium encampments where there are violations of city or state laws. The next three slides will provide examples of these situations. Here is an encampment that is blocking a pedestrian access and is a violation of the sidewalk ordinance and the Americans with Disabilities Act. A rapid response strategy would be deployed to seek compliance as soon as possible. Please note, given limitation of city staff capacity, it won't be an on-demand or a real-time response. However, on a daily basis, calls for services will be prioritized, and teams will be deployed to address encampments that are in violation of city and state laws. Here is an example of an encampment that has a large amount of RV, an RV encampment that are in violation of vehicle codes. Again, a rapid response strategy will be the primary focus to gain compliance, and would be deployed in this situation. And another example of where a rapid response strategy would be deployed is this encampment which has a large amount of personal property in a public space that is potentially creating a traffic hazard, because it's at an intersection and it's causing a path of travel to be, to have to be diverted. There are instances where encampments are not in violation of city code or state law, and these encampments consist mainly of life essentials, are small, contained, and not obstructing a sidewalk or a public access. The strategy here will be to provide outreach. Outreach teams will continue to respond to these encampments and offer individual services. There would not be any need for compliance activities as they're not violation, in any violations of city codes or state laws. Given the limited capacity and resources available to respond to the scale of the homeless crisis, an incident management team will be stood up. On a daily basis, calls for services will be evaluated by a multidisciplinary team to determine where best to deploy outreach teams, where best to deploy a rapid response strategy, and where and when to schedule coordinated cleanups. Again, overtime will be used to expand the capacity of all response units, including Impact, Code, and Park Rangers. The goal will be to address and resolve small and medium encampments that are in violation of city and state codes as quickly as possible, and to continue conducting outreach and engagement along with our county partners to assist individuals who are living unsheltered and to gain, to help them gain access to behavioral health services and shelters. The weekly reports, Mayor and Council, will be, will be developed as we go along in order to track process and to report back to you. But as an example, last week, 1,160 calls for services were received, and 1,230 calls were closed through the 311 system. 129 individuals were entered into a city-funded safe camping or shelter program. 25 of these were via the Miller Park Safe Camping and Outreach and Engagement Center. In addition, there were four mental health assessments completed, two behavioral health screenings, two people linked to behavioral health providers, and one call aim referral. This was, this was for, within the last week, and for, for, for the next encampment, Alhambra and W, which I was going to speak to, the next large encampment for coordinated cleanup effort will focus on the Alhambra and W corridor.
But you were just referring to the one mental health referral. Where was that from?
That was from the area of Alhambra and W, which we're going to focus on next. So our weekly reports will include a more, a more recent effort, and where we're going to next in terms of our coordinated enforcement efforts. So, so the example that I'm providing here is really in relations to our next, our next upcoming focus. Extensive outreach has been done at this location, and the next step will be for the PD Impact team to post notices at Alhambra and W, similar to what we did at 28th and C, and for a coordinated cleanup effort to be engaged. In addition to that, Park Rangers will be focusing at the Nino's Parkway, north of the San Juan corridor, because there's also been an encampment that's been growing in that area. So each week, what we intend to do is to bring to the, to the Mayor and Council efforts that we were completed within the last period and where we're going to next. This concludes the formal presentation. The recommendation is, as stated in the report, staff from each of the departments that are involved in this effort are available to respond to questions that you may have.
Mayor, and I think I'm going to respond to the question that you, I think you're asking about 28th and C. As a result of that effort there and that operation, there, there were people that, you want to cover the numbers? I don't have them.
So I have some, some details on 28th and C.
Okay, thank you.
There were 28 screenings offered. Eight were declined. Four were screened but declined core. Four were linked to behavioral services. One was to FSP, and two individuals had already been linked and were re-linked to behavioral services. Several accepted minor services like water or, or those kinds of, those kinds of things. The, the city-county team was out there for a total of, they were there from mid-April, mid-March to mid-April, and they were there again on the weeks, on the week prior, leading up to the coordinated cleanup. They were there for a total of about 20 days, 20 workdays. Again, everyone who was engaged at that location were offered services, were offered shelter opportunities, and again, one person was enrolled into FSP as a result of 28th and C.
I have a very strong opinion about that, but I think we'll, I will hold off until the subsequent items. But thank you. Thank you for that, for that reporting. Okay, we have 35 speakers on this item, and, and so I, I've tempted to put items four and five together, and I'm sorry if inconveniences anybody who's in the audience who wants to stay, and I hope we'll stay for both, but I think it is important we take them separately, and that we, and that we hear from item four, for we take item four first, hear the public testimony, and then we take up item five. Okay? So let's hear from the members of the public, please.
Thank you, Mayor. As you mentioned, I have 35 speakers, so feel free to line up in the aisle. David Padgem, Christian McGuard, Darrell Caltrin. So David, Christian, and then Derek, then Mike Testa. Please proceed.
I really would like to reaffirm what the clerk just said. Please line up, because we've got a lot of people, and we're going to want to move through efficiently here.
Thank you.
Okay.
David?
My name is David Padgem. Excuse me. My partners and I have been developing commercial property in the Alhambra corridor along Business 80 for over 35 years. At present, we still have four properties that we own and manage. We have one property that we manage on behalf of someone else, and that's the property I'd like to speak about today. It is located at the corner of 29th and Q Street, at 161629 Street. The building was completed in 1986 and has been fully occupied until the end of February this year, for the last 24 years, by the State of California Department of Transportation. Upon Caltrin's vacating, we had an encampment set up in the parking lot, which was moved. Subsequently, we now have a row of campers along 29th Street. We had planned on doing extensive renovation of the building, particularly on the exterior. We are unable to do so at this point in time, because we cannot access the building via boom or scaffolding, so we're at a loss there. In addition to that, the individuals camping there on a daily basis have their stuff strewn on the sidewalk on our property.
Excuse me. We're not going to have the disruption. Come on. Stop it.
If I were in needing to avail myself of a wheelchair transportation today, yesterday, tomorrow, I cannot go up the street, and I have a picture I took as I was coming over here to verify that. The property is unleaseable. We're going to take down the leasing signs. We're going to take down the leasing signs. It's an excellent building. It's a 25,000-square-foot building with great freeway visibility. It's always been occupied, and it is unleaseable at present. And we manage a great deal of real estate in the region.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speakers, Christian McGlade, Derek Katron, then Mike Testa.
Hi, everyone. My name's Christian McGlade. I reside in District 6, but I'm a Realtor that serves the entire region here. I'm speaking in support of four and five because... And I just wanted to give a few examples why, two examples. First of all, my office, I used to work in midtown here. I had clients come in to visit me, business partners come in too, to visit me to take care of our clients. Our clients weren't feeling safe walking past the encampments. They were getting their dresses pulled. It wasn't safe to walk into my office. Therefore, I moved out of midtown. I no longer work in midtown. So that is a first example. The second example is on behalf of someone in my household who unfortunately could not make it today. He worked at Target over on Riverside and Broadway. There were tents pitched outside of Target, feces all over the bathroom that he regularly had to take care of, needles in the bathroom that kids and families use. So I just wanted to give these two examples to kind of exemplify why I support these issues on behalf of me and my household. Thank you, Council and Mayor, for listening.
Thank you for your comments. Derek Katron, then Mike Testa, then Jerome Gerace.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council members, city staff. My name is Derek Katron. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Sacramento Association of Realtors and our over 7,000 members in the city. I'm here to express the association's support for item four to address the urgent need for an elevated response to the city's homelessness crisis. The crisis of homelessness impacts all of our community, both people experiencing homelessness and the broader community of housed residents, businesses, and neighborhoods. The voters in the city adopted Measure O. because they want and need specific outcomes. Constituents want to see the city and county working together in partnership towards measurable results in numbers and the visual of safe city streets. That's not what we're seeing right now. The needs of our community have reached a new level of urgency that cannot be delayed. We support item four, which we believe will provide a clear protocol to city departments to enforce existing policies that will provide these outcomes that constituents are looking for. We want to acknowledge the leadership of the council members who brought this item forward and thank them for their continued efforts to address this crisis and create a safer Sacramento for all of us. The Sacramento Association of Realtors strongly supports this item and urges members of the council to vote yes. Thank you for the opportunity to comment today.
Thank you for your comments. Mike Testa, Jerome Gerace, then Steve Mamet.
Good afternoon, Mayor Steinberg, members of the City Council, and City Manager Chan. My name is Mike Testa, and I'm the president and CEO of Visit Sacramento. I'm joined today by a number of hotel partners from properties like the Citizen Hotel, the Embassy Suites Hotel, the Sheridan Grand, the Hyatt Regency, and the Marriott Village Cal Expo. In response to item four regarding homeless response protocol, we encourage City Council to enact a new enforcement strategy to address issues associated with encampments in downtown throughout the city, including violations of the sidewalk ordinance, critical infrastructure ordinance, and other public encampment ordinances. This will provide city staff with additional support in addressing these violations and mechanisms to bring about sustainable results for all of Sacramento's residents. As a city, we should not be selective in the laws that we enforce. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Jerome Gerace, Steve Mamet, Robert Copeland.
Mayor Steinberg, members of the City Council, and Manager Chan, my name is Jerome Harris, and I serve as the General Manager for the Sheridan Grand in downtown Sacramento. We encourage the council to enact a new enforcement strategy to address the issues associated with encampments throughout the city, including, but not limited to, violations of the sidewalk ordinance, critical infrastructure ordinance, and all of public encampment ordinances. Contract business is a big segment of my overall revenue. I am at risk of losing 15,000 room nights because tires of cars were slashed on J. Street. Aside from the revenue loss, it also means a quarter of a million dollars in TOT loss because the client is currently looking and exploring its sites in Roseville, West Sacramento, and El Grove. Houston's unhoused population from a pre-pandemic to today went down 28%. Hours went up 43%. I'm also in support of the other ordinance, and I'm not sure if this is the right time to speak about it, or I should come back for item number five because that goes in terms of what the next agenda item is. I see that I come back for item number five, so I'll leave it at this. Thank you very much.
Steve Mamet, Steve, Robert Copeland, then Charles Faust.
Good afternoon, Mayor Steinberg, City Manager Chan, and distinguished members of the City Council. My name is Steve Mamet. I am the General Manager of the Waterfront Embassy Suites Hotel on Sacramento's Riverfront Promenade. And I'm here also today to testify in support of the proposed homeless response protocol and the proposed ordinance that would give full authority to the city manager to identify and open new temporary shelter sites throughout the city of Sacramento. I opened this beautiful waterfront hotel 22 years ago, from the ground up, and in that time, the homeless population has increased substantially in old Sacramento and in the waterfront area. However, what is more compelling than the increase in numbers is that many in this population have become increasingly violent and aggressive. It is a regular occurrence for me to hear from my hotel guests that they have been harassed or intimidated just to walk across the street to enjoy our city's amenities. Just two weeks ago, one of my hotel guests was violently assaulted just two blocks from my hotel. As the city leaders, it is imperative that we provide our citizens and our visitors a safe downtown and a safe waterfront experience. This crisis should be our city's top priority, and we believe these ordinances will make a positive impact. As citizens and businesspeople, we all realize that this is a very complex and difficult issue. However, there is no task more vitally important than ensuring public safety. Additionally, it is significantly important to recognize that we must protect our city's reputation for safety. If we are to continue to attract conventions and groups, our economic vitality depends on it. I encourage you to support these proposals, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Robert Copeland, Charles Faust, then Jeff Harris.
Hi, my name is Robert Copeland, District 4, which is that I live in midtown. The last time I was threatened by a homeless person was when Steve Hansen was the City Council member. Definitely happened once. So there's all this violent crime against residents or guests in Sacramento. I don't see it a lot of the times. Far as services, Mayor Steinberg has failed Sacramento. He should have had a housing plan that's comprehensive year one of this mayor. No, you did not. Don't lie to us, Mayor Steinberg. You did not have a good plan. You didn't consult with a lot of us. You wanted your way or the highway. I talked to people on Measure O. in midtown and downtown in a part of Oak Park. A lot of them did not want Measure O. because... Are you going to offer services to these homeless populations when they got swept? Do they have medication or personal items? They lose a lot of the time. They lose that due to the police. The police are the wrong people to do it. I've seen homeless people get swept by the police. They don't trust the police. They want help. Are you going to provide that help? A lot of times, services are non-existent. Because a lot of times, there's no shelter space. People need housing, and you're not providing that in great enough numbers. Homeless population's got a lot worse since you became mayor, and that is a fact.
Charles Faust, then Jeff Harris, then Emily Bay Michaels.
The safe grounds that people are going to be sent to are not suitable for human habitation. It's defined in here what an encampment is, and everything in the safe ground fits that definition of what an encampment is. So things that you're sweeping people from are what you're putting people into. The only difference is the city's paying for one, and they are just as dangerous, if not more dangerous, because they're being told to go there. And the things they're being told to do, they're think are safe because someone's paying for them to do it, and there's professionals there that are telling them how to do things. So we need actual indoor centers before we can go this dramatic with the way that we're sweeping. And I know that every one of you that I've talked to believes that. So I think it's just something that needs to happen before we go too dramatic on sweeping people and putting them into safe grounds, which are, by the definition in this, not actually safe.
Jeff Harris, then Emily Bay Michaels, then Johnny Smith.
Good afternoon, Council. It's been about nine years since I've spoke to you from this side of the dais. You know, this item number four about response protocols, I want to thank the city manager and staff for bringing this forward. It has been needed for over two and a half years. In fact, if this had been adopted when the manager brought forth the frequently asked questions about homeless response, we could have avoided Measure O. altogether. Measure O. passed, and it was the will of the people, but thanks to the, again, to the city manager, he was able to talk people down from some of the requirements of Measure O., which would have subjected the city to very undue and excessive liability. So thank you, Howard. That was a big effort and much appreciated. We have ordinance for a reason. It's there to safeguard the safety and livability in our city. We have this ordinance so that we can enforce them, and we have to do so. This is a great set of response protocols to do exactly that. The tide is turning. Look at other western cities like Las Vegas, San Diego, Portland. While complying with Martin V. Boise, they are listening to the majority of their voters and are demanding the safety and livability once again through enforcement of their ordinance. And it is true that whether a person is housed or unhoused, they are not above the law and must comply. You know, it's not tenable to enable camping on our streets in perpetuity, but that's what we have done. We've had a lot of wins, but we're falling short in terms of addressing the needs of the bulk of our constituents. It is wrong to allow these camps with unlawful activities, flagrant drug use, and squalor to continue. So we'll talk about that more in item five. This number four, this item number four reflects the will of the people, and I urge you to pass it.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Emily Bay Michaels, Johnny Smith, and Henry Hawthorne.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, and City Manager. Thank you, Mario, for your work and your presentation. I'm Emily Bay Michaels, the Executive Director of the Midtown Association. We represent 1,200 property owners in midtown. We support both the recommendations to grant the city manager the authority to identify and open new temporary shelter sites, and recommendations as written in the staff report to update the citywide homelessness response protocol. I'm here to speak on item four, but we see them as really intertwined. When you look at the hotspot map for calls for city services related to homelessness, your central city looks like it's on fire. The central city is a major sales tax generator for the city, which is critical as we look at state budget contractions, increasing liabilities for retirement obligations, and a need for funds to invest in underrepresented areas of the city. We are seeing lower sales tax performance in the central city as compared to this time last year, which is indicative of consumer behavior in relation to the reputation that we have for safety and cleanliness. We've proven that establishing safe ground sites from the dais does not work. We need our city manager to be able to focus on pragmatic sites where we have site control and access for quick results. Miller Park has demonstrated that sites like this work. They work for our outreach team. We're able to house folks instead of moving folks continually. Many of the pressing issues facing the central city are related to symptoms of the homelessness crisis, including obstruction of businesses, destruction of properties, and harassment of residents and visitors, as you're hearing today. Most serious of these are perpetrated by a very small number of individuals, and their continued behaviors pose a risk not only to businesses and residents, but also to other unhoused individuals who are the most vulnerable. Increasing enforcement measures to address these individuals would help create a safer environment for all residents, regardless of housing status. We ask you not to get trapped in making this perfect. Please take a step forward and approve this today. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Johnny Smith, Henry Hawthorne, then Kathleen Williams.
Excuse us for the mix-up. We wanted to speak on item five.
Thank you. Henry on item five, too. Thank you. Kathleen Williams. Henry, did you want to speak on item four or five? Thank you.
I'll speak on five right now?
Kathleen.
No.
No.
No, we're on item four. Kathleen Williams.
Kathleen Edgar Lee.
Deion Dwyer. Deion. Following Deion is Renita Wingson, then Devin Strecker.
Good afternoon, Council. Thank you for the time today. My name's Deion Dwyer. I'm representing the R. Street Partnership today, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak out. Really encouraging you to vote in favor of item four. We need to start providing the neighborhoods and the community as much compassion as we've striving to provide the individual. And I think we can strike a balance there, but we need to look forward in how we strike that balance. And we see that things, as they've been currently enacted, have not necessarily had that major of effect that we had hoped for. So on behalf of the R. Street Partnership, we urge a yes vote to item four. Thank you.
Renata, then Devin.
Good afternoon again. Just sort of have some thoughts around it and some of the language that people have used while making comments here. You know, a lot of people have used euphemisms like "camps." That is not what is happening on the streets. It's not a choice. People are there because they've fallen into circumstances, and we don't have enough social welfare programs to assist people before this takes place. And I think, you know, we heard a lot from business owners here, from Realtors. How is it that we're going to balance this when we're not taking care of the people? The violence is not a result of, you know, wanting to have to live in front of a space. It's that they don't have anywhere else to go. I think we need to take a real pause and reflect on what all of this means, you know? Reverend Desmond Tutu said, "There comes a point where we need to stop pulling people out of the water. We need to go upstream and find out why they're falling in."
Thank you for your comments. Devin Strecker, then Michael Alt, then Rachel Brown.
Greetings, Mayor, City Council, and staff. I'm Devin Strecker, Executive Director of the River District, and we are here in support of item four and five. We all know that homelessness is the number-one issue impacting Sacramento today, and that our efforts to date have failed us. Everyone here wants the same thing, for those who are living on the streets to have a better life. No one should be forced to live on a sidewalk, suffering from mental health or drug addiction and left to die. We need immediate and decisive action to offer safe spaces for people to recover and accept the services and help that they need. If this one simple action is taken, so many of our other problems will be addressed. Kids shouldn't have to walk over needles on their way to school. Businesses should not have to close due to theft or loss of business. A resident shouldn't have to accept the squalor that we see on so many of our streets. In the River District alone, we have already removed over 200 tons of litter this year, many of it, most of it, from encampments, whereas as recently as five years ago, we were consistently removing about 25 tons of trash per year. The status quo is not sustainable, nor is it acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Michael Alt, Rachel Brown, then Carlos Chavez.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of City Council, City Manager, City Attorney, Michael Alt with the Downtown Partnership. You know, I've been in this job for, I think last week was 27 years, and I've never seen as much impact and challenges as we've got from a social reality downtown. We represent the 65 square blocks of downtown Sacramento, and to say we're in need of additional capacity with our city departments to not only manage but enforce this situation is an understatement. You have charged me as a partner in the Downtown Partnership. You have charged me as a partner in the Downtown Partnership with economic development, with bringing people back to work, with trying to build a sense of identity for this community. We are losing the downtown core. We are losing our perception. We are losing the reality that this is a safe place to be. I think we've got a responsibility as a community. We've got a responsibility to not just the unhoused, but to the businesses, to the hospitality industry in this community to provide a safe space. We need to do more. We can do more. We should do more. Many of you have reached out to me. Obviously, you know, my wife had an issue. We're living at the Embassy Suites. I not only work here, but due to a flood in our house, we now are calling downtown home over the last five months. A lot could have been done and should have been done to prevent this. I want to acknowledge, it's not part of this item, but I want to acknowledge the leadership of Kathy Lester and her team with the police department. I do not know where we would be without their efforts in managing some of the realities. Many of these are not homeless issues. As you've heard from some of the speakers, a lot of this has to do with mental health, with drug use, with aggressive behavior that has been allowed to be more impactful and not accountable as it should be. We need more resources. Item number four will be a step towards that. We can do better. We're building new amenities down here. We need to protect them. We need to protect both the populations, but we can do better as a community. And I ask you in this first step to support this. We will also be here later in support of item five, but we can do better. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Rachel Brown, Carlos Chavez, then David Shipman.
Good afternoon, mayor, council members, city manager. I did not bring typed notes. I thought I'd echo some of what my colleagues have said. I am Rachel Brown, Executive Director of the Power and Alliance, which is an industrial business park area over in the Power Inn Road. Our budget is roughly spent 40% of it on cleaning up garbage that is dumped throughout the district. So I think this is a tool. I'm also in support of five. I think time is of the essence for us to provide services to our unhoused and ensure that they have a safe place to go. I'd like to see our community be safe and clean for all, whether you're unhoused or housed. As others said, for the kids to walk to school, for businesses to operate and bring revenue to the city, for our residents to enjoy going to the parks. All of those things are important, and I think we should try better for all of our community members. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Carlos Chavez, then David Shipman.
Hello, my name is Carlos Chavez. I'm representing Region Business today, and I stand in favor of full support of the enforcement actions that are taking place, actions that are long overdue. As we gather here in Sacramento, a city we once knew as a safe, clean, vibrant, we can no longer ignore the truth. Sacramento has lost its essence, and our responsibility is to address the pressing issues at hand. Our city has been struggling with the homelessness crisis, and it's clear that the situation has spiraled out of control. Many who are not from here and many that are refusing to help what we have to offer. It is crucial that we enforce the rule of law and restore the order and safety of our beloved community. We applaud today's vote in favor of the enforcement, but it is heartening that our council has to reconsider enforcing its own rules. This time has come for the council to step aside and grant the power to our dedicated public safety professionals, allowing them to uphold the basic common sense of law that protects our residents. Our city deserves better. It's time to take action and regain control of our streets, neighborhood, and public spaces. When law and order prevail, we create the necessary friction to push those experiencing homelessness towards those that help, they need, and deserve. As for Region Business, we ask each of you to cast a vote in favor of these enforcement actions. Let us come together, united in our commitment to revitalize Sacramento and create a city where businesses can thrive, families can flourish, and safety, and everyone can enjoy a night of fun without fear. Today marks a turning point. It's a time for us to act decisively for the sake of our city and its people. Together, we reclaim the Sacramento we once knew and loved. Thank you for your attention, and we sincerely ask you for a vote with no changes. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. David Shipman, then David Levingood. We have 16 more speakers.
Good afternoon, Mayor Steinberg, city council members, and city manager Chan. Thank you for your time today. Appreciate it. I'm the general manager of the Citizen Hotels. As you can imagine, kind of ground zero for a lot of the discussion today. Along with my colleagues, I too have experienced what they've experienced, so no need to rehash all that. But I would like to say a couple of things. Number one, I also encourage the council to enact the new enforcement strategy to address issues associated with encampments to downtown and throughout the city, including violations of the sidewalk ordinance, critical infrastructure ordinance, and other public encampment ordinances. This will provide the city staff with additional support in addressing these violations and mechanisms to bring about sustainability result for all Sacramento residents. I would also add one comment that has briefly been touched on today. It is vitally important for this community to support the services, the hospitality industry, and Mike Testa's efforts. He provides a vital tax base for all of this, for all of your budget, right? Mayor Steinberg, you said year-round respite was super important to you. That comes by supporting our businesses. The greater occupancy we have, the greater ADRs we have, these support services all benefit from that. So the more that we show a lack of care and concern to our industry, to our businesses, right? It only defeats the purpose of which you're trying to achieve. So the more that we can understand that, the more that you can understand our mission is to serve our guests and our employees, who quite honestly are afraid to come to work. I too am about to lose a piece of corporate business, similar to Jerome, right? I have a major airline that doesn't want to come into the hotel any longer because they feel unsafe, right? So please take that into effect. This is about financials for all of us and including all of you to make good decisions for everybody.
Thank you for your comments. David Levingood, then Annecydo Ballengut.
Mayor Steinberg, council members. I'm the director, my name is Dave Levingood. I am the Director of Event Technology at the Sheraton Grand, but more importantly, I am also a homeowner in District Two. Thank you for coming the other day to District Two. I appreciate you coming there and Loli as well. We currently are in a stranglehold with, we have no one to call to help us with the homeless crisis. If we call 3-1-1, they have us call the police. The police then tell us they can't do anything because our hands are tied because of, you know, we can't criminalize the homeless. So then we have to call the park rangers because our parks and our bike paths are not available for children and families to walk to school and things of that sort. And in District Two, a lot of those families have no other option except to walk their children down that bike path to school because they don't have money for public transportation or even for cars and things of that sort. So I fully support four and five because it gives us a chance now to actually have someone to call instead of, you know, having this roundabout go on where we have no one to call. And it kind of takes the stranglehold off the police to actually move people or get people to the mental health services that they require and things of that sort. That way, we can actually live in our streets, walk on our bike paths, and have our properties, you know, not be overrun by this and be hurt by these homeless encampments. So thank you for your time and very much for these proposals.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jay, then Jack Blatner, then John Krantz.
Hello, city council. When we say homelessness, we are talking about people. The issue is a group of people. This problem is not a nail. We are hitting it with a hammer. What if the problem was a bowl of oatmeal and we have a cycle repeatedly striking it with a hammer? We are lumping people together under homelessness and talk about crime and plans of enforcement on an entire community. When people have stability, they are safe, as well as safer for everyone. Making their lives more difficult will make everyone less safe. I want to work with the homeless community to build bridges, and enforcement of these encampments damages those communities. I'm an advocate and outreach worker working independently. For the last few months, I've been delivering water weekly to encampments, primarily in District Four, but including Alhambra and W. It's been a very busy time since the sweep of 28th and C, as well as the 22nd and C sweep. People who did not go to Miller Park or tried to and left are essentially scattered around District Four right now. I saw Mario's presentation on the homelessness workshop before this council took a recess. Any camp that was listed as priority, I spent time talking with each week and delivering water. While expressing gratitude for the services offered, we need to see more and especially more time to coordinate with each individual. If you are enforcing storage on public property, then leave the tents. Don't destroy their everything. Don't force them to shoulder everything and start over. Before Measure O, Sacramento was already conducting mass sweeps. When the council agrees we need more enforcement, what I see on the street is more sweeps harder and faster. Treat each person in a camp as an individual. Mario is talking about Alhambra and W, and I would love to see each person giving opportunity to express whether they're willing to get rid of the stuff that is spilling out into the sidewalk to be in compliance or not. And I don't see those conversations happening for long enough with enough care for each person as individual. And I see everyone getting tagged all at once and everyone getting impacted, even those who are trying to keep it as clean as possible.
Thank you for your comments. Jack Blatner, then John Krantz. Then we'll go online, and I have 10 more online.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council. This is Jack Blatner with the Sacramento Metro Chamber, representing businesses throughout the six-county region. The chamber strongly supports this item. While we do believe that the city manager already had the authority to enforce existing city ordinances, we are still pleased to see the show of support and priority from the council. While at times a thankless task, keeping our sidewalks, parks, and city infrastructure clean and accessible to the public is an essential duty of city government. The business community stands ready to help in any way possible, and we thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comments. John Krantz.
I'd like to start by saying that Mark Barron was intending to speak here today, but he couldn't stay, so. I think that this ordinance, well, good intentioned, is probably not going to be complete without the fifth item on this docket. Because if you break these camps up, they're just going to go somewhere else, and then you're going to have to do it all over again. The only thing is, they're a little more angry, a little more desperate, and doing things which they probably wouldn't normally do if they weren't in a desperate situation. I think that we need to find a place for people to go. That's primary. If we don't have a place to move them to, we're not going to do any good to move them from a place. So I'm really, I'm thinking my support of this initiative is going to be dependent on what happens with the next initiative. Clearly, we have a situation where these things are not acceptable places to be. They're not designed for people to live in these spaces, and it's not the right thing. And they probably wouldn't be in a lot of these spaces if they weren't trying to hide from persecution and prosecution. So I really think that we have to focus, and the end result ultimately would be housing, if we can do housing. And for what is being spent at Miller Park? For people to live in a tent, I mean, there's enough money being spent there that we could put them in housing, probably put several times as many. Because, I mean, we're talking a very large amount of money. Anyhow, I'm out of time, so.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Jeff Dorsow. I have 10 more speakers.
Good afternoon. Jeff Dorsow, I'm the Senior Vice President, General Counsel for the Sacramento Kings. The Kings would like to voice their support for item four, and appreciate the mayor's opening comments. I think it's somewhat difficult to separate item four and item five as both, I think, represent the fundamental tenets of really what makes society in terms of everyone having a safe place to live and the enforcement of basic laws and rules. So to that end, we feel like the homeless and, of course, other citizens and businesses deserve a safe place to all live, as well as to enjoy the enforcement of all public laws to ensure a safe society for everyone. So with that, we support item four, and it sounds like we will be back to support item five as well. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is HHF Los Angeles.
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, so the homeless response protocol. We're from Uncle Johnny's Housing Transition. We have outreach coordinators that has been doing assessment as far as what the issues are. Is when we do assessment in the encampments for the last three years. The problem is, you couldn't place them somewhere. So the businesses that came and spoke up and the hotel owners, we sympathize with you, but it is not our fault. So you have Patricia Solomon, Henry Hawthorne, Rashad Reed, led by Johnny Smith. That has identified properties, locations, where we can place shelters, which is four. We have 17 locations for permanent housing. The problem is, we don't need any red tape to even put these people in these houses. And this is the problem. So we need to really be transparent on how we can really solve the homeless crisis. We can't have the NIMBY attitude and say, yeah, my businesses are being affected, but when there's a place to actually build housing navigation for the homeless, you say, not in my backyard. So we want to really be transparent on this homeless protocol. We thank you, Mr. Laura and Mr. Chan, for bringing this forth. We ask Mr. Daryl Steinberg to work with the other council members to make this happen. So that requires everyone to be at the table. So that's Kaplan, Loli, Tamaltes, Velazuela, Maple, Guerra, Rick Jennings, and Proten May Vey. So Stephen Mamet, Michael Alt, Rachel, Carlos Chavez, just a few people that spoke today. The people in that room, the answer is right in that room. Speak with them. We have a proposal that's submitted to Mr. Chan concerning what we can do to do outreach and engagement successfully. We just have to have the yes and everybody transparent at the table of what's really happening. I believe six months from now, we can actually solve the homeless crisis with this proposal funded. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Winter, then Stuart Gow. Winter, if you'll unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Fantastic. So I wanted to start with asking if anyone got consent from the Sacramento citizens who are out of compliance in those photos? Or what about the ones who are in compliance with their tent under a bridge away from humanity at large in the eyes of those who don't want to see them? This proposal brings up that it has no limit to its budget. As human life has no measure, but instead of those funds or resources being given to those in need, they're going to go to emergency services, which is a thinly coded way of saying to cops as they track, harass, and hide away the citizens of Sacramento who are already having the worst time of their life. And now you want to remove the only reliable roof that these citizens have. Their vehicle, even broken down, being out of the elements is vital to a human being's natural right to shelter. These funds need to go to providing for these citizens. A previous speaker spoke on trust and the lost trust with the homeless population of Sacramento. And I heartily agree that we need to prove ourselves to the people, as we genuinely care about them. Every safety net that we have has failed them, and we need to commit to rebuilding those nets stronger than ever. Not as means-tested waste of time, where you have to only make a certain amount of money or you can only be this disabled, but as a way to preserve human life and create paths back into society. Many realtors and magnets have spoken here today about how the behaviors of the homeless are unacceptable and how they've gotten worse since they've begun doing their business here. But they've got to speak on their role there. As money is funneled up and away from the people, as their homes are bought and torn down to make these hotels, apartments, Airbnbs, they end up on the streets. And rather than face what they've done, they ask us citizens to move them out of their view and to pay for that as well. I implore you all to oppose item four and act immediately to provide those in need with abandoned or vacant residences. I don't care if you've got to give people a Taco Bell as long as they have running water. Just put them somewhere where they can live as a human being. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Stuart Gow, and then Nick.
Hi there, thanks for letting me speak. I'm a resident of District Two in North Sacramento. I'm a photographer. I've been documenting life in North Sacramento for the past month. So I get a pretty good sense of how dire our situation is here. I agree that we do need to have the ability to enforce codes and laws, but to maintain a safe and healthy environment for everyone. But I'm cautious about this new ability for the city to move the unhoused, that it could easily result in moving the unhoused out of wealthier, whiter parts of the city into communities of color, into disadvantaged communities, underserved communities, into communities without the same resources and funds and political power as the wealthy neighborhoods. So North Sacramento has gone from a count of 150 homeless in 2017 to thousands that have been sent out across here, squeezed out of the city, across the river. It's just a 10-minute walk from my house to many large encampments. So there's an incredible concentration here. Moving the unhoused into marginalized communities begins to resemble our city's shameful past practices, when neighborhoods were defined by redlining, segregation. The proximity of these sites makes it easy for networking between them. So we So we live within a network that crisscrosses of crime, of drug dealing, of prostitution, that crisscrosses our entire community and is a clear threat to the health and safety of North Sacramento. I hope the council members will listen to me and will work hard and be brave enough to represent not only your own constituents, but all of the city's residents, housed and unhoused, black, white, brown, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Nick, and then Mark.
Yeah, good afternoon, folks. I think it's obvious that safety, stability, long-term solutions, these are the things that sort of everybody actually needs in this situation. While it's taken a long time to see a strategic plan put forward, I'm sad to say that strategic plan is not the transformation that we need. The fact that this is even called the Homelessness Response Protocol and then outlines your plans to go from camp to camp to disassemble the camps, and that's such, you know, that's lightly phrased, but people being pushed from block to block and even being outright offered, you know, and we'll get to this on the next item, but who knows what those camps are even going to be like. And the fact that they are camps and not actual shelter or housing options is a huge problem. We need to stop with this emergency Band-Aids. We need transformation of a very broken emergency response system, and this ain't it. We need an emergency-level aggressive pursuit of actual housing for people whose trust, the system broke long ago. So people are more angry, they are more tired, they are more frustrated, they have been pushed to further edges. It is because we have a status quo policy of criminalization. With all the waitlists and housing lotteries participants, we know that service resistance is just a pervasive myth, and it's built on this coercive service delivery model, which now you've drawn out very clearly. It's a coercive service delivery model whose success will always be limited by its means. An offer based on a threat is not an offer, it's an ultimatum. We need real, relevant options and things like trash and hygiene and other basic need support so that the thousands on the street who truly long for housing and rest could build stability as they await their officials to make.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Mark, and I have five more speakers on this item.
Yes, hi. I represent District Number Two, and as well as my fellow neighbors, the Facebook groups of All Eyes on Deck for District Two, as well as Safe and Clean Del Paso Heights. And we support this resolution, number four, even though it is, it will be a weak enforcement. But however, we believe that this is a minor step towards some kind of consequences for these people constantly dumping trash and using our neighborhoods as their own personal dumping grounds and parking their buses and their vehicles as well. And I have a much better recommendation. I recommend that the city take its tow truck and its garbage truck and pick up the garbage and the RVs and put them in the neighborhoods, the city council people, as well as the mayor. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Dylan Hoy Bianchi.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Excellent. Council, you've heard a lot in this meeting so far, a lot of public comments from just the usual sort of Chamber of Commerce types supporting this item and demonizing homeless people. And you might be tempted to view that as a reflection of public opinion, but in reality, that's a reflection of the irresponsible decision to hold this important meeting at 12:30 in the afternoon, when most people can't afford to show up because they have to miss time from their job. So you're primarily hearing from people whose jobs allow them to write off their lobbying efforts as a business expense. Unfortunately, I happen to be unemployed, so I can show up for free, try and talk some sense, and I have two points to make. First one, Mayor Steinberg, you described the sweep at 28th and C as a success and something we should be looking to as an example, but the numbers that Mario Lara gave in his presentation directly contradict that rosy picture you're trying to paint. It said approximately 140 people were swept from that camp, but only 11 of them ended up at a safe ground site, and that's a success? You're not asking the most important question here. Were there actually 140 available spaces in shelters at the time of that sweep? If not, this sweep was an illegal violation of Martin v. Boise. If you don't have an alternative location to which someone can directly go, you have no business displacing them. And my second point is that I think it would be a huge mistake to expand Howard Chan's power. He already wields far too much in this city. His willingness to defy direction from this council and slow-roll the implementation of policies just because he has personal beef with members of the council has been a constant thorn in your side, and his power should, if anything, be dramatically reduced, not expanded. And I'm sure I'll talk more about that in the next item as well, because it's relevant to item five, too. But it would be a huge mistake to expand his power, especially if all you're doing, expanding it for, is to further displace homeless people who have really just had nothing but suffering going on, and they'd need a fucking break. So please give it to them. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Alexander. Alexander, if you'll unmute.
I'm going to cut this guy off if he doesn't send me again. Can you hear me?
We can.
Good, and I just heard the mayor say, cut me off. Just everyone in Sacramento needs to understand that it's a crime to cut off a citizen's First Amendment, and the mayor's been doing this routinely. So it's hard to address the crime running wild in the city when the mayor's criminally shutting down citizens who have opinions different from his. So anyways, speak with all the citizens who uphold law and order. Yes, we do need law and order, and it applies to you whether you have a house or whether you're homeless. Doesn't matter who you are, the law applies to us all. Doesn't matter if you're rich or you're poor, you're black or you're white, it doesn't matter your race or your gender, the law still applies to you. And if you don't like that, that's an issue that is a personal one that you need to deal with. So if we're going to uphold the law for everyone, it doesn't mean that people who are poor get to get away with violence. There are billions of people who are poor on this earth, because America is the top 10 richest on the face of this earth. So there are billions who make far less than anyone in America, including those who are homeless and on welfare, and those people don't resort to violence. So this idea that because you're poor, you have the right to be violent against others is total nonsense, and nobody should accept that. We all are human beings. We're going to be in adverse situations. The adverse situations do not define us. It is our response that defines us. Right now, Sacramento has the worst mayor and city council in Sacramento history. They are a disgrace to the entire heritage of Sacramento and California. Until that problem is dealt with, nothing else really will be dealt with. And it's not really the government's job to be helping the homeless. It would be ours, except we're being stolen from by the mayor's overmasters who steal from us with the income tax.
Cut him off. Cut him off. That was going in the territory. Thank you. Point of order, that is irrelevant to the issue at hand. He was going into the area of bigotry when he talks about the mayor's masters and all this business. I know where this is going. This guy has a history of antisemitism, just like some of his other friends, and we're not going to have that in this chamber. Cut him off.
I have two more speakers. The next is John Frias Morales, then D5 Resident.
I support the Homeless Response Protocol. I live one block away from Planned Parenthood in Stanford Park. I was there when DCR did the sweep. There were hundreds of hypodermic needles on the sidewalk. This year, hundreds of needles have been found in the Stanford Park bathroom. One time, a soccer coach stopped the kid's soccer game in order to pick up needles on the field. Neighbors are scared to go on vacation. Will their homes be burglarized or even burned down? And seniors don't go for walks anymore. They can't enjoy their retirement with homeless across the street. The C and 28th Street Encampment caused a lot of crimes. Just look at the police heat map online. You will see this year there were four assaults, 16 burglaries, and four narcotic arrests. At this very moment, there are homeless in RV trailers at Planned Parenthood. These RVs are dumping raw sewage into the sidewalk in the street. Homeless broke into the city water supply near Planned Parenthood, put up a bed sheet to hide the water pipe break-ins. This morning, the homeless were taking showers in front of Planned Parenthood. The public health and infrastructure are now at risk. We can't wait. Our future is on the line. Every day, everywhere you go, we see the results of crime, blight, and homelessness. But rather than be helpless, we can work together and make decisions now to make Sacramento a better place to live and work. Let's listen to each other now. Let's solve problems now. Let's have a better Sacramento now. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. D5 Resident is our final speaker on this item.
Thank you, everybody, for being here today. I support this measure. I was just, I was curious, because I thought I heard Mario said he removed about 16,000 pounds of garbage from that, the one camp there. The average household only produces 1,600 pounds of garbage a year, and that camp produced 10 times that amount in a few short months. They also found over 178 needles, which were supplied by our nonprofits in the area. So Wu also has the duty to the camps, if they are actually helping and advocating for clean needle usage and things of that nature, to come by and empty out these sharps containers, the biohazard, but instead, they're laying all over the ground. People cannot learn to be accountable when they're under the influence. We have a huge drug problem. This is not a homeless problem, an unhoused problem. We have a mental health crisis. People are self-medicating because they don't get to their appointments. Nobody's there to tell them to get to their appointments. And in that state of mind, you're just not thinking correctly. That's all I got. Thank you, guys, for being here.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers on this item.
Thank you very much for the members of the public who weighed in on this item. Let's now turn it over to the City Council, and I'll begin with Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank everybody who spoke, those who came at this time of 2 o'clock in the afternoon. I know it may not be convenient for everybody, but I want to thank you for being here and also for those who called in and spoke as well. Appreciate the number of callers and all the information that they provided. Councilmembers Talamontes, Kaplan, and myself asked for this discussion to happen as it relates to item number four, in addressing the needs of the homeless and addressing the impact on residents and businesses. And our goal was real simple, to ensure that a safe place and public safety for all was something that could happen, to have compliance on existing ordinances that are currently on the books, and to make sure that we comply with those ordinances in order to ensure a safe place and public safety for all. And equally as important, to make sure that we show compassion while complying with those ordinances, especially for those who are unhoused. The process that Assistant City Manager Mario Lara presented on outreach, encampment management, and compliance, I thought was an excellent presentation. I want to thank him and his staff for doing that. That will allow us to have weekly reporting on clean, accessible sidewalks, those that are willing to accept services and taking a look at the public safety issue that we talked about, those who have been hurt along the way. It gives us an opportunity to help those that we want to help, gives us an opportunity to help the kids that are trying to get to school but can't get there because the sidewalk is blocked. It helps us to find those who are blocking the sidewalk, alternative places to stay so that they can continue to have a better life than the life that they've had. So we do want to show compliance. We do want to make sure that we comply with the existing ordinances. So I'm going to stop for a second, because I'd like my colleagues, Talamontes and Kaplan, to speak on this as well. So I want to give up my time and give them the rest of the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jennings, for bringing this important item forward. Councilmember with your colleagues, Councilmember Talamontes and Councilmember Kaplan, go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Jennings, for opening it up for us. I'd like to make a motion to move item number four with staff recommendation as is in Parts One and Two, but not Section Three, that rescinds Resolution Number 2022-0286. And with that being said, is there a second?
I will second that for purpose of continuing conversation.
I'm sorry, can you clarify? Because I want to understand that you're, the last part of what you said is...
Yeah, so I'm making a motion to move Items Four with staff recommendation. So for item, or the piece One and Two, good to go, but on item...
Staff rec.
Staff recommendation. But on Item Three, I don't want to rescind Resolution Number 2022-0286.
Which was what? Just to remind, if can you...
I can.
Yes, Ms. Mayor of City Attorney, just to make this clear.
Those are resolutions passed in 2022, which was essentially directions to the city manager and the city attorney with regards to enforcing the sidewalk ordinance to utilize, well, for lack of a better word, more compassion in how we enforce it. And so the council passed those resolutions as they exist, and they're not necessary to be repealed as part of this action.
They're not necessary to be repealed. Okay, so that's what, I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you, Mayor. And so thank you to Mario and your team at DCR and everyone involved with this, our legal team, Sazana's team. And I do agree that Item Four and Five do go hand in hand. And the reason why we wanted to do this is because our city manager has nine different bosses, all pointing him in different directions. So I thought, and my colleagues thought, it was important to have a protocol for him and our city staff to work on and to work with when dealing with homelessness and somewhere to point to. So as part of our recently passed budget, more funds were allocated towards cleanup. The single most important thing we can do right now to clean up our city. Obviously, we need more housing, a lot more housing, a lot more services, but what can we do right now is help with cleanup. And the most frequently reported issue by constituents is trash and solid waste. So we need to have more trash cans throughout the city, more pressure washing, more recycle bins. And at the end of the day, that's what we can do to improve the lives immediately of all our residents here in Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to thank Councilmember Jennings and Councilmember Talamontes. I think, as we stated last time, we're not part of the four-by-two, and so we came together with city staff to really look at what is going on and how can we make a difference. It has been an honor to work with both of you. I think despite what many in the public may think, we on City Council, while we might disagree with policies, we do work really well together. And then thank you, staff, for answering all of our questions, because in answer to this, there is none, but it requires a more coordinated, compassionate effort. But the voters also passed Measure O. And as my fellow Councilmember Talamontes said, there are nine bosses, and we all have different opinions. And in government and how our structure was set up, a council majority in direction is what our city manager must implement. So we thought it was really important that we bring all of this together and have our council members so that everyone can state an opinion. And wherever the majority may lie, that is then where the city manager has clear direction. Thank you to everybody in the audience who has come, whether you're for this or against this. We are better together. But we have to do more for our citizens. This isn't about businesses. This is about the public safety of everyone who visits downtown. It's about our families. It's about healthy, safe neighbors. It's about making sure our good neighbor policies are implemented, because when our community feels safe and people come downtown, it benefits our business. So I'm doing this because I have two girls, and we deserve to come downtown, but we also deserve to have compassion for those who have mental breaks and to have places for them to go so we don't have to worry about violence that may occur and harassment of those who visit our city. You're correct, no task is more important than our public safety. We have to do more, because a lot of the businesses that have been affected and we see get their windows broken. These are small businesses that can't afford the cost of that. So today is really about the council weighing the constitutional rights of the unsheltered individuals against the city's need to protect the health and safety in terms of our critical infrastructure, neighborhoods, and the running of our city of government. So if we move forward as a council and adopt the implementation of these protocols, I want to make it very clear that as part of this with the city manager, that we also ensure that the protocols that ensure compliance with the ordinances on the book are consistent with Martin v. Boise and the city having our Sacramento Police Department... with Martin v. Voisey, and the city having our Sacramento Police Department with assistance from our city attorney, create training bulletins so that we have consistent implementation across the city. I want to make sure that if we move forward, and as our SAC PD officers and anybody who does this, that we have universal objective implementation and that we do the appropriate training so our officers actually know what's expected of them, so that we can find that balance, because we need to do our job in making sure, as we have compliance, that there is compassion with that and that we have objective standards that we look to. And then I also want to, this is a little aside, but as we move forward, because you're right, Mayor, this is not just about how do we clean up our city, but also where is space? And so as we move on to that, we have to look at where Sacramento steps forward and others are in ensuring that it's not a week where we know where people can go, but we have 24 hours of notification, that as we clean up our city, we do more for knowing where services are within 24 hours, not it's going to take you a week to figure out where the housing is. So I again want to thank my colleagues Jennings and Talamontes and the public. This is just one step of many, but this is also moving forward with the voters requested in Measure O that we do. And I urge and hope that my fellow council members can support the motion put on the table.
Thank you. Before I, thank you, Councilmember, before I turn it over to Councilmember Maple, I believe, or Valenzuela was next, and then Maple, let me ask the city manager to make a comment.
Thank you, Mayor. I was remiss in thanking Councilmember Jennings for bringing this item forward, both in the workshop and calling for this item to be voted on by the, this council. There was a comment earlier tonight about some of these, these ordinances and rules and resolutions, we had the ability to enforce all along. While true, this really provides, you know, to accentuate what Councilmember Kaplan said, it, it gives us, you know, a focus in terms of how we're going to enforce these things and have, you know, hopefully unanimous consensus on where this council is, because too many times we are moving forward with some of these actions, and it doesn't align with where some of the council members are on this, on this dais. And for staff, it's just a relief. So I wanted to say thank you to Councilmember Jennings, Kaplan, and Talamontes for bringing this forward, because for my office, it's great, but it's your other 5,000 employees who will get some, you know, clarity on what it is and how we're going to move forward that's really going to help us all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, let me now turn it over to Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you, and thank you, City Manager, for chiming in. My first question is actually for you, if you would. Could you detail, like as specifically as you can, how this document differs from current practice, if at all?
It's, as I said, this, this gives me clear direction on those things that are already on the books that we can enforce without having to go through the back and forth when we take an out, an action consistent with some of the things in this report, and yet when we come into open session, it gets derailed, and we literally waste hundreds of hours of staff time in preparing for some of these actions. This just solidifies the, the will of this council, the majority, hopefully unanimous, but the will of this council.
I guess, just to reframe my question, though, I mean, based on my understanding of what's happening in my district, this document largely reflects current practice between DCR and PD and with regard to code enforcement. I mean, we talked tonight about two actions in my district, specifically on C Street, that were enforcing these ordinances, so I just wanted to clarify what, what the public could expect is different.
Sure. Well, largely, you're right, but this also gives me the ability, again, from hopefully the majority of this council, to utilize resources that were not available in the past. And that is to use overtime to the extent we can and the extent we can mandatory folks. In the past, we were limited in our resources, and so this is a way of me saying, we're going to run over our budgets pretty significantly. And so when we come back at year end, I want to make sure it's clear that this council understands that's what's going to happen.
Can I just...
I'm going to follow up on that, if I could, yeah. Because I have some other questions, and then I'm going to circle back to that, because that was another point of question. I wonder, is, are Ben and Hezekiah in the audience from DCR? Ben? Oh, cool. Could you come up, please? I only singling you out because I think you're CC'd on all eight zillion emails that we get in District Four about encampment outreach and support. So I was hoping that you might give me an idea of what outreach looks like now from DCR perspective. Like, how are you working when you get a call about an encampment? What's the process look like? What are you doing today?
When we respond to a 311 call, our teams in the area, they work basically, they're assigned to specific council districts, and then they work on neighborhoods with the highest call volume. So they'll respond to an area, they'll assess the needs of the encampment, attempt to engage with all of the, the residents there, the unhoused community members, and hopefully connect them with community-based services, either through the county or through our other community partners.
Yeah, and I guess that also includes, as was mentioned before, things like picking up trash, things like voluntary compliance with codes, if there's a code being violated.
Yeah, if there is some sort of violation of a city code, they will work on obtaining voluntary compliance with them. You know, our staff, they've been briefed on what specifically constitute a violation, specifically of the critical infrastructure ordinance being within 500 feet of a school or the sidewalk ordinance. And so if there is an encampment that doesn't have that four feet of space on a sidewalk or is closer than 500 feet from a school, our staff will talk with the individual who is in that encampment and have a very honest conversation about how they can help get them into compliance, so that way we don't have to refer it over for any further action.
And if you could estimate, which I know might be hard, because you respond to hundreds of these calls, how often are your teams able to gain voluntary compliance with city codes?
Easily over 80% of the time.
Okay. That's really helpful. And then specifically, and this is related to some other conversations we've been having, but since you're up here, I'm going to ask you, how often, when you do outreach, are county staff with you? If you could guess, I know it's changing, but if you could give me like a daily estimate of how many of your calls do you have county staff responding with you?
So we currently have four county teams that are operating in the city. We will have six by the end of the summer. They've got two more behavioral health staff who are onboarding. We work with them doing outreach Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. They do their case management and their supervision on Mondays and Fridays. So they're out with our teams three days a week, working full-time on their designated encampments. The response is a little bit different with our city-county teams. They're not specifically responding only to 311 calls for service, the way that our, our traditional DCR outreach teams would. They're assigned to larger-scale encampments or broader areas, for example, Stockton Boulevard or the North B Street encampment compromising the majority of the River District. And so their focus is primarily on connecting individuals to behavioral health services brought by the county. So their, their focus isn't on the, on doing calls regarding the sidewalk ordinance or the critical infrastructure ordinance. However, when they do encounter people during that county outreach that happen to possibly be in violation of one of those ordinances, they will still have that conversation with them, but it's not their focus during that.
Okay. So I mean, I'm just approximating based on the examples you just gave, but it sounds like they're only going out to, did you say less than 10% of the encampments we have in the city?
The city-county teams?
Yeah.
That would, that'd be difficult to estimate. They are not, they're not responding to our 311 calls. So, you know, in, in a smaller encampment of two or three tents in, you know, in a, in a neighborhood that isn't highly impacted, we're not going to send the, the county clinicians out there primarily unless there's a specific need that's highlighted.
Okay. And you need to work with the county clinicians if someone's identified with a mental health challenge. You would need to work with them to come back and, and assess that person and try to get them into services most of the time, or how is that working?
Most of the time, yes. The county has made it clear to us that their core wellness centers are now open enrollment. So if an individual does have an, or does express an interest in mental health services, and they're interested right now in receiving a, a mental health assessment or a behavioral health assessment, we don't have to wait for the county clinicians to come out. We can now take them to the core wellness centers, and they can get an appointment for a behavioral health assessment.
And then I've had some people ask me about 988, because that's a new, obviously, system for people who are in acute crisis. Have you tried to use that at all to get support for encampments? Could you talk about how that's working?
We don't use it a lot. They are still very limited in their staffing, is my understanding. I'm not, I'm not an expert on it, but they, it's my understanding, they have a very small staff at this point, and they are operating countywide. I know our staff has, on two occasions, reached out to 988, but we have yet to have 988 respond in the field with our staff.
Okay. Thank you. That's all for you, Ben. Thank you for, you can go sit down. I guess part of what I deal with a lot when it comes to camps in crisis, which has been said today, as you might have noticed by the number of District Four stakeholders, is quite frequent in District Four, is the lack of response time. And so I guess one of the caveats that I'd like to hear from my colleagues about is, if everything's a priority, nothing's a priority. And I'm a little worried that when we shift these priorities to expand it to include things like storing private property on public space, that we're expanding it too widely. And that's a conversation I just want to put a pin in, is like, how do we help city staff triage most effectively? Because obviously, there's the urgent, someone's in potential immediate injury risk, right? Like they're in a road, or they're blocking a fire station access point, or they're next to a piece of equipment that is potentially dangerous or has dangerous mission. Like, there's like a, a certain level that I think we could all agree would be like, oh, my gosh, we need to go right now, because like, there's an immediate thing going on versus every other encampment that maybe, you know, is spilling out, and there's three feet of sidewalk space, and they need to come out and get compliance or something. So I guess I just want to pin that as like, I'm not sure we're giving city staff sufficient differentiation in how they prioritize. And so that's just a food for thought. Like, how do we, when we have hundreds and thousands of encampments across the city, how do we effectively prioritize? Because I don't know if the goal, and maybe the goal is with this budget authority, to say, oh, we're going to respond to every encampment every day, all the time, as soon as the call comes in. And so that's, and I'll put a pin in that, City Manager, because again, I want to follow up on the budget piece, but I, I guess I just want to make clear that like, what you're hearing said tonight is that this isn't that different than what we're doing right now, that what we're doing is codifying it so that it's public and people understand what the protocol is now. But the concern is, when you get DCR outreach with 311, 80% of the time, we're getting compliance with code. So we're really looking at like, what happens in that 20% case when someone is unable to or unwilling to comply with city code? What options do we have? I will say that part of what worries me about the way this document is stated, and what I appreciate about the amendment to the resolution that Councilmember Talamontes just made, is the distinction between encampment outreach and rapid response, because it seems like the way this is drafted, that we're moving away from trying voluntary compliance first, which obviously, if we are able to attain voluntary compliance 80% of the time, that's the ideal, because involuntary compliance means we're citing people with potential misdemeanors or we're doing other actions that are potentially harmful to them. So if we can say, hey, move your stuff over here to create four feet of space, and people are doing that, then that feels like it's ideal. So one of the things that concerned me about the way I saw this draft was that the rapid response team is there for any code violation first, and what I noticed in the way it was drafted was that it was led by Fire PD Rangers and Code, but not DCR. But obviously, DCR is working through the 311 calls and helping prioritize lists, but isn't necessarily a part of that initial outreach we would do to say, hey, you're out of compliance, let's see if we can get you to voluntary comply before we jump in with more stringent enforcement. City Manager, do you want to respond to that?
Yeah, so, so that's not correct. DCR's been part of all these conversations as we're developing this. They've been from, from day one, and they're part of this rapid response team, they're part of this larger response that we're going to be bringing back to this council with the reconstituted DCR. And so what we're saying here, though, I think you're, you're correct partially, because if you're looking at the report, you have these larger encampments that we invoke the city-county partnership, and then you have these rapid response model pieces that, while we can do the outreach, we're not going to be required to. That's the distinction.
Okay. But I guess then, I, I guess when feasible, because what I didn't see in here, because obviously, like I said, the examples I listed of like, someone's in the street or someone's blocking a fire station driveway, like, those would be times where we just need to go out and be like, hey, you got to move, like, this isn't safe. Versus, hey, you're blocking a sidewalk, which, yes, is a big issue, but isn't necessarily rise to that level of, I want to pull a police officer from other calls for service to say, hey, you got to go right now. And I would just hope that a DCR is 80% successful in getting voluntary compliance would be the first step.
Let me put it this way.
Do you want us to chime in, since...
I do, but let me just make this point, and I'll turn it back over to you. I, I want to set expectations appropriately. Even if this gets adopted perfectly the way staff is recommending, we will not be able to address the 3,000-plus calls overnight. We're going to be able to work down that list more quickly, and those instances that we have easy compliance, voluntary compliance, of course. We are not going to be pulling a police officer or somebody from Fire or Park Rangers to, to jump down to Ninth Street to clear in front of the post office. It will be on the list. It will be prioritized. It will be discussed on a daily basis with our team to figure out where, where we start addressing the calls. So that's really a good point, because I don't, on, on the flip side, there's going to be expectations that we work through all the compliance issues day one. It just will not happen.
Yeah. And so I guess then to, to Councilmember Talamontes for the motion, what I got from your amendment, and I just want to make super clear, is that unless it's like an immediate danger, like something like, oh, my gosh, you're immediately someplace that poses a risk to you or poses a risk to the public, that our first step would be to attempt voluntary compliance. Is that not accurate, City Attorney? Sorry.
I just want to make sure that it's really important that it's accurate, and it's, as it's contained in page seven of the protocols, if the rapid response are going to be primarily focused on enforcing critical infrastructure, right, encroachment on public right-of-way, and any, any other health and safety danger, there's no requirement that have to be some immediate other factor that exists before they can enforce.
Not what she's asking, though.
Well, I, I just want to make sure that...
Yeah, no, I appreciate the clarification. I guess that, to rephrase it then, we are going to seek voluntary compliance first whenever possible.
As a matter of practice, that's what she's asking, as a matter of practice.
You're in a dangerous spot, or you're hitting this spot, you, you know, you need to move over here before we resort to citations when possible.
The answer is yes, but it's not always going to be DCR. Does that give you the clarity?
Yeah, that's, that's a separate question. But Councilmember Talamontes, that was your amendment to the motion, so I just wanted...
Correct. So I was repealing the section three, which Susanna mentioned, the legal language for that. But I want to make clear that we created this so that we have a protocol and so that we're consistent in how we manage homelessness within all our departments, because the city manager and our staff are pulled in a million different directions, from a million different people up here, from businesses, from organizations, and this is just going to create a framework of how we follow procedure. And that's the most important piece of this ordinance.
Yes. Yes. But I think to the point about seeking voluntary compliance first, was that the intention of your amendment to the resolution?
Correct, when needed, but if someone's in front of...
Yeah, no, obviously, like I said, there's going to be circumstances where it's like, oh, my gosh, you need to go right now, because you're in the middle of...
Yeah, if we need to call PD or Fire or whoever, yes.
Like, there's an urgent issue happening, and we need you to go. Okay. And I appreciate that clarification, because I think the question that kept rattling around in my head of what does compliance look like? Because I don't think we would all say, any of us would say, that compliance looks like moving you from one noncompliant location to another noncompliant location and starting the clock over again. But that is unfortunately what's happening to an extent. We're asking people, hey, you can't be here, we don't, you know, you're blocking this thing over here, and so then they move to another spot, and then we start the clock over again. And when you represent an area like, like I have the whole central city, right? And so what's interesting is I'll have one business owner call me and say, hey, this encampment's a big problem, you know, they'll go out and do outreach, they'll say, hey, well, voluntary compliance will move over here. And then I get a call from the next business owner who's like, hey, wait a minute, where did this encampment just come from? This is a big issue, they're blocking this thing. And then we just, the cycle just like keeps repeating itself. And so I guess I also want to put a pin in this idea of what does compliance look like to us, right? Because if compliance is just moving people from one noncompliant spot to another noncompliant spot, I don't think that's a good use of city resources, and this is something that I want us to be able to discuss, because what we're giving here is pretty broad budget authority. And so I do want to be super clear as to what, like, I judge as a good use of budget resources, right? Like, buying storage containers so that people that have too much stuff can store it someplace else, that would be a good use of budget resources for me. Increasing DCR staff so that they can reply more quickly to 311 calls would be a good use of budget authority to me. And so like, I think that's part of, I think the goal here is clarity, and I appreciate that, because it hasn't been clear, even as a council member sometimes, it's not clear how decisions are being made. But I don't think, I don't know if we're quite there yet right now, and so I want to pin these questions for us so that we can talk about these things together. Like, what does compliance look like? What would acceptable budget? I mean, because if we're just going to ramp up more code enforcement officers to keep moving vehicles around, again, I've literally had, like, I remember, I will never forget, it was a hotel, actually, there was a vehicle parked across the street for a long time. They said, this is an issue, this is an issue, this is an issue. They came and got cited, code didn't do anything wrong, right? The vehicle moved across the street to be right in front of the hotel. So then the hotel calls and says, wait a minute, this isn't what I wanted. And I'm like, well, this is what we get, though, and we don't have a really clear strategy for where people are going to go and, and what the goal is of the resources we're expending. If the goal is only to hire more people to keep moving people around, that's not going to alleviate the general condition that we see in our city that will only potentially make it worse. So I just, I'm putting that out there, and I want to ask specifically, PD, just because I see Chief Lester sitting there in the front, and I had an interesting call today, and so I wanted to follow up with you with a question, if that's okay? About how and when PD are, might move somebody within the city, an encampment? Like, when is PD moving an encampment within the city? Is it only when they're going to shelter or respite? Or are there other situations where the police are offering rides to people to another part of the city?
Sure. And as you know, we don't have adequate shelter for the number of homeless, but we do it as part of a comprehensive strategy, working with DCR and our city-county teams. I think 28th and C is a good example, Roseville Road as well. Obviously, on critical infrastructure, if it's a public safety issue that they can be moved, you know, in order to support that ordinance. We do have our team here, I've got Captain Monk and Deputy Chief Norm Leong, and they sit in on weekly meetings where there's planning with Assistant City Manager in cooperation with our county teams and with DCR as well. So there's a lot of planning that goes into it, there are not these sweeps as they've been characterized, for sure. And, you know, obviously, with more shelter space, that's really the ideal. But I do have to give our team a lot of support and recognition for their work in getting compliance and trying to do whatever they can to support our unhoused population, offering them, you know, a number of resources and opportunities to, you know, seek additional spaces or alternative locations when we do need to move people.
Okay. Because I know I've talked to the previous captain for the Central City, I haven't talked to the new captain yet, because they just transitioned. But like, one of the things I was observing in Midtown a lot, for instance, was one-way rides to Loaves and Fishes in the River District. And I said, you know, I appreciate like, an officer's intention to say, hey, there's resources over here, do you want a ride? But then when you don't give people a ride back, then you just end up with even more encampments around an already very impacted area. And the reason I asked this question specifically, because after C and 28th was C and 22nd, and the call I got from a resident was that those campers had been offered a ride by PD to Q and 22nd. Which, and I know that we started getting calls and emails in my office right away from folks who live on Q Street, who said, hey, wait a minute, where did this encampment come from? So is that something that, like, do officers have any parameters around when they give people rides or offer rides, where they take people to? Or are we just moving people to other parts of the city, maybe when there might not be resources there?
Well, everything is on a case-by-case basis, because we're dealing with individuals and individual needs for people. But as you know, there's displacement issues, too. So after six months of outreach at 28th and C, when, you know, outreach has been exhausted and the camp needs to be cleared for public health issues, we do see displacement. I know a number of, including the mayor's office, had similar complaints that people weren't in fact moved. But we do try to do everything we can to help people. And I could certainly ask for Captain Monk or Captain Heinlein to come up and speak to that in further detail.
Okay. I guess it's just a question then about compliance, what that looks like. Thank you, Chief, for answering.
It's a tough, it's a tough situation, because for sure, we're not trying to, you know, push, you know, people around, and I think that's part of the bigger discussion.
Of course. And like, when I talked to Captain Hanson, who was the former Central City captain, I'm like, I totally appreciate an officer who might say, hey, you know, you're in need, you don't have any place to go, I'll take you over here, and you have a place, like, they can get you some resources. But again, then you like, hear calls from the River District who's saying like, hey, wait a minute, why are there 20 more encampments on B Street? And it's like, so I guess it's just a theory of like, how do, what is the end result? So you're dealing with the middle of it, so I appreciate that.
Right, and our impact team is very sensitive to that, and they do a lot, like, for example, offering people rides to Miller Park, you know, we have a truck, we can help transport their items and do whatever they need to get them to available shelter space.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So yeah, I guess then, in the end, this comes down to two key questions for me, which is, what does compliance look like, and what are we striving for, and how much is this going to cost? Because if we, like I said, if we're just going to use this budget authority to further staff up code officers or other folks who don't have a solution, that to me would be a detriment. And I almost feel like my concern is what I hear a lot, and what I think, especially because we have so few officers on the street, which we've talked about a lot. You know, we talked about what would it look like to scale up DCR's capacity, because then they could take those calls that are just, hey, you need to move over, you're blocking the sidewalk, or hey, you can't be here, there's a levy over here, you got to move over there, without having to involve officers when a citation or other action isn't necessary, right? So I guess those are like, my two big questions that I'm grappling with here, and I just want to appreciate again, Councilmember Talamontes's clarification, that voluntary compliance will be sought first whenever possible, that that's our goal. But I guess those are my three big things here, you know? How do we act strategically, especially given that I have a feeling, not to preempt you on Item 5, that part of the concern with opening more sites is that we might not have money for those sites.
See, but this is the, I'm going to go versus try to answer a little bit here. In a way, it's, it's, it's a, everyone is taking their own risk, depending upon their own perspective, because in some ways, 4 and 5 go together. And the answers to some of your compliance questions are going to depend on what decision the council makes and the breadth of that commitment on Item 5. Because where there are more alternatives for people, there are going to be different ways, for example, that either police and/or DCR can handle a particular situation. Without 5, then there are going to be very limited ways to handle the situation under 4. I'm going to speak my position on 4 in a moment, but I also, but we all know the fact that without more capacity and alternatives, in some way, that enforcement is important, it is important, and it also has its limitations, as evidenced by the comprehensive approach to 28th and C, which I want to get back into the next item. So in some ways, your question cannot be really answered with 4 in isolation, it can be answered better with 4 and 5 together.
I almost, I will say that I really wish we took Item 5 first, for multiple reasons, in addition to the fact that many, some people have left the room who were like, really concerned about enforcement, and I want them to be a part of citing.
Yeah.
But I guess then, like...
Can I answer the budget question first, and then what compliance looks like? So from a budget perspective, you're saying we're ramping up, you know, DCR, police, Fire. We should be so lucky. That's why this model is just looking at overtime. We can't get people in a door fast enough. And we have 100 vacancies in the Police Department, we have similar vacancies in code enforcement. So this is just addressing the immediate need. And remind you that the next item, right, I mean, we keep complaining of the two a little bit, is a temporary measure. And so on the budget side, it is just as, I'm going to try and spend as much money as I can to address this issue using overtime. There are limitations, given our union contracts, the availability of staffing to run overtime, to the extent we can mandatory overtime, we'll do that. So I just don't, I want to set the expectation that when this thing gets passed, we're not going to spend $100 million, because we don't have that many human resources to affect that overtime. So that's the budget piece of it. And then, what does compliance look like? That's exactly why this issue is before you. You all get to decide what that looks like.
Okay. Well, I will say two things, then, because this resolution doesn't just say overtime, right? This resolution says, City Manager is hereby authorized to use any and all appropriate funding within his budgetary authority to carry out the purposes of this resolution. So I think if what we're talking about is authorizing overtime, or say, like, additional time for trash pickup, like, that's one thing, and I guess I just want to make that explicit versus just saying, open door.
Well, it also includes contracting authority for forensic clean, for instance, or those types of things. So yeah, I mean, could it include adding FTEs at any one of those departments? Maybe. And I'd like to do that if we could, but that's unlikely. Because what we're trying to do is making an immediate impact, and the only way to do that is go through overtime.
But I suggest the way to address this is to, if this passes, to ask the City Manager for monthly public reports on the expenditure of the resources, or something like that, regularized reports.
I have no problem doing that, Mayor, but the problem is, that's time off task. Because we're going to continue to be in front of the council, when we say these protocols are something that we want to move forward with. And we could provide updates, certainly, but I think it's, you know, you see all the staff here who need to prepare for these items every week.
Fair enough, fair point.
Okay, then, I guess, because that was actually going to be my suggestion, so I guess not.
How about a couple, how about on a regularized basis that will work out, that does not impinge on the daily task, okay?
Yeah.
Every several months.
Well, in public, because I think the public is asking a lot of important questions. And like, for me, if any FTE are going to be increased, it should be DCR. Because that's like, we don't want, we have so many vacancies in police, as you just mentioned. It's like, we, what I would like to see is more of a bifurcation, so that police don't continue to be the only public safety response in these scenarios, like, not only, because Fire obviously responds as well, and Code, but like, I would like to see that, if we are going to make additional expenditures, it's going to be on these positions of professionals who, honestly, by documentation, too, this is like a research base, if we want to get people to say, yes, I'll do this, it's way more effective to have someone who's not law enforcement doing that for a variety of outcomes.
Well, I will say this, that the way the ECR is today, and I've said this before in open session, it's going to look different than it does today. And that's something that I'm going to roll out to this council, once we figure out what this team approach looks like.
Okay, and so it sounds like, and I'm sorry, Mayor, and I'm taking a lot of airtime, but thankfully, only one other colleague has been punched up so far, so I feel like I'm not impeding on anybody, but I will just say that, like, so what you're saying is, this is the moment where we give you that direction. That if we just vote on this, that this is sort of the carte blanche to say, we're going to do it this way or that way. And I guess for me, what I really want to make clear then, if this is what, like, and I don't know if this needs to be a motion or a substitute or what have you, but like, we shouldn't be continuing to rely on law enforcement for not, so to be super clear, right? Like, law enforcement responds when crimes are broken that are outside of the camp being existing, right? Like, if it's an assault, it's a property crime, it's, you know, what have you. That's not what we're talking about, what we're just talking about is sidewalk ordinance, storing property, stuff that like, yes, is important for public access and safety, but isn't something that I would say I want a uniformed officer with a gun to have to go to every time there's a call.
And I'll respond this, and I'll stop, because what the challenge here is, is that those situations, we don't know if they're violent or not. We have, we have to have, we have to have, and I will not send our team out there without law enforcement for some of these things, until such time, that this, whatever the call is, it's clear, and there's not a safety issue. Then the police officer can beg off, because they have better things to do than clear the sidewalk.
You're not going to, you're not going to get a satisfactory answer to your question, because it is individualized, and it is going to be a triaged approach, depending upon the situation. The only thing that we can do is create some accountability and reporting, which I agree with, to ensure that there are reports back in ways that aren't overly burdensome, and we can work out the timing of that, so that you, we can see how much additional overtime was expended by DCR versus police, versus Fire, versus code enforcement. And then, we can, we can ask, by resolution or otherwise, the manager to adjust that. But I think that if we tried to micromanage that as part of this resolution, we're not going to, the exception's going to swallow up the rule, and we're not going to actually make the two prong, progress that we want to make here with Items 4 and 5 together.
Okay. Well, I will yield my time for my colleagues and perhaps punch out about, but I will just say that, like, the way this is detailed doesn't change enough of the status quo for me. And I'm saying that because, the reason I keep pointing, because I know a lot of businesses in my district think that we don't agree, and we do agree. I don't want there to be encampments on the street, I want there to be real solutions so that we aren't just saying, oh, now they're on J Street, oh, now they're over here on H Street. Like, that's not a real solution. And what I am hearing over and over again is do something different. And what I'm worried about is that this is too much of what we've been doing, and I want it, if this is the opportunity, as the City Manager is saying, to give direction, if we want to adjust, if we have different goals, if he's going to be making budget decisions and staffing decisions and other things on this, then this is the time we should be having that broader conversation. And I just, I'll leave it there and let my colleagues chime in, but I'm worried that this is essentially what I've been telling my, what I've been dealing with every day, all day, with my staff every single day, when we have an issue with an encampment, is, oh, they moved someplace else, and now we just start the whole process over again with another business.
No, no, I'm going to try to, I'm going to try to answer it in a different way than turn it over to Councilmember Vang, then Vice Mayor Geta. The import of this resolution, the City Manager said it a moment ago, is that, and it's right in the resolution, it is, it is going to elevate these existing violations of law to Priority 1. What does that mean? That means that they are going to endeavor to make a more timely effort and a greater effort to resolve them. And as you heard in your good questioning of both Councilmember Talamontes and the City Manager, that the practice is going to be voluntary compliance first. But they are going to get to all of the other situations faster, and they're going to pay for it, he's going to pay for it, by using available overtime. So it is, in fact, the, it is, in fact, the policies we've already approved, and I believe that you, that you were an eye vote on those things, but it's to get to them faster, voluntary compliance first, yes enforcement if there isn't voluntary compliance, and to use overtime to be able to pay for a more rapid response. That's what the import of this is, it's a more rapid response. Because under the current system, since these are not Priority 1, and we've got the tent encampment strategy with the county, the staff is not getting, is not able to get to what the onesies and twosies, or sometimes they're more than that, in a fast enough fashion. And the council has said, including, I think, yourself, right, we want to get to those places and those incidents where there is a disruption sooner rather than later, so it isn't a change, except a more rapid response. So that, that's, you know, not good or, good or bad, that's the, that's the import of it. Councilmember, Mayor Protem Vang, Vice Mayor Geta, and Councilmember Maple.
Thanks, Mayor. First, I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank my colleagues for bringing this proposal forward. Also want to thank Mario, Laura, and our incredible DCR staff, Fire, Police, everyone just for their hard work, and all of those who spoke in today in the chambers, and for everyone that's listening and calling in as well, I just want to thank you for, you know, vocalizing your thoughts, your reflections, and your insight on this really critical issue. I think, you know, right now, I think you heard earlier from our Assistant City Manager, Mario, Laura, about our homeless response protocol. It pretty much touches every part of our city, every part of our department, and you heard that directly from our city staff. And just want to remind folks that this council have asked the city auditor to audit all services that touches homelessness. I know that some of my colleagues on the dais only wants to look at contracts, which is great, let's look at contracts. But in addition to that, I have made a request that we also look at our city departments. That includes Fire, Police, Code, Parks, and so, really looking forward to seeing that audit come back to the full council, to look at those numbers, ways that we're spending our dollars to address homelessness in the city. So my understanding, this resolution that's in front of us is an enforcement resolution. And my school of thinking is very similar to Councilwoman Valenswella as well, and trying to understand what the difference is between Measure O and this in particular. Because after listening to our city staff, I think it's very clear that enforcement is happening right now in our city. And Mario did lay out kind of a homeless response protocol we have right now, and so I guess if that's the status quo, and what I'm hearing from Councilmember Talamontes is that this resolution is just about process, right? It's really about process, because as you shared, there's nine of us, and there's nine directions that, nine bosses that City Manager has to report to. And so I just want to clarify this resolution in particular, because in one of the action item, part of the resolution is also City Manager to give you authority to use dollars on enforcement, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So the main issue for me, and I think we've said this over and over on the dais again, is that we simply just don't have enough bed with critical wraparound services. That's really important, right? We can do all the enforcement, but if we don't have enough beds with critical wraparound services, we're just moving people places to place. Another thing I just wanted to point out is that the proposal that was brought forth, and I do want to thank my colleagues for bringing it forth, I noticed that the proposal and I do want to thank my colleagues for bringing it forth, I noticed that the proposal itself that was brought forth didn't include the ways in which the resolution would consider diversity, equity, and inclusion. Every council proposal that's supposed to, that comes forth for council consideration is supposed to have a rationale on the ways that it impact DEI and also climate change. And I didn't see that rationale as part of this enforcement resolution. And so I just wanted to note that, you know, because one of the main recommendations from UCSF is ensuring that when jurisdiction is really tackling the issue of homelessness and housing is that we gotta embed racial equity really in all aspect of our system delivery. That includes enforcement as well. That includes prevention activities, coordinated entry, and even as we're looking at enforcement, we really need to consider the ways in which it may impact our most vulnerable communities. And so, you know, I'm gonna vote no on this mainly because it's separate from item five. And in the next conversation, we're gonna have a discussion about safe ground, right? And what I'm worried about is that there's gonna be, Mayor, your proposal, but if we don't have the dollars to even provide wraparound services at those safe ground, I'm concerned that we're setting ourselves up for failure. Because if we're gonna be using the majority of our dollars, because with this item, we're getting our city manager authority to go into our budget for enforcement, I'm concerned that we're not gonna have dollars to provide the critical wraparound services that's needed at the safe ground. During our budget discussion earlier this year, Councilmember Valenzuela, Councilmember Maple, and I made a motion to use vacancies from our police department to scale up DCR. And I still want to see this happen because as you heard earlier, yes, it does take, you know, several touches because building that trust is really critical, but there's 80% compliance in the field when our DCR staff is out there. And so, you know, I want to see an expansion of this. So yeah, I, I can't vote on this item because we haven't even discussed item five and I feel like it's premature to do that. And so if we are taking a vote on this item, I will be voting no. I think this item is really about having a larger conversation around our budget. We definitely do need to have a more comprehensive approach and align our comprehensive approach with our budget to address homelessness. I feel like that gives you clearer direction, city manager, if we're able to do that. And so as of right now, because this resolution gives the city manager unilateral authority to spend dollars on enforcement without, without us even having a conversation about safe ground or alternatives, I'm gonna have to vote no on this item. Thank you.
Okay. We've got, let's, let's go through the queue because we got the other item to go here. Vice Mayor Getta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, you know, want to thank our city staff who put together this presentation and give us some good update on where they are and for the work that they're doing right now out in the community and out, out on the street here. One, I think the first thing for my colleagues here, you know, Measure O was passed very overwhelmingly by the people. And regardless if the city manager has nine bosses, those nine, you know, bosses, if you want to call them, or elected officials here, have to respond to what the will of the voters have said. So, and in my opinion, and I think it was mentioned by one of the commenters here, a lot of what is dictated in this ordinance and in the next item, both this item four and item five, is already expected of us from Measure O. That, the Measure O basically has said that they want an immediate and faster response to the circumstances on both issues. So, and that also, that Measure O also required us, and it would have happened, I think, regardless if it would have passed, the city-county partnership. And a lot of that work is already being, is a result of the city-county partnership. And I do want to credit the mayor and the work of my previous colleagues, Councilmember Harris and, and others, and Laloie who were here in those conversations, and Shanir, to get to that point with the county partners. So if, if this item here, and some may call it redundant, some other call it specific, help us achieve the, those outcomes faster, then I'm willing to support that today. And in my opinion, I do think that what is in, in specificity in Measure O, you know, if we continue to go down through a finer point of micromanaging the city bureaucracy or, and, and then we're gonna get into some difficult situations. That goes for this item and the next item. So I'm willing to support this item here, but again, I think a lot of these protocols are already spelled out on items that we've already endorsed. I mentioned that before. I do think, you know, that, that even for the next item, you know, we, we've already been moving down that path. And giving the city manager direction to move faster is important. Now, I, for one, I've always been advocating for more code officers, but the city manager is correct, we have had a challenge in recruiting, you know, for those positions. Even not just on homeless issues, on illegal dumping. I mean, we, we need more code officers, so. Plus our mid-year budget, and, you know, I, I know that, that there was a lot of disagreement in this. This year, I'm not having a mid-year budget, but I have a full expectation that we'll have a mid-year budget next year. And so I, I could see, I could see how the mid-year budget will play a significant role on how we move forward next year with these expenditures. So I'm less concerned about those issues because I know that through budget audit in the fall and in preparation for the mid-year budget, we're gonna be able to see what, how the overtime is spent and whether FTEs are. So, Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll go ahead and, and I'll, I'll be supporting this item, but even with the next item, you know, I, I do think they could have come in together as, as one report, but, you know, again.
I guess so. I mean, they're.
It is what it is, but I'll be supporting it and more conversation for the next item.
Yep. A lot of bosses, exactly. Councilmember Maple.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I want to start out by saying that, one, I appreciate this conversation because I believe transparency is really important. It wasn't even always transparent to me, not by, by lack of people not wanting to tell us, but just as these processes get developed internally, what the actual process is for, for encampments, for dealing with the various issues related to code and state law. And so I think that doing this out in the public, having a really clear message of, this is what we're doing already, this is our actual protocol, and now you all see it too. You see what we're doing. And this is really important because I know, I look at our staff over at DCR and PD and others, that this is what you're dealing with every single day, and you do it with compassion. I have W and all hambrun in my district, at the WX Shelter, and all along that Broadway corridor until you get to District Four. And we do have serious issues related to the ability to, for our folks who are in wheelchairs to get down the sidewalk. There are sidewalks that have been impassable for, for weeks. And I know that you all go out there because I've been calling you, and you're out there and you're doing the personal touches for weeks and weeks and weeks, sometimes months, and working directly with people. What a lot of people may not realize is, you know, we have social workers that are in DCR and their goal and priority is making sure that we treat people with compassion and humanity and get them into services. But I also hear from my, many of my other constituents who are frustrated and upset. I just had a constituent call me at W and 32nd yesterday that was attacked by a dog. And, and there's, there's a lot of complexity of these issues. And so I think the important thing is having it be transparent, having the, having the understanding of what is done. And then, of course, it's without question that we need more. I, we hear this loud and clear every day, those of us who serve on the four by two and the homeless policy council, we don't have enough housing, we don't have enough shelter options, and we're working every day to, to stand those up. And that takes a lot of resources. And a lot of this has been left to local governments to deal with and we're doing the best we can with the resources that we have. So there has to be a nuanced approach that addresses the concerns of those who are both housed and unhoused. And I think that the way that we do that is wishing that we had number five first. I, I hope that this next conversation will be very fruitful of what's next? How do we create more capacity so that we have places that people know that they can go? I can't imagine what it would feel like to, to live in an encampment and be told to move and not be told where to go next, and then make a wrong decision and have it happen again. I, I hear that loud and clear. That is traumatizing and frustrating. So we have to be able to say where you can go, right? Where you can legally camp, where you can exist, where there's shelter options for you. And on top of that, we need to have a process in place that is transparent. And so I just wanted to make those comments, want to thank my colleagues and thank all of our staff for their work.
Thank you, Councilmember Maple. Councilmember Laloie, then back to Valenzuela, Councilmember Valenzuela, then I'm gonna make a closing comment and we're gonna vote.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mayor. So again, we continuously refer to nine bosses, but, and I think that's one of the biggest problem because once again, I think we're trying to micromanage a proposal that's really, we should give the authority to the person that we've hired to do this job, and that's our city manager. I think when we start micromanaging projects, and we've seen it, we continuously hit this, you know, concrete wall and spend millions and millions of dollars, and then we have to retract and figure out which direction we have to go. Our annual budget right now that we've set aside for the unhoused community is roughly about $47 million, give or take, right? That goes to third-party contractors, correct? So, thank you. So, you know, this is a major solution. I mean, this is a major issue that we have in our city. You know, if, if you're unhoused, the last thing on your mind is global warming or the level of equity because you're unhoused. You care about how you can get some food on the table, food to have, or try to stay safe. And as far as the, the budget, I understand, I just want to make sure there's not a confusion. It clearly states in section three that the city manager is hereby authorized to use any and all appropriate funding within his budgetary authority. May I ask, what is your budgetary authority?
Well, it's twofold. You adopted a budget this year, so that, that larger number is 1.5 billion. The individual transactions up to $250,000.
Right. So is it safe to say that if you decide to spend $50 million on the police department, it probably needs to come back to us?
Absolutely. If it exceeds the budget you adopted, for sure.
I appreciate that. And it's been my experience, and I think if, if you look at the, the central city as a hotspot, a very close second, extremely close second, is District Two. And my experience has been that anytime there's been any calls, that it's usually DCR that's going to these calls. I mean, I know, I've personally called the police department, asked for assistance, and they've told me they, they can't go, their hands, you know, they, they, they can't touch anything. So I had to reach out to Nick. So I just want to make sure that, you know, when we share information to the public, that's more fact basis than just trying to get all the emotions going. So based on that, I'm a yes on item number four. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Valenzuela, that'll make the closing comment.
Thank you. Yeah, this is a tough thing for me because I, like everybody you say it tonight, have a whole bunch of encampments in my district and I have the global view. So when one business has a problem, that's solved, you know, and it's really just an encampment moving over to another business, I immediately, like, there is no relief from that. I'm just like, it's just constant circulation of people across the district and, and we see it. Like literally, my staff always says, like, oh, that camp was moved, guess where they're gonna pop up. And we'll kind of try to say, gee, I wonder where they're gonna pop up. And usually within a day, we're like, oh, they're over there. Like, because now we, we're getting those calls from those businesses saying, hey, wait a minute, where'd this encampment come from? And that status quo, I mean, I appreciate that this is going to accelerate the response, but I don't know if accelerating that system is what we need. And I'm, and this is just part of the way bureaucracy works, right? Is we're voting on these as two separate items. So it's possible that this item passes and the next item doesn't, or it's, and I appreciate, Mayor, that you're gonna try to, but like this, for me, for a statement forward to be, that we will continue doing what we're doing is, is not good enough because I'm watching those fractures happen within my district in real time. And what I keep getting asked for is for a better solution. You know, what I keep getting asked for is, why can't we do something that will work more permanently? Why can't we link this in some way to other practices that will work more permanently? And I don't see that linkage in here. I don't see that growth in here. I mean, this is what we do now. And, and so I just, for me, and I know that folks feel differently and that's totally okay. I do think it's positive that at least our protocol is out there and it's public and there's no question now. Like, how do they make decisions? When do they make decisions? It's out there, it's public, everybody knows. In general, that's just good governance. And so I appreciate this item particularly for that. But when it comes to me saying this is how I want it to keep going, it's a no. Because I, I think that we could be doing a lot better. We could be learning from our, from the folks in the field who are finding that compliance. We can be learning from the encampment residents, honestly, who are sometimes saying no and sometimes saying yes. Like, I think that there's a lot that we've learned in these last couple of years, that I know I've learned in these last couple of years, and continuing to lean in on the existing strategy. And I appreciate the person who mentioned the upstream quote, because I say that a lot. That's a very common organizer phrase, to talk about going upstream. To say, you know, it's one thing to keep leaning in on downstream in responses, it's another thing to go upstream and be like, hey, I see a trend. If I move this way, I can stop some of those downstream responses from happening. And that's where I feel like this motion, it's like, these two motions are like two totally different worlds, you know? Item five and item four, this is saying, well, we're gonna spend more money on continuing to do what we're doing. And the other item's saying, well, we're gonna open up more spaces, so what we're doing is more effective. And so I'm gonna vote no on this more than anything because I do, like I said, I mean, and everybody thinks that they know what's going on in the central city on this dais, but you don't know until you get all the emails and phone calls and the pleas for help and the people stopping you when you're walking your dog, like. And I know my colleagues who have these issues, like, I can't walk, like, I live right around the corner from where C and 22nd encampment was, like, I literally could not walk my dogs without somebody stopping me and being like, what on earth are we doing? And now to immediately turn around and start getting calls from residents at Q and 22nd that said, hey, wait a minute, like, I, like, there wasn't an encampment here and now there is? Like, sure, I'm not getting bugged by those residents, but I'm getting bugged by other residents. And I feel like we need to step back and have the imagination to really think about how we structure this system to have the outcome that we want. Because the outcome is not moving people to another spot that they're still not in compliance. The outcome needs to be, how do we get people the services they need? And part of that is not something we can answer for. And we've talked about that. Someone's in mental health crisis in the middle of the street, someone's breaking in and assaulting people who are trying to get to their hotel room, that's not something the city can really do. We don't control the DA, we don't control the court. We can't say, hey, when you release people from jail, it would be really great if you didn't just release them to the street with absolutely no services or like, support or housing. Like, we can't do that. It's totally outside of our hands. And that's something that, especially in the downtown businesses repeatedly, you know, we're seeing, they're like, gosh, that person was just arrested and now they're back here and they're breaking into my thing again. It's like, you're right. Because the, like, that would be a key intervention point for us to say, when you get arrested and you test positive for meth or you have this issue, you're gonna get released into a treatment facility and we're gonna have that bed for you and we're gonna make sure you get what you need. But we don't do that. We release them into Sager Stabas Park and then wring our hands and we're like, well, gosh, why is this keep happening? So I just want to make sure that we're being strategic and tackling the appropriate problem. And the appropriate problem is not that we need to keep doing what we're doing already. That's part of the problem, is that we're continuing to just cycle people through the city without investing in the strategic interventions to make the issue better. So that's my two cents, Mayor. Thank you for the time.
I'm gonna, I would do want to ask you, I do want to ask you a question though. Because, so, we made a subjective decision to put item four between, before item five, it just, okay, reasonable, people could, would do it differently, I think it was a reasonable approach. If, just for the sake of argument, the vote, I'm not saying we're gonna do this, but if the actual vote on item four were to go after the vote on item five, and item five passed, would you vote for item four?
No. The item is still lacking the interconnection between scale. Like, this is the thing, like, so.
No, it's, it's just, yes or no, it's okay. Go ahead. I, I'm just, go ahead, go ahead. I'm sorry. I asked a question because.
We're not on item five. So on item four, I will just say, part of what I feel like is really missing in here is that intentionality of strategy, is the linking of where do folks go to where we do enforcement. And that is part of what we need, is that linkage. So this item, as it's written right now, I would not support if a different item were to pass because this item is still lacking that growth and that understanding of what we need to do.
Just so you know, Madam City Attorney, the only reason I asked the question, because as the mayor of this city, I desire, if it is all possible, to achieve unanimity. Because that's a stronger statement. And if it's not possible, then I respect that because not everything has to be unanimous. But that's why I asked the question. So I wasn't trying to debate item five before item four. I wanted to test this because to me, as mayor of this city, if we have a unanimous statement, then we're better off. And if we don't, that's okay too. But that was my reason. And that, so I wasn't trying to, I wasn't trying to bleed any of the issues over, so I'm sorry if I, if I did. Okay, my final comment. There is no question that item four and item five together are not a solution to the problem. And I heard Mayor Protem Vang say that she worries that doing this would represent failure if I, if I heard you correct, or the potential for failure. I think where I disagree respectfully with my friend, with you, is that we have an obligation to make progress. And frankly, what our community is saying to us loud and clear is that there's a whole lot of failure going on. And so the question is not whether this is a solution, but whether or not it represents progress. And so I fully support the resolution because I hope that by the end of today, I intend that this item not stand alone. It will stand in, in conjunction with the next item, authorizing the city manager to open many more safe ground sites. In a civic and a civil society, there must be a balance. We cannot allow anyone, regardless of their status or their need, to block sidewalks. 813 syringes at one tent encampment at 28th and C? Too much of this is going on throughout the entire city. And a civil society cannot allow this. If this, if this resolution stood in isolation and was not accompanied by the next item, I might and probably would vote and feel different. But the two go together. Call the question.
Councilmember Kaplan.
Aye.
Councilmember Laloie.
Aye.
Councilmember Talamontes.
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Aye.
Councilmember Maple.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Getta.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Vang.
No.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Aye. That passes seven to two. Okay. Thank you for a very good debate. Difficult discussion, but a really good debate. All right. We are now, could we take, I'd like to, without everybody going too far, take a three-minute break here. I just think, you know, that, let, let's take, everybody stretch and we'll take a five-minute, we'll take a five-minute break, okay? We'll come back at five minutes to four. Good afternoon again. The city council is back in session after a brief recess. Thank you all for your patience. I thought it was important that everybody take a breath after, after that last item. And we now move to the final item of the special meeting, and that is item five. And since this was my idea, I am deemed to be the presenter for this idea. And if it, without objection, I will choose to present from the center seat here as opposed to today, unless anyone wants me to do so, and then you can hold me to two minutes, whatever. Not, not a bad, not a bad idea. They all like that. Okay. So it's all goo, it's all good, it's all good. I'm gonna stay, I'm gonna stay up here and present. So, members of the public, my colleagues and city staff, the reason for the resolution that I bring forward under item five should be self-evident. The increased compliance resolution that we just passed, in my view, and view of the city council, was necessary. But it ultimately will be hollow if we don't actually do everything, everything in our power to get people off the streets and get them the help that they need. This is not, in my view, about Martin v. Boise. It's about common sense. When we do move people, and sometimes out of necessity, as we debated over the last several hours, it does in fact beg the question, where are they going to go? In my view, while I can point to several very positive parts of the 28th and C experience a couple of weeks ago, and I want to thank the staff, because you do a great job, I also think that the question that I raised a moment ago, where are people to go, was answered, in some ways, unsatisfactorily at 28th and C. What do we know? We know that 30 people were the subject of the outreach and the intervention. We know we got 11 people in to Miller Park. And we know that a number of other people moved to other parts of the midtown and, and other parts of the city. We also know that, as Assistant City Manager Laura reported earlier today, that one person out of 30 was enrolled in a full-service partnership. Now, if the city-county partnership is going to work in the way that at least I intended, and remember what it says, that the county is obligated to conduct joint outreach with us, with their mental health workers, and they are legally responsible for doing whatever it takes, including adding as many full-service partnerships as are necessary to, to help ensure that people get off the streets and get the help and treatment they need. And no one will convince me that out of 30 people with over 800 syringes found at the scene, that one person out of 30 or more was, would be eligible for comprehensive and intensive services. So there's a lot of work to do there, between the city and the county, but it's obviously the county's responsibility. I'm going to push until my last day and then beyond, that the full-service partnership principle be intrinsic to everything we do around homelessness. Because if we don't get the county to up their number of FSPs and get more people into care and treatment, none of what we're talking about today is ultimately going to be effective. But I raised that because we have the opportunity to learn from that experience and go forward trying to accomplish an even better result. A little bit of history here. This is at least the fifth time I, as your mayor, since 2017, have brought forward a comprehensive idea to the city council about how we reduce our most serious city problem, with obvious mixed results. You know, there are some good things. Seventeen thousand people off the streets in the city and the county, most of them from the city since 2017. As you know, 1,100 nightly beds, which has been an enormous investment of time, energy, from the members, from the staff, from the community, from the city taxpayers, to help make that happen. But our results have been mixed. In 2017 and 18, we started with Railroad Avenue, which led to significant city and state investments in the Meadowview and WX shelters. And I will say, because we have to be honest about it, while those are great successes, it did take 14 months from the time we approved the Meadowview shelter for it to be built. And so stuff in this area, across the board, takes way too much time, sometimes out of necessity, but sometimes, sometimes it's the frustration with government at all levels. It's one of the reasons that brings us to this proposed action here today. After the 2017 and 18 strategy, I put, I brought forward the comprehensive siting plan of 2020 and 2021, which despite its failures, and obviously, there were some failures, none of the 21 sites actually got up and running, except for camp resolution. We have to learn from those lessons. That experience also helped lead to our expansion, our bed expansion to over 1,100 beds a night through multiple long-term leases of hundreds of motel rooms, not even counting the SHRA project, Home Key projects, that are obviously a part of the long-term solution. Three, the original initiative after the terrible January 2021 storm, calling for citywide respite centers. And we talked about that earlier this afternoon. And while we have continued to evolve and, and make policy which assures that we will have respite for people in the cold during the winter and cooling centers during the summer, the truth of the matter is, in part because of resources, we only have one full-time respite center, and that is at the Old Science Center off of Auburn Boulevard. Four, the multiple chapters of trying to cite a campus-style facility to com, to accommodate hundreds of people at a time, not just multiple sites that accommodate 50, 75, or 100 people. From our CalPERS frustration with the county, to our continued and still active efforts to use CalExpo, this part of the effort must continue. It must continue. And five, finally, to the hopeful but just beginning city and county partnership agreement, we have made a commitment to engage in encampment outreach, not just with DCR, but with the county as well. And as I said earlier, for the county to provide whatever it takes wraparound services, including shelter and housing, to people living in the encampments with serious mental illness or people suffering from substance abuse. I am both hopeful, as I said earlier, and concerned. The 28th and C question, I've gotta say it a number of times during this debate, is timely, and it is relevant, because we conducted full outreach for months, the DCR, the, the city, we, and the county, the county mental health workers. We enforced in the end, we moved people voluntarily. A number of people went to Miller Park, a number of people didn't. How many people were engaged in services? If the answer is truly one, this needs to get much better. What have we learned? I will get to the, get to the point here. What have we learned over the course of these last several years about these, these initiatives that have had some success, but not the great success that we all want? Number one, we have learned that while many well-intentioned people, including all of us sitting up here at the dais, try to help manage the problem in your respective districts and me, citywide, that there are too many cooks in the kitchen, that without providing a single point of authority to be able to make some hard decisions, for example, the decision we're being called upon to make here today around siting, progress bogs down. It just plain doesn't happen. Look again at the 2021 comprehensive siting plan. There were several reasons for that, including, at the time, the city manager and his team was very worried about the fiscal impact of doing a lot of that. The members, in good faith, picked a bunch of sites that had not been pre-vetted. And, and there wasn't the urgency that I had hoped for, and it didn't happen. That's history. It's not to, not to speak about any recriminations, it's just about to learn from the past and change what we have to to make sure that our efforts succeed. That's one thing we learned. The second thing that we've learned over these last five years is that we cannot do everything. The county, the district attorney, the courts, the state of California, the federal government, they are all essential partners in this effort. But for what we can and must do as a city, the best policy is only as good as the effectiveness of the spirit and manner with which it is implemented. Implementation is everything. So today, I am recommending to the city council that we hand over the implementation of picking sites for safe ground to the city manager, and hold him and his team accountable for two main results. Number one, that the people of this city see a visible and tangible difference on our streets, that the city and its neighborhoods and its business corridors actually experience cleaner and safer conditions as a result of the passage of item four and the hopeful passage of item five. Number two, equally important, that the city manager and his team, especially for large encampments, that you follow the protocols of the partnership agreement with the county, and help get as many people as possible into safe ground and/or shelter and housing, so that they can access the full wraparound services that so many need. Now, why safe ground? Well, I don't want you to forget that there is some good and hopeful news coming. We were able, again, maybe this is the sixth initiative, because we were intricately involved in this, but we went to the governor and said, we need relief. And he came forward with 1,200 manufactured homes, 350 for Sacramento, which is beyond our per capita share, but maybe, maybe we've got good connections, 350 manufactured homes that are coming as soon as the procurement process is, is completed. Don't know when that will be. It will undoubtedly be several more months. And we have two sites, one in South Sacramento, where we are working with a major, well-respected nonprofit to cite at least 150, and then at CalExpo, where the administration has identified one significant lot that apparently CalExpo folks are okay with, where we will be able to locate another couple hundred manufactured homes. So that's coming, in addition to a lot of groundbreaking on affordable housing projects throughout the entire city. But the time gap for all of that to occur is too long, given what we know is going on in our city today, that we discussed over the last several hours. So we need an interim solution. And safe ground, ironically, is something that has been called for by the advocacy community, the activist community, for a long, long time, including Councilmember Valenzuela when she got on the council, Mark Maron, who was here earlier, who has been in ongoing discussions with the city attorney and with others about, you know, how we might do this. It is a good interim solution, because like at Miller Park, maybe different from Miller Park, but to use Miller Park as an example, it enables people who run shelters that are in need to be in one place. And so that, so the county and the city can have easier access to them, to provide the services and hopeful, that they need, and hopefully navigate them into shelter and ultimately into housing. Today, then, I'm asking you to trust the city manager with these difficult siting decisions. In my view, he has earned that trust by working with each of you closely over the last number of years. And if you agree that a single point of authority is essential to make greater progress, I ask you these two questions. Who else? Who else? Under this system of government than the person that we appoint to run the city? Now, I anticipate, I don't know this, that there may be some discussion here tonight about, okay, we'll let him choose the sites, but then have it come back for a council vote. I would caution you against that. I would caution you very seriously against that, because I can tell you exactly what will happen. He will get picked apart, so finally, you won't recognize him by the end of the picking. And, and, and we'll then have to, we'll be, excuse me, we will be counting votes, and we'll be politicking about which sites and which sites are right and which sites are not right. Either give him the authority or don't give him the authority, and don't have it come back here. You can have it come back here for updates and reports and budget, and, and after the fact, budget reports, and of course, a full report on how it's going. I'm not talking about that. But please give him the selection, because it is the only way we will be able to get anything close to the kind of scale that we need if we are gonna make progress. You will all weigh in with your concerns and your caveats over the next few minutes. And after I finish this, I'm going to sit back and I'm going to listen. But it is important for me, I think as the mayor, to also describe to you what I think are the principles and values that ought to go into this process going forward if you give the city manager this authority. Number one, in my view, this is a humanitarian and public safety crisis, and the city manager ought to be encouraged, if not instructed, to open as many sites and/or beds, it could be two sites, I'm talking about the number of beds, open as many beds as you can find and stretch it. We had a debate back and forth internally with the manager and I about whether I should put a number in the resolution. And I was going to, and he asked me not to, fair enough. But I'm just telling you, my view is that he ought to go high. Number two, related, money should be no object. It should be no object. This is like a fire. This is an emergency. Treat it like an emergency. Now, I can tell you that I've been, again, in contact with the administration, and under HAP 3, 4, and 5, there is bonus money that we haven't yet received. So I asked the question, what's the, is there a guarantee we're gonna get bonus money? And here is the answer. I am told that between 3, 4, and 5, that we are virtually, because you never know, but virtually guaranteed eight and a half million dollars, eight and a half million dollars. The problem is that we don't know exactly when that money's gonna be received, probably not until late 2020, in tranches, late 2023, sometime in 2024, late 2024. And you know what I say? As long as we know it's coming, and again, I have it in writing, the administration tells me that this is what we're eligible for, I say, borrow against it and start with eight and a half million. And I'm gonna go farther, and everyone's gonna go, what are you talking about? But I'm saying it because I want to. Go into the economic uncertainty reserve if you have to do it to do it right. I don't care. I'm tired of, I don't want any excuses. Go big, and go into the reserve if you have to, and add to that eight and a half million dollars, and do this right. Clean up our city in a humane way. That's what the people are demanding, and that's what we ought to offer them. Number three, ensure when you make these selections that we have real good neighbor policies, including banning camping around the sites themselves. God darn it, people, politicians who put their necks out on the line, all of you, including all of you guys, you know, to open up sites, only then to have, you know, the same, the same kind of activity going around... same kind of activity going around, on around the safe ground, that's not right. So protect the sites. Number four, this one, try, try in good faith to try to find some form of geographic diversity. None of this is, will be perfect, but try to find some form of geographic diversity because that's only right and it's only fair. And five, these will not be Miller Park by definition because to pay an operator, by definition, you're eating up my eight and a half million dollars, state's eight and a half million dollars and whatever, over deep in the reserve or overtime or whatever the manager needs to go or is willing to go. So you can't have an operator. It's more like the camp resolution thing, self-governance. And make sure, Mr. City Manager, that we provide some basic level of dignity and support, basic sanitation, water, cleanliness, and that'll be a negotiation, but make sure that that we have the basics. And so I look forward to this discussion and debate because I do think, as I thought in the past with the, with the prior five or six efforts where, that did represent progress, that tonight or this afternoon could represent even more significant progress because we can begin organizing ourselves. The common theme with every one of the prior initiatives and this initiative is the following, that cleaning up the city, compliance, enforcement, whatever you want to call it, we all have our own terms, has to be coupled with increasing capacity, has to be coupled with increasing services for people, has to be coupled with real pathways for people to get out of homelessness. That's what we've always lived by. And that's what we have the opportunity not only live by today, but to scale or at least come closer to scale than we ever have before. While these other options are coming online and we can move to real shelter, real housing, the county actually adding FSPs in a, in an aggressive way, wraparound services for people in an aggressive way consistent with the partnership agreement. So I hope we pass this today and I thank you for your indulgence as I made my presentation. Thank you. Let's take public testimony and then we'll hear from the members.
Thank you, Mayor. I have 36 speakers signed up to speak on this item. The first is Jeff Harris, Jim Randlett, and then Robert Copeland.
36.
Just one moment, Mr. Harris, let me, it sounds like your mic. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good afternoon, council. Mayor, as always, I agree with you and disagree with you. Mostly agree with you on this one. One point I wanted to make is on the, on the master siting plan that you brought forth, two sites were actually implemented, both in my former District Three at North Fifth and Joshua's House is about to break ground. So there were successes there that you didn't point out. You know, the rest of what you said, I agree with completely, that safe ground is an interim solution that we need to express. Certainly if we're going to start being more purposeful in enforcement, we do need alternative places for people to go. In that regard, we have a couple of, of resources available to us that has not been used. When I was sitting in this council, I was able to procure about 14 sanitation trailers. So we have showers, we have ADA toilets, we have toilets on, on a trailer that are not, not porta potties, but actual flush toilets with lavatories. That equipment, which cost well over a million dollars, has been sitting idle for almost two years because of the indecision of this council in terms of how to implement. Another resource we have is the 100 acres that we bought in the south area, which we bought with the purpose of managing the homeless population to some extent. Of that 100 acres, maybe 10 acres might be tremendously useful to doing safe ground sites. If you put all that together, the rest of what you said, I agree with you. Protecting safe ground sites is absolutely imperative. I'd add to that and say that we need to allocate resources to PD so that they can continually arrest drug offenders who enslave our homeless population in the cycle of addiction. And the DA is fully willing to enforce and to prosecute. If we, if we arrest these people multiple times, we can get this done.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
I agree with you, you should pass.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Jim Randlett. Following Mr. Randlett is Robert Copeland.
I have a handout that I think you're handing out, and the name of the handout is Bang for the Bucks. And I think it was Councilwoman Kaplan that mentioned this at the June 27th meeting, maybe it was another council member. But the, the point of the handout is that this needs to be cost effective. I'm not representing anybody. I'm just a neighbor that's concerned because I have a dog and I walk the dog in the park. And I have another neighbor I see all the time and I say, "I don't see you in the park anymore." And she says, "I'm afraid to go into the park because the homeless people are there." Now, think about that. She's walking the city streets instead of going to the nearby park because she's afraid of the homeless people in the park. So I still walk in the park. I went to Costco and bought the four pack of pepper spray. Now, think about that. Costco is staffing or having pepper spray for sale in a four pack so people can feel safe in Sacramento. So back to the bang for the bucks, as you can see in that first computation there, according to the city manager, there are 4,000, 4,444 homeless that don't have a residence. At the $60,000 cost in Miller Park, that comes to $266 million a year. That's each and every year. And so I'm going to stop and go right to the language that's italicized and underlined because I think what you need to do and what I had encouraged the city staff to do, and it may be already planning to do, is to give you projections of what the cost per safe grounds is to set up and to run and then update that because it's not going to work unless you have a number of them, as the mayor just said, and it's cost and you've got enough money to cover it. But please do this, it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Robert Copeland, Charles Faust, then Carlos Chavez.
I'm going to shock them here. I agree with him on a lot of this.
Well, then I, I want to revise my proposal, please.
But is there going to be a wraparound services like job training, getting people on SSI or getting their ID or CalFresh benefits or mental health or drug rehab at a lot of these sites? And I'd like to see them in all eight districts, including my district, which is District But the main thing we can do is prevent people from becoming homeless in the first place because I don't want to see two people get off the street and three more become homeless. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Charles, and then Carlos Chavez.
Hello. I'm finally going to advocate for the Haven for Home model more directly. I think it works well with everything you guys have talked about. We need to co-locate everything. We need to provide indoor shelter and services, wraparound, universal services to all the homeless people. And I know that the issue is always siting. There's options. There's at least four major ones. You can call me anytime. You have my phone number. I can give you some locations. Also, funding. I think, you know, Hope for Sacramento, we've been doing this for four years and we had issues during COVID with funding and potential, but right now we're pretty sure we can get $50 million within a couple of months. So the funding is there, locations are an option. Call me. I'll be here actually meeting with Lisa Kaplan tomorrow for a little bit, and then I have meetings with the county for a while. So I'll be downtown tomorrow.
We will call.
Okay, cool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Carlos Chavez, then Mark Maron. If he's still here, then Shireen Miles.
Hello again. Carlos Chavez speaking on behalf of Region Business. It's my privilege to speak to you today and about the crucial recommendation by Mayor Steinberg. We stand united in our full support for the mayor's recommendation to direct the city's manager to find suitable sites for the homeless population. The issue of the homelessness is one that affects us all and it's time we take compassionate action to address that. Our homeless community needs safe grounds, a place where they can find shelter, support, and a chance to rebuild their lives. It's our moral responsibility to extend a helping hand to those in need, providing them with stability and care they deserve. Moreover, the recommendation aligns with the will of the voters as they've already directed the action under Measure O. Let us honor the voice of the people and move forward to the important initiative. By finding appropriate sites for the homeless, we are not fulfilling our duty as compassionate members of this community, but also creating an environment where everyone can thrive and prosper. Today, I humbly ask for your support and urge each of you to, for an A vote in the favor of the recommendation. Together, let us take steps forward, more inclusive and caring Sacramento where no one is left behind. Thank you for your time and consideration. Let us embrace the opportunity to make a positive difference in the lives of those who need it most. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mark Maron, I believe, is left. Shireen Miles, and then Deion Dwyer.
Yes. Shireen Miles, I'm with Sacramento area congregations together and I'm going to be speaking and then later, Mike Jaskey will be calling in online with some additional comments. First of all, thank you, Councilmember Valenzuela, for speaking to the importance of us being strategic and having the imagination to find and fund upstream solutions. We also appreciate Councilmember Vang and Chief Lester's acknowledgement that we struggle with a completely inadequate supply of emergency shelter. Essentially, where can people go? We know that our shelter gap is made worse by housing costs and a lack of adequate low-income housing with no relief in sight and a clogged pipeline for mental health and substance abuse services. This proposed resolution, which is intended to facilitate the establishment of more safe camping locations, is, is a step in the right direction, but it is still a Band-Aid, not a solution. We support safe alternatives to homelessness that can actually move people forward towards stability and can help both housed and unhoused residents. We are supportive of the establishment of safe camping locations, of course, as an interim step. But this current resolution, as it is written, raises many questions in our minds. Mike Jaskey will be calling online to speak with you in more detail about the basics that the mayor mentioned, by which we mean the services and supports that are essential to help people move out of homelessness and that we hope that this plan will provide to the residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Deion Dwyer, John Krantz, then Annie Keys. Deion? Nope. John Krantz. Following John is Annie Keys, then Kathleen Williams.
I can't believe we're actually talking about this. This has been a dream of mine for 13 years and I don't, it's hard to believe we're actually talking about this. I would say that right now, Safe Ground Sacramento is involved with two camps, one's at 12 and C, and that's been running for about two or three years now. And it's been a great asset to the neighborhood. Before that camp went in there, that lot was, some really nasty things were going on in there, prostitution, drugs, everything else. We put up a fence so that we could separate the street from that, and we've controlled around the area and cleaned up that whole little neighborhood in there. And a lot of things that used to be there, they aren't there anymore because a well-managed camp actually cleans up a mess. It doesn't make a mess. So even the businesses in the area that were just adamant about us not starting that are now in, in much better shape than they were. So the camp resolution is a much newer camp and we're, we're trying to let that one go completely on its own. I mean, we're not dealing with children here. People that are homeless are adults. And if you treat them like adults, maybe they start to behave like adults. If you treat them like children, then you're going to need some more childish type of supervision. Safe Ground is interested in negotiating another lease for more properties to go and to try to use this self-governed camp model as a way to solve this homeless thing. And it gives the people in the camp responsibility. They're, they're running their own lives. They're not having somebody move into their life and try to control everything for them.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Annie. Annie, and then I think Kathleen left, and then Jack Blatner.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Annie Keys here on behalf of the Downtown Sacramento Partnership, a property-based improvement district responsible for managing the 66 blocks of the urban core. I'm here to express the Downtown Partnership's strong support for item five, to create an ordinance authorizing the city manager to implement a temporary shelter program throughout the city. Our organization is responsible for creating safe and accessible public spaces for the community to experience. Right now, we are struggling and working very hard to meet the needs of residents, visitors, workers, and those inhabiting downtown. In order to begin addressing our community's needs, we need to start with enough safe places to go. The lack of temporary shelter sites and hesitancy to directly address it has exacerbated the unhoused crisis. I want to acknowledge the districts, including our own District Board, that have already allocated space for temporary shelter sites. However, it is incumbent upon each council district to take similar action in establishing those community resources. We should all bear the responsibility of providing temporary shelter for those experiencing homelessness and provide a clear pathway to permanent safe housing for all. The Downtown Partnership will also continue to advocate for measurable safety oversight within and surrounding safe sites to protect some of our most vulnerable population. This is a pivotal time in our city's history to rise to meet the needs of our society. We urge your support of item five. Thank you, Mayor, for bringing this item forward and thank you for the opportunity to comment today.
Thank you for your comments. Jack Blatner, Jay, and then MVW.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Jack Blatner with the Sacramento Metro Chamber again. The chamber strongly supports this item and we likewise support the city manager having this unilateral authority. But we think it's an important point that while anyone can claim to speak for the people, we have hard numbers on what the people of Sacramento want. Measure O passed in November with over 52% of the vote. So while we can quibble about funding details or how much the measure requires of the city, it's still very clear where the popular mandate stands. It stands for increased enforcement, but just as much, it stands for more emergency shelter spaces as soon as possible. Measure O passed in November and it already authorized the city manager to find emergency shelter spaces. It placed minimum requirements for how many emergency shelter spaces the city would provide. Like the mayor, we would prefer this item do the same. Furthermore, Measure O required the city manager to report his progress in finding and authorizing those shelter spaces to the city council every 30 days. We would appreciate that level of public transparency and encourage you as a council to ensure that mandate is complied with. But if the $5 million spent on Measure O built an apparently negligible amount of beds and spaces, we don't know if another 1.5 million, the number just cited by the city manager, is going to cut it. I mean, that's 0.1%, almost on the dot of the city's budget. We are pleased that today the council is expressing its clear will to get emergency shelter spaces up and running throughout the city as soon as possible. That is the right thing to do and we are watching hopefully to see what progress the city can make. But budgets reflect priorities, so hopefully the amount of dollars talked about today is just the beginning. As always, the business community stands ready to help in any way possible and we thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Jay, then MVW, then Samuel. I don't see Jay. MVW, and then Samuel, then O.
Forty percent of the unhoused in Sacramento are black. Twenty-seven people become unhoused every day. Nearly 2,300 children are on our streets every night. This is a race issue. This is a poverty pimping issue. This is a managerial issue. Giving Howard Chan more money doesn't actually solve anything and giving him more power isn't going to help. Along with the same enforcement that you guys are trying to repass, you're asking the same people who give citations to offer assistance. It doesn't work like that. The same officers you have on your sweeps are also the same officers that have been having things brought against them. So Officer Connor Lawrence and Officer Brandon Lundren were recorded on body worn camera footage calling a group of black children so ghetto, retarded, and asking how many of them were drinking lean. He said, "Should I..."
He said, "Should I just go out there and grab some of them and fucking k-k-k-k-k?" he said on the recording, admitting that the "k-k-k" was the sound of a automatic shooting. When Lundren was putting a 14-year-old black teen in handcuffs, he said to him, "All right, my first victim." He then put the child in the backseat of a patrol car. Lundren spoke with the boy, calling him and the group of kids "a pack of animals." He said, "I could tase you; I could bola wrap you; I could shoot you in beanbag round; I could deploy a dog on you. You are the problem with our society; you are the problem with our country." Both officers are still on the force. Can't talk about enforcement if you're not acknowledging the problem within the force itself. Talking about the culture that they have. Kathy Lester, all she did for them was give them more training, because that helped a lot, right? Training did really good. Stop the sweeps. Pass an ordinance that stops the sweeps. Stop moving people when there's nowhere to put them. If you don't have a bed, you can't move them. That doesn't make sense. Common sense is not moving people that have nowhere else to go.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Samuel, then O, then Johnny Smith.
Good afternoon, Council. My name's Samuel. My pronouns are they/them. This meeting has been pretty awful to sit through, as I'm a youth struggling with houselessness, and to hear just like the language around, like people literally just struggling, really sucks, and to know that people don't see us as human and prioritize property over human lives is really shitty. It doesn't make sense to keep sweeping people when we don't have anywhere else to go. And as much as this is like, great to open more shelters, they're still temporary. Like, I call 211 every day, and there's not enough spaces for people. And it just feels really disheartening and I feel very helpless. And it's like not, it's not our fault. Like, we're dying, and it's really just unfortunate that our lives are being politicized and is up for debate, and I would encourage you guys to bring in people who are actually impacted instead of listening to business owners. Yeah, it's just, it's just unfortunate, but yeah. Go off, I guess.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is O, then Johnny Smith, then Henry Hawthorne.
We've been in here for 19 weeks, and again, we are demanding a moratorium on all homeless sweeps by SAC PD. There's a scripture that says, "Then they will answer, 'When did we see you hungry and feed you, or thirsty and give you something to drink? When did we see you a stranger and invite you in, or needing clothes and clothe you?' He replied, 'Whatever you did for one of the least of these, you did for me.'" In this city, there are zero real-time resources outside of bus passes and ID vouchers, and nowhere near enough shelter or housing for the thousands of Sacramento residents and children living outside on the streets in your districts. As we speak, there are people right outside of this building you walk past every day who are in need. Do you know the last time they ate or had water? Do you know the last time someone smiled at them or showed them compassion? When I was a kid, I was taught to always care for those less fortunate. I was taught to give the jacket off my back or the last $5 in my pocket, because when you've experienced being homeless yourself, you know what it's like to have nothing, to not know where your next meal will come from, or if you'll ever truly have a safe place to call home. This city has not only not clothed, fed, nor cared for our most marginalized communities, but instead, they pass policies and laws that steal, kill, and destroy people's lives. They demolish communities and call it public safety. While their racist police officers enforce these policies and laws, criminalizing struggling Black and Brown communities trying to survive. It is no surprise that Black, Brown, and poor folks are treated as the least of society, and that the majority of Black and Brown folks are the ones struggling at the forefront of homelessness and poverty in this city. Seems to me that the system is working exactly the way it was always intended to. Unfortunately, some of you, if not all of you, have sold your humanity to the highest bidders to uphold that system.
Comments. Our next speaker is Johnny Smith, Henry Hawthorne, then David Shipman.
Henry Hawthorne had another appointment.
Thank you for that. So please proceed, Mr. Smith. So following Mr. Smith is David Shipman.
Yeah, so, my name is Johnny Smith. This is my great-grandson, Wesley. Hey, I'm Wesley. All right. Now Wesley been sitting here all this time since 1215, and you haven't heard a peep out of him. You know? That's what they talk about, raise a child and the way to go. Okay? I'm a retired substance abuse counselor, and today I got 22 years, four months, and 26 days clean. I mean, clean! Now, I got the Uncle Johnny Transitional Home, and we wrote a proposal, I think, the mayor got one, Mr. Chan got one, and Mario. Yeah, there we go. Okay, that is the program that we have set up, and I really want to encourage, encourage you guys to really look at us, you know, because we're serious, we know what this is about, you know, the homeless, and especially the people that are vulnerable, the 16-years, 65-year-olds. I see a lot of them out there, you know, and they need our help. Not only, not only, you know, I know this is temporary housing and things like that, but what we're going to do, we're going to have, you know, we're going to have mental health there, you know, and check on the people. I know that a lot of these guys are out here on methamphetamine and stuff, so when they come into our program, the next day, they just can't get up and start doing the program. They got to detox, you know? They got to get their heads back together, you know? And while they're doing that, I'm going to be going in their rooms and talking to them, you know, real mellow-like, and letting them know, "Man, don't you want to get back to the way you was raised?" You know? Because I've been there, I know. You know? And so I can talk to them and, you know, help them, you know, get ready. I ain't saying we can save them all, but I know I need a bunch of them in there to help them.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Thank you for your comments.
Oh, my God.
Our next speaker is David Shipman.
Thank you.
Jerome Jerace, then Mike Testa.
Thank you all, Wesley. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
David Shipman.
Steve's all here.
Jerome Jerace, and then Mike Testa.
Afternoon again, Mayor, members of the council, city manager, Jerome Harris, general manager, Sheraton Grant. I'm testifying in support of the ordinance that would authorize our city manager to identify and open new temporary shelter sites dispersed throughout the great city of Sacramento. Like I mentioned previously, Houston saw a 28% decline from pre-pandemic numbers with the same initiative. Putting these critical decisions into the hands of our city manager will undoubtedly help to improve the situation of the many people who are affected by the challenge that so many of our residences are experiencing. The establishment of these sites would provide a dedicated space that allows individuals experiencing homelessness to have a safe and reliable place to stay and keep their possessions free of any worry and negative interventions or relocation. I encourage you strongly to support this ordinance, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mike Testa, then Alexander Armand, and Cassandra.
Good afternoon. My name is Mike Testa, and I'm with Visit Sacramento. As has been discussed today, these two items are linked, as one does not work without the other. So I am testifying in support of an ordinance that would give the full authority to the city manager to identify and open new temporary shelter sites throughout the city of Sacramento. The crisis that we are seeing on our streets every day continues to rank at the top of issues causing concern among residents, the hospitality community, and so many others. This new path of creating dedicated spaces for camping will provide a safe, safe and healthier space for people to live. I encourage you to support this proposed ordinance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Alexander Armand, Cassandra, then Rachel Brown. I don't see, because Alexander, Cassandra. Following Cassandra is Rachel Brown, and then Devin Strecker.
Very stressful afternoon to you, City Council. It is not good. It has not been pleasant. Sometimes I have nightmares about these meetings, and that is not a joke. My name is Cassandra Hooks. I am a former youth advocate and for multiple visible nonprofits in Midtown, and I was sitting here trying to collect my thoughts of what I was going to say to you, because there were factually, statistically, research-based things that were wrong with so many things that so many of you said. This, this goes beyond, this goes beyond temporary, a temporary solution. It is like statistically, factually, the wrong solution. This doesn't work, and many of you are legislating and are drafting legislation from a fundamentally Reimagining public safety, that was your legislative platform for this year, or last year, I believe. But enforcement cannot and should not be addressed without alternatives. I find it disingenuous, Darrell, that you said that you hoped that these items would have been put together, but yet they were put separately, and so there was, the fact there was even a possibility that one of these items could pass without the other in the beginning is where this meeting went wrong. The fact that we had to have a discussion about Item 4 before 5 is baffling. Your promises of accountability and practices mean little, given the history of the city. Katie Maple, Lisa Kaplan, Howard Chan, and Corinna Telemontes have all made factually untrue statements about the state of services in Sacramento today. The quality, I'll address what you said about our unhoused neighbors in a moment, but it is not the responsibility of the oppressed and abused to reconcile with those and assistance that they.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Rachel Brown, then Devin Strecker.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Rachel Brown, Power and Alliance. I'm in full support of this item tonight, this afternoon, today, and I agree especially one point that the mayor made, it's an emergency. It's time to do something. And while this is not the permanent solution, temporary, getting people a safe place to live temporarily, while we hopefully continue, I echo the chamber's comments, I'm hopeful to see more solutions come forward. This is not a one-and-done. I know we have a Safe Stay Shelter just south of our district, which we supported when it went to the county last year, and there's supposed to be a project home key that's going in our district, which we supported as well. So I don't want to say two-faced that we think it's a good idea but don't support it. We're supporting two projects locally, and I would look forward to, if the city manager feels they want to look at District 6, I'd love to talk about it. I really want to be a partner in the solution and not just complain. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Devin Strecker.
Hello again, Devin Strecker with the River District, and we are in support of Item 5. As you know, River District has been ground zero for the unhoused population for decades, and as Councilmember Valenzuela pointed out, as camps are cleaned up and displaced, oftentimes the individuals are directed to the River District. As a neighborhood that currently has no housing other than low-income housing and a large share of the city's shelter beds, people are not becoming homeless in our district, but they are being directed there to live on our streets and sidewalks. The fact is that many of these individuals are experiencing trauma exacerbated by mental health issues and drug addiction. We need safe spaces across all eight districts for individuals to stay while they navigate into the services and permanent housing, and these locations should be spread throughout the city, near where people became homeless, near their friends and family, employment opportunities, and in the neighborhoods they've called home. I urge you to vote yes on this item. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We have 17 speakers online. The first is Bob Erlinbusch, then Lambert Davis.
Hi, thank you again. Bob Erlinbusch, Sacramento Regional Coalition to End Homelessness. This is pretty baffling to me, Agenda Item 4, where there was really many, many comments made by those on the dais about giving direction to the city manager, so the city manager could give direction to staff, so there was clarity about protocols, et cetera. And then Item 5 turns around with virtually no direction, other than, excuse me, the comments that were made, which I generally agree with, Mayor, but that's just a list of things. That doesn't codify or give any direction. The city manager doesn't necessarily have to make it low barrier, doesn't have to be near transportation lines, doesn't necessarily have to provide a full array of social services, and we can do better than the bare minimum of a couple of porta-potties and maybe a shower. So I would urge you not to move forward in haste, but really take responsibility in forgiving the same kind of direction on this agenda item that you gave in Agenda Item Number 4, to set some clear, very clear guidelines for the city manager and his office to follow, so it's clear that everybody's on the same page, and we just don't wind up with a couple of safe grounds in commercially-zoned areas that are nowhere close to being equitably distributed across our city. I really urge you to just take a breath, provide some clear direction to the city manager so everyone's on the same page. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Lambert Davis.
Yes, this is Lambert Davis, and I don't see public comments not on the agenda, so I don't know if I should comment here or afterwards. Is there, are there public comments not on the agenda today? Okay, you're not going to answer it. I personally think that the city manager does not deserve any power that cannot be checked by a two-thirds vote of the mayor and the city council. Why? Because every week, and I mean every week, I see a violation of the Brown Act, and if you would enforce the city manager's report where he has to come in front of the public, then you wouldn't be in this dilemma you're in, because you would know every week that's on the agenda, and that should be enforced. You're going into a decision that's not being enforced by a weekly report. I heard the mayor make a great statement. He said, "It'd be good if you came back monthly with a report," and there was a pushback. Why? Because it's going to expose, if $41 million is going into the homeless, and you never improve your 1,300 beds, the scandal is focused on the contractors. How much are they getting? Give that to us. I want to see that report, and I want to see the city manager come in front of the public and give us that report, because you cannot make a decision like this without a report. Not only that, it's a violation of the Brown Act, and I'm the only one in this city that says it, and I mean what I say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Nikki Paschal. And Mr. Davis's comment, we do not have an opportunity for matters not on the agenda this evening, as this is a special meeting. Nikki?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. I am Nikki Pascal, a homeowner and business owner in Midtown. I support the mayor's concept of expediting safe spaces for people to legally dwell, and I think it's really smart to take the politics out of the siding decision and stop the excuses on funding. We know the ultimate solution to homelessness is housing, and we also have to bring folks some measure of dignity in the meantime. I'm concerned, however, that this proposal is missing any clear timeline. I'm concerned, however, that this proposal is missing any clear timelines, expectations, or accountability. The mayor referenced some quality-of-life markers as outcomes, but those are not in the policy as presented. And it's understandable, the city manager doesn't want a numerical requirement to meet, but without that clear direction, the public doesn't know what to expect from this policy, and the council can't hold staff accountable. Similarly, the policy doesn't define what constitutes a temporary shelter, such as shade from extreme temperatures, or showers, or toilets. Again, those were alluded to, but are not defined in the resolution that's presented, nor does the policy require spaces that are conducive to families or pets. Furthermore, and this is really fundamental, the policy as presented doesn't require any input from unsheltered people on what will meet their needs. Last year, in an op-ed, the mayor said of our homelessness challenge, "The fundamental problem remains the same. The law describes no timetables, production requirements, or even individualized obligations to help." And I think that that same philosophy ought to apply here, and the policy needs to be more specific, and it would be much stronger if it were more specific in making clear that the city manager is not only authorized to create safe grounds, but required to do so. So I encourage you to take those comments into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Sean Wright. Sean, if you'll unmute.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor, Council, and City Manager. This is Sean Wright with the Alkaline Master Flats and Naval Association. I support the proposal to grant the city manager the authority to open emergency shelter sites throughout the city and the updated homeless response protocols. These sites should follow the emergency shelter ordinance passed in 2021, so as not to overly concentrate the sites in any geographic area, paying close attention to the areas that are already overly concentrated by shelters and homeless services to minimize the associated impacts. The city has compromised sixty-four thousand acres of land, and this allows for a lot of options for many sites that do not exacerbate the current overly concentrated areas. To be specific, the River District and Alkaline Master Flat Neighborhood has overconcentration upon the services. I'm encouraged by your recent collaboration with the county, and you should encourage the county to mirror your efforts and open more emergency shelter sites. You should demand that they only open new sites outside of the city of Sacramento. The county sites should be opened in the unincorporated areas and the other cities in Sacramento County, Albor, Rancho Cudobah, Sitchess, Spalza, and Gault. This would help to reduce the inflow of the unhoused into Sacramento and give the city a chance to realize the benefits of this monumental task. Homelessness is a regional emergency that needs a greater Sacramento solution, and I suggest that you form a regional task force that includes business leaders, city managers, county executives, homeless service providers, district attorneys, and anyone else that is deemed appropriate. Because at the end of the day, this issue needs a lot more resources than the city of Sacramento can ever provide. We cannot resolve this in a timely manner on our own. Together, the region can strategize and bring more mental health resources, substance abuse treatment to the area. Together, the region can find quick solutions to emergency affordable housing. Thank you for your help and leadership on this issue.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Stuart Gao. I have thirteen more speakers.
Hi again. I agree with previous speakers that the county needs to do more, for sure. I'd like to expand on my earlier comments about North Sacramento. Just to give you more details, so you can picture it, from my house, I can walk to many large encampments you've probably heard of, like in any direction in ten minutes. I can be at Dixie Anne Encampment, I can be at Evergreen Street Encampment, Commerce Circle, Camp Resolution, Camp San Altos, Camp Subtraction, the Surestay Hotel, the Greens Hotel. It's an incredible overconcentration of hopelessness, squalor, and crime in a really small area. Over and over since 2017, North Sacramento has been the first place named for the city's new shelters and safe camping sites. That resulted in poverty being heaped upon poverty and upon communities of color. These sites have been publicly announced, and the unhoused from other parts of the city have come here to these sites in anticipation of receiving services and finding secure camping, only to have the rug pulled out from under them when the city's promises failed to materialize. And then these struggling people are left with nothing at these locations. That's a big part of how we went from a hundred and fifty unhoused to thousands. North Sacramento can't handle it anymore. We absolutely do need services for the massive unhoused population we already have, along with management and oversight of the situation. We don't need to be named as the first place to go, yet again. I will say camp resolution is a big problem for the community because of the crime it's brought. It's, the unhoused who choose to stay in camps like that cannot be allowed to run drugs and prostitutes out of the camps, and that's what's happening in camp resolution. The signs need to be taken down, it needs to be cleaned up, there needs to be strict oversight. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Muriel Strand. Muriel, if you'll unmute.
Yes, so my name is Muriel Strand. I live in District Five. And when I bought my house in 1989, I displaced the renter that had been there before, and he ended up camping in the backyard of my next-door neighbor. I think he was a vet. So he was there for a few months. Now, earlier this evening, somebody said that it was okay to camp on private property. Well, could I not invite someone, at least one person, to camp on my private property? Could that be my property right? But more to the point, let's talk about safety. I think the reality is that the sheltered people won't feel safe until the unsheltered people also feel safe. And all the stakeholders need to participate, the council, the community, staff, and the business community, who should be building the affordable housing. Thanks for the opportunity to comment again, subject to my written comments.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Dylan Hoy Bianchi.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Good. So obviously, I support in general the idea of creating more safe grounds for people to be at, and then just generally having a way of designating where people are allowed to be. I think that is good and something the council should do. Notice that I said something the council should do, because I think the idea of extending this authority to the city manager and increasing his already broad authority over what goes on in the city is a huge mistake. Mayor Steinberg, you said, "I'm asking you to trust the city manager with these difficult siting decisions." For what reason do you think that the public should have trust in Howard Chan on this issue? How has he demonstrated any reason for us to trust him? If you just look at even just the issues that happened with getting Miller Park up and running, there is ample reason not to trust Howard Chan on the issue of siting for locations for unhoused people. I think that expanding, especially shocking coming from someone like yourself, Mayor, who in the past has advocated for a strong mayor system of government in Sacramento, that you would now suddenly shift to wanting to significantly increase the powers of the city manager. City manager is not an elected official. There is no way for the public to hold them accountable. The city council is supposed to hold them accountable, but in the past, all you've done is give him raises instead of holding him accountable for his transgressions. Howard Chan has been a bad city manager for the city. His decisions that he has made has led directly to people dying in the past, unhoused people dying. And immediately after that, he was given a raise rather than being held accountable. So I don't know why we would trust the city council to hold him accountable now if he is given this power. I would love to see the city council create more sites for homeless people to be allowed to stay at, but this is not the way. This is a bad plan. Please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Sarah Cox.
Oh, okay. Hi, my name is Sarah Cox. I'm in District Four in South Side Park. I'm with the South Side Park Neighborhood Association, and I wanted to echo others' thoughts about the need for, you know, more drastic overhauls in the housing industry to actually solve any problems. But until that can happen, you know, safe spaces for unhoused people to stay at is the next best temporary solution. I would like to see this initiative, you know, have more oversight, have more guidelines about services that are offered and the locations where they're placed. We did have a safe camping ground under the WX Freeway for a while, and so I have witnessed how helpful they are in connecting people with services and providing a little bit of dignity, but definitely there needs to be some oversight and transparency. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is D-5 Resident. D-5 Resident, if you'll unmute. D-5 Resident? You appear unmuted. I'll go to the next person.
Can you hear me?
D-5 Resident.
Hello.
Please proceed.
Hello.
Please proceed. We can hear you. I'm going to go to the next person. Keon Bliss. Keon Bliss, we can.
Okay, so, yeah, I've been listening in for a bit, and it's, there's so much to be said within a two-minute comment that I know is not going to get extended, so I'm going to ask a couple of questions. Why is it so hard for our elected representatives to designate safe ground sites for their unhoused constituents? I mean, cities taxpayers spend no less than 1.6 million dollars for the mayor and city council to make such difficult decisions on our behalf, especially in the shared interest and well-being of all constituents, particularly the most vulnerable among us, including our unhoused residents. And yet, we're essentially passing the buck to an unelected official who makes more than half a million dollars and is the most expensive city manager in the state. Curious to know, is it too, like, is it because you can't find safe ground sites like at least two council members were able to find over two years ago? Or is it just too hard to make uncomfortable decisions that might upset your friends in the private business development industry? Or is it because many members of the city council accept thousands of dollars from individuals tied to or working with the P-bids, several of whom actually serve on their Board of Directors for? I also want to ask, why should anyone trust the city manager, Howard Chan, to use this power to designate safe ground sites in places outside of the usual black and Hispanic neighborhoods that have always been around, been on the front lines of poverty and homelessness? Are there safe ground sites already identified at or near the majority white affluent neighborhoods in Van Park, East Sacramento, or the River District? Or is he going to, is he going to use any of the previous sites that were identified by previous council members over two years ago? Or is he just going to follow the interests of the P-bid owners, which he actually serves on the Board of Directors for as an seated officer of the most powerful P-bid, the Downtown Sacramento Partnership? These are important questions that you ask, because frankly...
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Mr. B. Mr. B., if you'll unmute.
Mr. B., can you unmute, please?
I'll go to the next...
I'm going to clerk move on to the next speaker.
Sorry, I was having issues there, but I will yield my time.
Thank you. Next speaker is SF.
Hello?
Please proceed.
Yes, one thing I wanted to say was, there's a big problem with, like, Miller Park. There's a lot of problem with the tents. They're very hot. You guys know, need to do something about that. You guys spent a lot of money over there, and there's a whole lot of problems. And you guys are going and spending money on new safe grounds, and there's a whole lot of problems with the safe grounds you have already. And, you know, but it's good that you guys wanted to do new safe grounds. That's awesome. But Miller Park is really not that great. It would be nice if you guys improved that one. But also, when you guys meet people, you need to tell them where to go. And it is a good idea to, if you have, you know, city and county property all over the city, why don't you just move them there? You know, you've got open property, just move them there and, you know, make a safe ground there. And, you know? And, you know, make a safe ground there, and, you know? You know, have, do your porta-potties and showers and all that.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Nick. I have five more speakers on this item. Nick, if you'll unmute.
My name is Nikki. I'm concerned about the level of discretion. You know, just because you call it a safe ground doesn't make it safe. And just because you call it a safe ground and you say you want to model it after these other places where self-governance is important and valued, doesn't make that happen. This resolution doesn't make that happen. Howard Chan having sole authority over the project doesn't ensure that that happens either. And so unless things that are really the values of the projects you want to see are written in, and not just that, but standard living conditions, right? So at this point, we could take another asphalt lot, put up a fence, and call it good, and that's just simply inappropriate. It's not what people need. We need long-term solutions, and there are so many encampments across Sacramento City and County that, you know, we couldn't cite enough places. I guarantee, there will always be these phone calls about camps in people's neighborhoods because we are not getting ahead of the problem. And we could cite ten tomorrow and ten the next week, and we still are, which we could never do, right? But my point is, we're not going to get ahead of it through this type of strategy, and we need to get way further upstream. And this is, as an entryway, as a way, as a vehicle for you to move people along, is not appropriate. People need to have voluntary access to voluntary services. Just participating in the coercive service delivery model doesn't make it a safe ground right off the bat. So you can get their name out your mouth in that respect. It needs to be voluntary, and it needs to be self-governed.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Mac.
Good day, Council. My name is Mackenzie, and I'm an organizer with the Carcerate Sacramento, the Sacramento Tenants Union, and therefore a community organizer that supports those at the intersections of homelessness, poverty, and your criminalization and enforcement policies. It is wild to find ourselves here today, to listen to status quo enforcement, and then something you all call new. Although this solution has been in front of you for many, many years, I believe somebody said thirteen. It's heartbreaking that it took you years, and that it comes after the community forced you to stay the sweep of camp resolution. I mean, I do, I give thanks that we're here now, but the truth is, is I fear the co-opting of our language and safe ground, and that is what your goal is. And that what your goal is, is to find lots and then force people to them without any consideration of where they already are, the community they already have built, talking to them, and allowing for their autonomy to decide for themselves and what they need. If this is your goal, then please stop what you're doing. Slow down. Bring in the advocates you have heard the solution from for over a decade to the table, and build these things with the intention you say you want to bring to this effort. Without it, it will be harmful. It will not work, and without real investment, you'll get to say that we tried, and then lean again back into your historical homeless services of nothing but criminalization and enforcement. The advocates and experts didn't get an invite to this conversation before today, and I hope that that's different before any item comes back. Yes, it is a fire, but your urgency and lack of cooperation and collaborative approaches to this item means that you are not going to be able to put it out properly. You have experts, local ones. Utilize us before you get further into the realm of co-opting our language. And no offense, but your experts are not the P-bids in the Chamber of Commerce's because they are part of what is creating the crisis. Let's do this right. Finally, I'll end with stop all sweeps, and none of this will be any good without building publicly and socially owned housing.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is HHF Los Angeles. I have three more speakers. HHF Los Angeles. HHF Los Angeles. I'm gonna go to Barry Boyd. Barry Boyd.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you and good afternoon. On this agenda item five, I am, as many others have stated, giving the discretion for one individual, i.e. the city manager's office, to unfettered rein over a $1.5 billion budget to allocate funding to that office's request of where that office, the manager's office wants to place and/or build a shelter. I don't find that the democratic way of doing business in any chartered city and municipality. To that, with the city council that is there behind the dais, should maintain the control of what the will of the people would like to have done and implemented thusly. What hasn't worked, what has, not completely, there's some items that have worked, but for the majority of what we are all trying to accomplish hopefully is to house individuals, starting with, let's prevent those who are on the cusp of becoming homeless or unhoused first, putting monies there to stop that flow. And to that, the tens of millions of dollars that are going to these nonprofits and private companies that are reeking the benefit of those millions of dollars or that should be going to the unhoused of building shelters and/or finding safe places throughout the city of Sacramento. They're, they're enjoying this. But to that, if we can place facilities throughout all eight districts instead of the icon one or two districts and/or neighborhoods, that would be a fantastic thing.
Thank you for your comments. Our final speaker is Richard Wake on this item.
Yeah, Richard Wake, City Council, District Seven. You know, back right out, not too long after Mayor Steinberg took office, there was a proposal by former city council member Alan Warren to open up a trial-run safe ground campsite. That was rejected by the majority of the council members. Then not too long after that, at an act meeting, Mayor Steinberg and former city council members Chenier and Harris came to, came to the act meeting. And one of the things that Mayor Steinberg proposed was to have churches, to pass a resolution or an ordinance to allow churches to shelter 20 people. Lo and behold, the P bids, the president of every P bid, signed a letter to the mayor and the city council saying that that was a bad idea because that would put too many shelters around their businesses. Yet here they are today bitching, moaning, and whining that, oh, there's too many homeless people in the street and you need to get more shelters open. I don't feel sorry for most of these business owners. They had a chance to do something about it way back in 2017. They keep doing this nimby, nimby, nimby attitude of not in my backyard, just like many other of the wealthier neighborhoods do when it comes to housing homeless people. The days of nimbyism in Sacramento should be over, should be over. In politics, there's winners and losers. That's what I learned from then-city council member Joe Serna Jr. when he was my faculty advisor at Sac State. There's winners and losers. The nimby people need to be told, sorry, you lose, here's where the shelters are gonna be. There's plenty of places, 102 acres on Menavee Road, Memorial Auditorium. There's a big hole in the, in the ground down at 3rd and L Street. There's plenty of vacant buildings and office spaces in Sacramento that Kimberly Church provided the entire city council a list for back in 2018. You guys have completely failed here. You failed. Stop the nimbyism. Stop the nimbyism. It needs to come to an end. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers on this item.
All right, thank, thank you so much again to the members of the public. I know it's long, but important. This is a really important set of issues. Let me begin with Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you. I wanna start where John took us in his comments of just recognizing how far we've come as a city. And I think we're hearing that in some of the comments that, you know, there was a time when, you know, the idea of a sanctioned camping area that folks could govern was like unheard of and actively resisted. And like the not-too-recent past, you mentioned 12th and C., which I'm proud is in my district. And I love that residents of the Creamery will bring over Thanksgiving dinner or do like holiday events with the residents there. Like, they've really made it a part of the community in that part of Akawai Flat, and it's run really well. But even then, I mean, I was a councilmember-elect, there was resistance. And we didn't have the protocols yet. We didn't have the ordinances yet. And so when I think about how far we've come in just the last three years with having city-run sites, with having private sites that are running successfully, and now with something like Camp Resolution, which is a real private partnership, I mean, it really does show how far we've evolved and how much I think we've all embraced, just the level of crisis and the fact that, and I've said this before and I will continue to say it, like, absolutely none of us think that this is a solution. Like, to be clear, the solution is having a place for you to live, a permanent housing unit where you're getting the services you need. That's the solution. I think what I appreciate about this is not only the scalability and the speed, as the mayor mentioned, but that hopefully it also starts to free up resources so we can move that upstream direction towards more permanent housing and really start addressing the root issue of not just why people become unhoused, but why they stay unhoused for so long. So I'm really excited about this, but I will say that there's a lot of questions I have. And Mayor, honestly, you hit most of them, which I'm really glad. Thank you for saying that, so I'll just reiterate. I think like a basic level of services from the city is to be expected, right? Like, what about bathrooms? What about showers? What about trash? What about case management, so that they're regularly being checked on by professionals? I really think that the idea of, well, actually, and I will say, the idea of private property leasing, like we did with Camp Resolution, I think the other side, when we mentioned private property being able to be used for encampments. This is something that's come up because we do have an ordinance on this. I will say that even our former mayor Fargo has emailed us a couple times about the city citing her for allowing people to camp on a parcel she has in District Two. And so I think maybe there's some more opportunities there for us to explore about, like, if we have willing property owners who were like, yeah, like, I would let someone park in my driveway. I would let someone camp here. If there are certain standards met, obviously, you don't want it to turn into a health hazard. But I feel like we could maybe reexamine that initial private safe ground ordinance that was really created with 12th and C. in mind to think about, how do we create more of those tools? Because if you have a property owner, say a church, who's like, yeah, I would put, you know, a half dozen encampments in this parking lot, that's kind of away from homes like that, that could be a great other way for us to expand the opportunities really quickly with minimal, really the city just getting out of the way and providing that support, you know, so that we can really, and hopefully with the county, I will say that. So that's something I just wanna make sure stays on the radar is like, I think that what you heard from these folks, I get a lot of calls from folks that are like, what can I do? What can I do? And I think some of the ideas we heard in public comment today are just important, and I wanna highlight that because I think that's really important. I also would love to hear about sites currently being considered. I don't know when, if there is a list, if we can see a list, if the city manager's ready to talk about lists, if you have ideas.
Now, there are no, I mean, we're compiling some lists. We're taking a look at it. I wanted to follow up from this meeting to make sure that the council's on board with moving forward before expending city resources on this. But in, in general, we're gonna look at all the city-owned vacant lots and take a look, you know, given this is temporary, we're gonna look at speed, right? And, and also some of the things that the mayor mentioned you as well. But understand that, you know, we have speed on one end, and we have Miller Park with all the services and all the things that we need and the operator and the expense. And so the further you get towards the Miller Park scenario, the longer it's gonna take and the more it's gonna cost. And so it's gonna be up to this council to determine where in that spectrum you wanna be.
Yeah.
Right? And so I, that's what I wanna hear.
Well, and I appreciate that. And I think like for some people, 24/7 support is what's best, right? And like, we just have to admit that there are just, there, just like there's a spectrum of options, there's a spectrum of needs, right? Like, not everybody is gonna feel comfortable in a self-governed encampment with folks they don't know, right? But then there are other people who maybe have been in an encampment of 20 folks. Like, I think about the folks on Bannon Creek, like, and now councilmember Talamontas' district. I mean, those seniors had been together for years. And so like, you could literally, like, if we gave them a parcel and said, hey, you can go over here, I'm pretty confident they would have been able to figure that out for themselves versus other encampments might need more help. So I see this as a spectrum approach where it's like, in some cases, it's a simple, someone like Mayor Fargo saying, I wanna let a couple people, like, just stay on my property. What does that look like? All the way to, hey, we have a site, but it's on RT property and it's the Roseville Road parking lot. And we're gonna need to really be more hands-on with that because it's public property and we can't just give that away because it's not ours to give away. So I see this as a spectrum, and, and I really think that it's, it's all of the above. You know, to the degree we can stretch our resources, as the mayor said. If there's a zillion opportunities and every church in the city steps forward and says, hey, I'll take five, I'll take 10, I've got 20, you know, then that would be great. And we could just say, great, we're just gonna roll it out. But if we hit a barrier and we find an opportunity site, I mean, like you said, there's no way to know without knowing the sites you're looking at and kind of what you're seeing from your perspective in terms of what's feasible for that. Yeah, so that's why I say, like, for me, I love the idea of allowing some of these sites to be self-governed. Obviously, like we said, that doesn't mean that we would just walk away. There's gonna need to be some support and checking in and making sure that things are okay. So if the problem arises, people know who to call, but I think that's a really cool idea. I wanna thank the mayor for bringing that up. And I will say, for me, implementation, I appreciate the comments around implementation. I especially appreciate the idea of who has a voice in this process. And so one of the ideas that I was just kicking around in my own head was, can we create like a working group to help you, city manager, like advocates and folks with lived experience who are interested, similar to the work that was done with Camp Resolution, to say, hey, we wanna figure this out. We've got ideas. And it doesn't have to be expansive, but I know there was a while where Bridgette Dean, when she was running DCR, had like an advisory group that she had formed of service providers, like, who can we tap into so that it doesn't come on the city to figure all this out? But it's really us working in partnership with these folks in the communities who say, oh, hey, we've got a site over here that we actually think would be perfect, and we'd like to work with you on this. And then we're just, like, I don't think we need to be the sole driver of this, for instance. And I love to think about what that looks like, as well as obviously what the regular updates and what the timeline is for this. And that's something that maybe, I know that maybe in the next week or two, I don't know. I heard some rumors of maybe another special meeting. I don't know. I see holds on my calendars for different things. Like, when can, how quickly can we at least talk about the bare-bones structure of timeline and process so that we know what to expect based on what you think is reasonable and we can really work with you on that? And it's not like, hey, we're gonna sign up 10 sites by the end of August, but it's like, hey, okay, we have a lead on some sites. We have other leads on other sites. Here's what we think we can do within this direction.
I think I will reiterate that the, the approach that I will take if, should this pass tonight, and truly, it's, I'm given the authority to move forward with this, is gonna take a look at those parcels that the city owns, has site control over, does not need federal approvals, state, other regulatory agency approvals. That's what happened to the siting plan. It got bogged down in all these approvals and, you know, cost was one of them, but not the only thing. And so for those sites that we kinda distill down into Phase One, and again, the, the conversation here tonight has been, to the extent possible, geographically dispersed. Well, the vacant parcels don't work that way. They're vacant for a reason. So they're, they're probably located in, not in our central city because all the vacant parcels that we've been looking at, you know, we have infill projects and whatnot. You just don't, you don't find a lot of opportunities. So I, I just wanna be clear about that. So when I'm looking at it is through the lens of, how do we implement this quickly? Because this is temporary. This is while we're waiting for the South Area, waiting for Cal Expo, waiting for some of these other things to come to the front. And, you know, so it's either, again, it's speed or we wanna get engagement and, you know, more resources and more services. You can't have both.
Okay. Well, I guess, like, I don't see them as two just separate buckets. I see that as a spectrum, right?
They are a spectrum, but the closer you get to one side, the longer it's gonna take, and the expectations have to be set accordingly.
Exactly. And I think that's the conversation that we should have if this passes today, right? Like, in the not-too-distant future, to really sit down and start talking nuts and bolts, like, what's possible? How quickly can we go? Like, one idea that I'm thinking about right now is like, if we just had like a portal, right? That someone could go to and be like, hey, I've got a vacant property, or I've got, you know, a side lot, or I've got something. I'd be down to use that to, to help some people. Like, that could be a way for you, just like I said, out the gate to be like, wow. I know like there's some ESAC residents, for example, that the mayor and I have talked to who are trying to find every little parcel that they can think of to say, hey, can we house people here? Can we house people there? So if we go out there and say, hey, do you have ideas in addition to what we're looking at? You'd have someone like Mayor Fargo coming forward and saying, yeah, I've got a parcel, and I would love to have a couple people on there, and that would work for me. And it would help us just, again, think strategically about how we use our public resources and tap into that community of support that I think exists out there for them.
I think you also need the economies of scale because if you have these smaller parcels that we're sending our teams all over the city to try and support, it's not gonna be very efficient. So I'm, I'm happy to have the conversation, but I'd love to hear from the council where we're gonna end up on this item.
I wanna, because this is important, I just wanna see if I can translate before I turn it over, because what I hear. So my, I've been, I'm very clear. I think we gotta give the city manager the binding authority. Because if we do not, the process will get bogged down through good intentions and too much community and council involvement. You know, look, let's all look in the mirror here, everybody, all of us. However, what I hear Councilmember Valenzuela is saying, which I think is a very good, very good, which is be open to advice and reach out and make sure that even your process isn't so insular. In the end, you can make the decisions. That's what it is. And you're gonna have to weigh the spectrum as she described it, but I also think it is important to be a little bit, in, in your own way, outward-facing so that you are open to hearing about things that you might not have, have considered in terms of private property sites or, or other, or other things that maybe aren't on just that first tier that you described a moment ago.
So maybe I could ask for clarification. When you're saying these private properties, they're not, because we've done this before where we're trying to set up these warming centers and people have offered up their site, but with strings attached.
Yeah.
That there's payment for operators, there's payment for security, payment for restrooms, payment for damage that could happen? So if that's what you're asking me, that will bog this down completely.
No, and I think we're in an interesting moment right now where it's like, we want all the information, but we also don't wanna commit too much in, time and energy into getting the information before we know where we're at. And so just to be clear, I'm supportive of starting this. What I'm interested in is how, how do we engage? So like, I'm saying something like, I keep using Mayor Fargo as an example because she had people staying on her property, and she wasn't asking the city for anything, right? Like, they were there, they were safe, they were stable. And so she said, hey, like, I would like to just do this. And so if you have somebody like that who's like, hey, I've got this parcel, I'd like to have, like, be able to have five or 10 people on here that are self-governing themselves that you just check in with periodically, I don't know why we would say no to that, you know? So I guess that's why I mean in terms of like...
I think it's very granular, and we're getting into the weeds here. And if you multiply that request by 100, we will be spinning our wheels.
Okay, I guess, um, sorry, I'm trying to recalibrate here. I wanna refinish my thought and let other people weigh in because it's just like, I think that this is not something that we can solve ourselves, and I know we've said that before. I think that the clearer mandate that I feel from my district is like, yes, let's go. What you heard Sarah call in from Southside Park Neighborhood Association, what you might not remember is that the first safe site, which granted was messy, was right in their neighborhood, WX Underground, under the freeway. And they're supportive of continuing to do this because they understand what it means. So I hope that my colleagues will be supportive of this as well as possible, to do very well. I just wanna make sure that city manager, with all of the experience that you have in the government, you are not a homeless service provider, right? And you would never claim to be. So I just wanna make sure that we have an opportunity. I know you'd rather not be. But I think, I, I wanna just think about, how do we not ask you to become something that you're not? And how do we bring in this expert and support from the community that is very ready to help us with this, to help alleviate that burden? So those are my thoughts. Okay.
By the way, I think you made some really good points. It's like, we're giving him the authority, but we're asking him to, to just at least be open to ideas, but don't let that stop your progress. It's true. So it's hard, but that's what we're, that, that, that'll get the best result. But you get to make the decision. Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. I kinda wanna build on some of the points that my colleague just mentioned in reference to the process and the timeline and strategic outreach and all those things. And I know all that'll come now that, if, if in fact we approve this today. And so I just wanna kinda reiterate the need to have that kinda stuff because we gotta go back out to our constituents and talk to them about the decisions that we're making in order to make sure that they understand and can support our decisions. But I, I'm very much in, in support of this idea. And the reason I'm in support of it is because six years ago, we had 100 bids. Today, we have 1,100 with a need to get to significantly more. And I myself don't have a strategy that I can put together, that I can think of, that I can do research, that I can go find a best practice for. I don't have that strategy to get us to more housing, even if it's emergency or temporary housing, that will help us at this point in time in order to take people off the street, to create a safer environment for them. So I'm, I'm very much in favor of this. And the staff report said very clearly that many of the chronically unhoused are more willing to come into an organized, safe camping site than into an indoor shelter. And if that's true, then we need to have more of these types of shelters so that, camping sites, so that in fact more will come off the street and we can then provide them with the services that are needed in order to move them into housing, temporary shelter into housing. Okay, so, um, and, and getting them into safer places sooner than later is something that will require them to have to wait for vacancy on our current plan of only having 1,000 homes. So it would take way too long based on current state that we find it. So knowing that all those details will come after everybody's... So knowing that all those details will come after everybody speaks today, I'm very much in favor of this plan. I think it's a great plan. I think Camp Resolution has shown us how well it's worked, right? I mean, I'm, maybe yes, maybe no. That'll come out in this conversation. And so at this point in time, I'm very much in support of the plan because I think it's a plan that its time has come. I remember Councilmember Alan Wayne Warren, when he was on the council, this was a conversation that he had back then. And we thought he was crazy for bringing up that kind of idea. And now his idea has moved, in my opinion, to the top of the list. So I'm very much in support.
Councilmember Jennings, and for the council really, I just want to remind that this is, this is not something that I'm advocating for. This is something that has been put out for consideration by this council. And I'm, you know, I hear some of the comments. I've heard the public testimony. I'm not trying to garner more authority. It's not that. It's that if we want to move forward, some of the discussion we have here and the items that are coming up now, I see very clearly is going to hinder the process. We're not going to get to the speed that we're looking for, because this is a temporary process that we're going to implement, you know, in advance of Cal Expo, something in the South area, something with the city-county partnership agreement. So I, you know, I'm ambivalent. If we're going to go this route, I think it should be fewer strings attached to it. And, you know, and if it doesn't pass, I'm okay too. My feelings are not hurt whatsoever. This is not me trying to usurp power from this council.
Mr. City Manager, I'm going to tell you, and you're my friend, I love you, you're not hearing it correctly. No one is trying to put strings on it. I did not hear Councilmember Valenzuela condition this. I did not hear Councilmember Jennings condition this. What you are hearing is that it's important that you be willing to have several meetings, so to speak, with advocates, with members, with others, and be open to that kind of input. That's different from strings. And I really, because we do this a lot, and this is one of the reasons why implementation slows, because you think that members, including me, are putting something on you, and that's the exact opposite. I'm recommending this, excuse me, because I have full confidence in your ability to take all of the input that is necessary, that will broaden your choices. That's all this is. It is, nobody is putting a string on you. I'm going to resist any amendment to this, to this motion that seeks to put a string or a condition on what you do. What they're asking for, what I heard Councilmember Valenzuela ask for in good faith, is that you simply take the input in, because it may broaden, it may, again, broaden your choices.
My point only is that I'm happy to do those things, so long as the expectations are matched with the timeline to do all these things.
You're right. And you're right. And I laid out the two expectations. That we move towards a cleaner and safer city that is tangible and visible, and that you are being an enforcer when it comes to the city-county partnership agreement, for example. And you get these safe grounds up, safe ground sites up, so that we're moving more people along a pathway where they have a better chance to get the help they need to get off the streets. Those are the two, those are the two ways that you and this are going to be judged. How you choose to do it is, we're giving it to you, but we want you to not, to be open, at least to, not, not, I want to say a public process. I don't want some fancy public process. Just to be open to, to hearing what might be some good ways to do it. I understand. I'm just, but I know how this thing bogs down. Councilmember Maple.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Well, I just want to start with, I actually had the same exact thought as Councilmember Valenzuela at the beginning of her comments, which is, it's kind of amazing that we're here. Because I remember not that long ago, hearing from advocates advocating myself for these types of solutions, and not feeling as though there really was a path forward on the council at the time. And so I think it's great that we're here to take from, from the mayor, something I think he says often, which is progress, not perfection. And this is one step. It's one step in the process. We have a lot to do, not just us as the city. We have a lot to do as a region. We have a lot to do at the state level. We have a lot to do at the federal level, and I'll talk about some of those things. But while we're doing all of that, there's real people that are out there, that are living in places that are not appropriate for, for human habitation, and that risk their lives and others' and safety and everything else. And so we acknowledge that and say, we need to find places. We can't just say you have to move along, because that's not the answer. We have to say, here is an appropriate place for you to camp. Here's an appropriate shelter bed for you. Here's housing, everything. And so this is one piece of that pie, and it's so important that we, that we do this alongside a lot of other things at once. Because this, homelessness is a, it's a collection of people that all have very different issues and reasons why they're there. And that means that we have to employ a myriad of solutions at the same time. So this is one, one of them. Recognizing that, you know, we are one part of the solution too, as the city. And so I just want to agree with some of the things that my colleagues have said so far. I also think it's really important, just being frank, that it's a politicized process. Finding some of these sites has been very political over the years, because it's hard. You know, people, a lot of people don't want to see certain things in their neighborhood, or they don't agree with the path of something. And, and when that's elevated to a political level, it makes it very challenging for them to get through. And so I agree that doing something at an administrative level makes sense, right? We give direction. We say it is imperative that we find these spaces. We want to make sure that, you know, we trust in you to do the right thing, to make sure that they make sense for the neighbors and for our communities. But we know that we need to get it done. And so I think doing it at this level is the right way to get it done more quickly than has happened in the past. I think we've learned from some of the lessons of, of past efforts. And so all of that, I know my colleagues have talked about the local. I want to say that in addition to this, we, you know, I'm going to continue to be advocating for a formal regional response. I heard that someone say that on one of the callers earlier. We need that. We cannot do this alone. The city of Sacramento cannot do this alone. We need our partners as a region. We need other cities around us. We need our state partners. We need our federal partners. We know that this is something that's not happening in a vacuum. Most of it comes from a lack of affordable and low income housing for folks. We've got to build more. Well, how do we do that? We need the money. And we also need to make sure that we, you know, reduce the barriers to building more and getting the things that we need. So I'm going to continue to advocate for those things, a formal regional response. I'm going to be advocating to our state and federal partners to make sure that we have the money that we need, along with my colleagues here. And so I just think we have to discuss all these things at once. This is one piece of the pie. And so I support this. And I just, you know, I believe in your ability to do this, city manager, and so I support this effort. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Councilmember Laloe.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So just to talk about willing property owners, and I think Mayor Fargo had come up, which is in my district. It takes a lot more than somebody saying, hey, I have my property. Why don't you have about five RVs move on my property? Because you have a whole neighborhood that's going to get affected. So unless you're verifying with your neighbors, unless you're getting proper permits, then no, I don't think I would support such a thing like that. As far as getting a whole group to sit with the, with the city manager, I don't think, when it comes to these sites, advocates or activists really help the situation. And I can use the Camp Resolution as a perfect example. Camp Resolution was really something that was moving forward. And I strongly believed at that time, and I still do, that it was, it was going to turn into something very positive. On the 11th hour, the advocates decided to get involved. And I think as Mayor was kind enough to have a community meeting on this past Saturday, the surrounding neighbors want that camp to be closed down, because it's not working the way that we had hoped so. Why? Because the advocates got involved. So Camp Resolution, it started out great. But today, as I'm sitting here, no, it has many, many issues. That, no reason to discuss it in this forum, but I'd be more than happy to sit down with you, Councilmember Jennings, and have that conversation with you. With that said, Mr. City Manager, I do believe that if, if we're going to do this, there should be one person driving this vehicle. It can be you, the advocates, the activists, the nine of us. We did that for the past two years. And here we are today. I think that's one of the biggest issues that has got us to this point is that, that we all wanted to be the driver. And it doesn't work like that. If we have somebody that we say, you're in charge, then we have to say, you're in charge. You have four months to come up with some relief. Come back to us and report to us. So I do believe that, that our city manager, not that you want to be in charge on this, but in reality, we, because of your job, it's our responsibility to say, you're, you're in charge of it. That it comes with your territory, you know? I don't want to be in charge of it. That's not my lane. It is your lane. So I want to be very clear on that. But you did mention something that now, God, I'm a little bit concerned. As much as I want you to be the driver, but I'd like to interject. And the comment that you made is that we're going to look at all the properties that the city owns. Obviously, within the central city, there are very few, if any. Which that tells me, sends me the message that, well, we got to go to areas that the city owns most amount of properties. That is one of my, you know, my district definitely falls into that category. I think probably Vice Mayor, you fall in that category, and Mayor Protam as well. That, that, you know, does concern me a little bit, and simply because as I'm sitting here talking to you right now, I have one, two, three, four, five sites in my district as of today. And, you know, some are okay, some are not running the way they should be. I mean, you've heard residents come regarding the old science building. They're complaining about some of the activity that's taking place. You've heard the callers calling and going, hey, we're just getting so saturated in my district. So I'm a little bit concerned about that. And, you know, the comment that you made, which again, I support, saying, hey, if you guys want this to be done, then let me, let me drive this. Just give me the spectrum. Do you want it fast? Or do you want it, do you want it to happen fast? Or do you want to take some time? Whether we're going to spend, any of these sites, if we want to sign a contract with a third party, it's going to be $3, $4 million annually. Is that a roughly a fair?
It depends. If we have an operator, it's over, about, over $3 million bucks for 100 beds and, you know, and we haven't done the analysis on the parcels yet. I was waiting for the outcome of this.
I understand that. So I am concerned, because, you know, if you decide that I'm going to pick these sites, and seven of them, hypothetically, I'm not saying this is what's going to happen, let's say three of them fall in my district. Well, that becomes, again, an oversaturation. And I know I'm sitting here going, hey, you're driving the bus. We're going to let you drive and then come back and, you know, report to us. But at the same time, I'm a little bit concerned on how you're going to drive that bus, and how fast you're going to drive by certain districts. I do like to, based on that, I like to see if I can potentially propose a substitute motion. I know you don't like that, Mr. Mayor, but let me just tell you what it is.
There's not a motion yet, but tell, maybe you should make a motion, Sean, if that's true.
I think, I think, Mr. City Manager, I think you should be responsible for this vehicle. However, I think the council members, you should also take the time to have that conversation with the council members to say, hey, I found these sites in your, in your district. What's your thought? So we can have this conversation. So if, if I think, hey, that this is going to work good, then I want to have the opportunity to go back to my constituents and say, hey, I think this is going to work because of A, B, and C. Versus, we come in a, in a, in a public forum and say, hey, by the way, city of Sacramento, here's a list of the sites that the city manager has picked. Where now, you know, my constituents are going to go, wait a second. We're going to have eight locations in one district. Five of them are going to be self governing. So that's my concern. So if you could just elaborate on that a little bit, I would greatly appreciate it.
Well, I mean, under the scenario that I laid out, it was always my intention to reach out to the council members whose district it's in. So if there were three, five, seven, 10 in your district, I would say, these are the most ready to go. Like, within 30 days, we can get it to a place where it's ready to go. And I'd meet with each of the council member, whoever's district is in. But I think that the point that the mayor's making is that, you know, we go through all this, we do the, you know, the outreach, we have the advocates, we have the discussion. Another month goes by, and I go, you know, if we want to get this done, I'm sorry, this is where it's going to be. That's, that's the conversation.
That's right.
Right? And I just, my, my point earlier was just that I want to make sure the expectations are that if we have more of these conversations, that there's not also an expectation that happens in 30, 60 days. That's, that's all I was saying.
And again, my, my concern, Mr. City Manager, is again, when you look at the parcels that the city owns in our city, and I don't know about other districts, but there are quite a bit in my district. I'm talking about maybe 20, 30 parcels.
There are literally hundreds of parcels, and we're going to be screening them for those that are going to be most suitable for this. Large enough so there's economies of scale, not oddly shaped or used as, you know, for instance, water detention basins or water treatment plant expansions. Those, those things we can't use, just because we can't. But there's still going to be many parcels that are left. What I'm going to be doing is distilling those parcels to see, and just rank them for readiness, and have this council look at like a tier one, like a tier two, a tier three, and timelines that go along with it, and potential costs to go with it, whether it's the Camp Resolution model, or it's the Miller Park model. And then we match that with what our finances looked like at the time.
And I just want to be very clear that when, when we, I've heard Camp Resolution over and over today. That is really, as of today, that's not a model that we want to copy. Now, if we get back to the, the basics of that camp, where we had a vision, which I shared with you, and we can get it back to that, I think it might be a great model. And I still do believe that it has the potential of being a great model. But as of today, we cannot use that camp in as example, because it's just not performing as well as I would have hoped so. But we can fix it. That I'm not worried about. What kind of, oh, I want you to be a driver, but I want to know what sites you're going to pick from my list.
Of course you do.
It's like, you know, I'm a-
Welcome to the problem.
So will you at least, let me ask you, will you at least commit? Or, yeah, commit, that if a district has five sites, over 400 RVs, would you and your team consider that, hey, there's a huge oversaturation in this district? And let's try to see if we can get some of these RVs or what have you to other districts before I come back to this district and create more sites?
I will just say it this way, as a hypothetical.
Hypothetical.
Right? If we had a list of parcels that were ready to go, and all of them were in your, in your district, Councilmember, and you said, this is too much, and we need to take a look. And if you're wanting me to commit to say, we're going to skip over that tier one, and we get to tier two, then we're talking six months, six months to a year. So it really is, pick your poison, you know, I said-
I completely understand what you're saying, and I do agree with you. However, we do have residents in every district. We have businesses in every district. And my district right now, we are at the tipping point right now. Literally at a tipping point. And I want to thank my colleague, Councilmember Maple, who was kind enough to call me and say, hey, let's go drive throughout your district, and which I thank you so much. And we did. And at least I want to say maybe six or seven times, I heard, oh, wow. Oh, wow. Oh, has Coats, oh, wow. See, that's the stage we're in. So I'm a little bit uncertain on this, if I cannot get a little bit of a direction from you, that your office and the staff will recognize that there are certain parts of the city that are completely oversaturated. And unless we can find sites in other parts of the city to kind of move individuals or RVs to those sites to balance it out, all the weight is just going to fall on one or two districts. And I don't think, I really don't think that's fair to districts that are really vulnerable districts by themselves, that are underserved and underinvested. That's my only, that's my biggest thing. Otherwise, I'm all in on item number five.
No, I hear you. And I think I'll answer it this way. It's a conversation I had with the mayor on this, where is- Whereas, you know, if if we're saying that we want to spread as a highest priority guidance from this council that we want to have it have these sites geographically dispersed, it will drive the timeline. I promise you that. And so the expectation has to be different. And that's the only way I could answer the question. And Mayor?
I want others to speak. Let others speak and I'll come back to.
I'm going to stop at this point, but I'd like to save my time.
Yeah, of course. Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you, Mayor. As I know, this is National Night Out and all of us are already missing items that we have booked. I'm hoping we can at least finish by seven so I can make the dunk tank that Congressman Almi Bear is trying to dunk me in first. So so our last time, our last item, staff spent time developing protocols. They were thoughtfully created in alignment with the law and case law, protecting the health and safety of our city, critical infrastructure and our citizens. This item today, which causes me some concern, does not have the details that I'm looking for or details brought forward by a staff protocol that has the information that staff spent a lot of time on. Six of you have been discussing this item for two plus years. Three of us have not. We are new in this regard. There is always that saying that you know, Mayor, go fast, go alone, work together. We might get things accomplished. So it's a balance today of how fast do we want to go? Versus how do we want to work together to accomplish some things? So I have some questions that I have in my head when I look at things. What is our master plan on addressing unhoused? I can tell you I'm not in favor as much as I think the city manager is doing a great job of handing him almost a blank check to spend up to $5 million as stated in the resolution for whatever he thinks is the right idea. The citizens of Sacramento elected us, elected us to be council members, elected us to make hard decisions, elected us to be accountable. And if we're not, then the voters have a right to vote us out. They have a right to say, do something, do it more. So Mayor, I do slightly disagree with you. Money is an object. When you say money is no object, in reality, it is. What about our city employees? We are in the middle of negotiating with all of our unions. What about our 5,000 city employees and the money in the budget? So do we spend it all on the unhoused? Or do we look at what our city employees deserve? You know, on 8 million that you say is coming in with half, that's only 133 tents at Miller Park. We have over 4,500 people unhoused in the streets. And that's 133 Miller Park tents. I want to know, what is our master plan? Because money doesn't grow on trees. Where is our homeless audit? Where are we spending our money? And how much is it going to cost to implement things? The city manager's authority is $250,000 before it has to come back to the city council. Item four that we passed in the protocols gives the city manager budget authority up to 250,000. He doesn't have carte blanche. He has to come back to the council for accountability. However, I do agree with the mayor. We must do more for unhoused and we must expedite items. But how do we find that balance between a carte blanche and not enough details and too many details and stepping stones? And we never accomplish anything. So but we all know, and we hear it over and over, housing is a priority. And that's the upstream. Housing is the upstream. So I think it's fair that we start having a conversation of is it temporary shelters versus spending money on emergency rental assistance, which we know with SHRA works versus planning for long term affordable housing versus home key versus hotel vouchers? Because tonight, if we move forward with this, we're basically saying funding that comes in, our priority is temporary shelters. But I know SHRA is keeping people in their apartments because they are working specifically with their courts when people are up for court ordered evictions because there's a small amount of money. Isn't it better that we spend money there and keep people housed? There is no one right answer. We are in a horrifically horrible situation of do we help people on the streets? Do we help people in the hotels? Do we help people stay in their apartments? Do we build more apartments? We do not have enough money. But we need to have, and I agree, Councilmember Maple, a formal regional response on how to address the unhoused. We cannot do this alone. Because right now, we're going fast alone. I don't hear the county with us together. And I got to tell you, the city manager and the council members in 2021 passed a siding plan that was last updated in 2022. I hear you say some things, Mayor, and I've talked, but I don't think the public actually knows the who, what, why, when, where, other than a little bit of what we've talked about and why it it can or can't happen. So I am as drafted. While it is really no reflection on our city manager, I believe in accountability and I believe we have to have a holistic approach to this that I don't have because I don't believe in giving you authority on temporary shelters. Because I might say we need emergency rental assistance. That's more of a priority to me than this. And we haven't had that discussion, nor do we have time to really have that discussion tonight. So if the item moves forward as is with no amendments, then I am opposed because it doesn't talk about the master plan of how we're dealing with this. Because there are so many things out there that I need our auditor report of how are we spending the money that is the most effective of getting individuals off the streets or keeping them in the streets? Because our job is to make decisions based on data, not on emotion. I don't have the answer, but I'm willing to continue to list my colleagues.
Thank you, Councilmember. Let me turn it now to Councilmember. Did I just skip over somebody accidentally?
Yeah, I think you were going to call on me.
Mayor Protam Vang, Councilmember Telemontes and Vice Mayor Geta.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you so much for bringing forth this proposal. It feels like deja vu of Siding Plan One. And but Mayor, I do appreciate just your leadership. I think you get a lot of, you know, a lot of comments about, you know, we haven't made progress. But I know how hard you work and really try to move the city forward. But there's a lot, there's a lot of work that needs to be done because we have said it on this diet for every one person. We house three more enters our system. And so there's a lot of urgency and bold action that is needed to address what's happening. And I know my colleagues, the full council is fully committed to that. As I mentioned, and you heard it from Councilwoman Maple, she says at every meeting since the data came out that for every one person, we house three more enters the system. And that's absolutely true and we need a comprehensive approach. So I echo everyone on the comprehensive approach. But I think today's conversation right now on item five is really about how do we stabilize those that are living on the street? And at the same time, I will echo this because my colleagues all agree with me that we have to also do everything we can to keep our residents and our families in their home. That's a priority. I think it's not either or, we got to do it all, right? From focusing on our upstream intervention that prevents homelessness, access to affordable housing, making sure we got stronger anti displacement policy. And as a recent UCSF report shared that a difference of $300 to $500 can really make a difference to keep families in their homes. And so I hear all of that and I'm holding space for all of that. First, I just want to say on the safe ground piece because that's what we're talking about in particular is that I do support the concept of safe ground. I remember when we did our siding plan, you know, I was eager also to to get a safe ground ready to go in District Eight. And I understand the need for safe ground because again, we have to do everything we can to stabilize what's happening on our street. I want to uplift Miller Park, for example. While not perfect, and I know Councilman Valenzuela gets heat for this sometimes, we have seen some success with Miller Park, moving our unhoused residents really from the street to shelters to supportive housing. And so, you know, I just want to uplift that. I also acknowledge that that model in itself, I think, city manager, you share that it was like 3 million, 4 million, 3.2 million. And so I know the money is the issue. So I'm holding space for all of that because the mayor says, go forth and don't worry about the money. But I hear Councilmember Kaplan saying, we got to look at the money. And so I'm trying to hold space for all of that. I think for me, just while I support safe ground, I just have some concern. And Mayor, I know you're really good at finding common ground and you're not planning to make any amendments. But if you want to get votes, I know you're going to have to make some amendments. You're going to have to put the package together. But I think my biggest concern, one, is that if we are to do any safe ground in this city, and I also really appreciate that in your presentation because it wasn't in the report, that the safe ground should have basic necessity. I think that's really important. I think for any safe ground or any city authorized location, they have to have basic necessity, food, water, safety, and most importantly, wraparound services. If it does not have these things, I simply cannot support this vote. And I just want to just lay that out.
Can I answer that?
Sure.
If I may, because it's a key point.
Yes.
So first of all, I completely agree on the need for wraparound services. But remember, this is connected, as is everything, with the city county partnership agreement. And the county is legally obligated to provide those wraparound services. And so I don't think it would be fair, respectfully or right, to say that the city has the obligation to provide mental health and substance abuse services, which are, you know, maybe the most significant component of wraparound. That's the county. But here's what we all know, and it's again, just common sense. If we do safe ground and do it in the right way, we will have a much better chance of getting people help because there will be organized areas for people for the county to be able to come in. As opposed to what we're doing now, you heard Mario Lara, OK, this week, we're going to be at 29th, 28th and C. Next week, we're going to be at Alhambra and W. You know, we're going to, they're going to take some time to get around. But with safe ground, you have the opportunity to actually serve people in a much more effective and organized way. But that obligation is on the county. And you've already voted and supported the idea that they're obligated to do that. We just have to enforce that. And and maybe that should be, you know, compliance with the partnership agreement. Maybe it should be our next major discussion item.
Thanks, Mayor. I appreciate that. So absolutely, I agree with you that it's the county's responsibility on the behavioral health services. So hoping that MOU will, you know, kick in and we're going to lean on our county partners. But can I safely, can you safely say, Mayor and City Manager Chan? I'm looking at you. Is that, let's say that you were to expedite this and, you know, identify safe ground? Will basic necessity like bathroom, food, water, will that be provided?
So I know that the city attorney, the city manager, Mr. Marin is in the audience. I will say that there have been some positive and constructive discussions slash mini negotiation about how to define dignity, how to define basic dignity. And it's going to be a negotiation that Howard is going to have a center seat representing the city, maybe with the help of the city attorney. Because I'm going to back him on this, Mr. Marin, that we want to stretch these dollars as much as we can so we can get as many safe ground sites up as we can. And at the same time, if you heard my opening, my opening remarks, I said, yes, these sites have to have basic dignity. Let that Mayor Protam Vang be worked out by all the good people here in good faith to ensure that that definition is met. That would be my advice.
So you're saying that the vote needs to happen first and then we'll define and codify that?
Yes, because if we, because that's exactly what Howard's talking about. If we put this vote off in two months, this will bog down so badly, we will never get started.
OK.
Yes.
Thanks, Mayor. I appreciate that. I think defining and codifying that before the vote is really important for me. So let me let me sit on that and hear from my colleagues first. I'm going to process that.
OK.
The second piece about the proposal, and maybe you'll make an amendment after hearing from all your colleagues, is that the other pieces, and I think I heard this from Councilwoman Valenzuela as well and through your presentation, is that there is no form of, I mean, accountability is that if the council vote, we direct the city manager. But there's no timeline, there's no criteria. And I think for me in particular, that's just concerning because how are we as mayor council going to hold city manager Howard accountable if we don't have timeline and criterias for those safe ground? That's just something that I'm sitting with and trying to figure out, like, making sure. Because that's important to me, making sure we know timeline and criteria, which is very similar to what Councilwoman Valenzuela brought up in the conversation earlier.
Am I in that one?
Yeah.
Let me say publicly, we've referred to different, I think 30 to 60 days here. We got to get these things up and going. And that's going to be, that's going to, and right. So that's what I think, OK? And the criteria, again, negotiated with Mr. Marin and others. And we're going to work it out. I mean, there's got to be people, there's got to be some faith here and some good faith. If you want it all, you know, absolutely wired before we go ahead and try to do something that is vitally important, it's never going to happen. Look in the mirror, all of us, good faith, well intended. The more we put on him, the more this is not going to happen. And we're not going to make any progress. Finish.
I'll add on to that just for one bit. If we're talking a 30, 60 day timeline, if you if you want the accountability, if you set it at 30, 60, 90 days, whatever it is, that will dictate what level of services and how much engagement we'll have with the community when we cite these things. And so and just the more.
Fair enough.
You know, we have on there and the more, if we, for instance, I know we're not going to go there. But if we have an operator at one of the sites, it'll be three to six months because we have to do a bid process. We have to get people on boarded. We have to allow the operator to hire people because you won't have people at the ready.
I hear that. And I think the mayor mentioned in his presentation that we're not doing the operator model because we want to.
You can't afford it.
Yeah.
Right, right, right.
Thanks. OK, thanks for that clarification, Mayor. And I think my last piece is very similar to Councilwoman Laloli. We actually are in agreement on this. And Mayor, I have shared this with you before and I think folks have heard me heard me in previous meetings at that. What is utmost importance for me and what I heard from residents, especially in Metta View and in South Sacramento that has bear the brunt of really stepping up to play is that the distribution of the safe ground has to be distributed throughout the city. I think we heard that from the business end. So I do want to acknowledge and appreciate just, you know, all of y'all calling in and echoing that it has to be distributed throughout the city and also from the activists as well. And so I know for this proposal in particular, it does not require the city manager to unilaterally decide on the safe. Actually, it does give him authority, but it doesn't require that he selects sites in every district. And that's very important to me. If you're able to make amendment saying that, you know, the first eight safe grounds got to be in every single district, you absolutely got my vote on this. Because my biggest concern is really the red line and concentration of homelessness in specific neighborhoods, especially in neighborhoods that often have been left behind like Del Paso and Metta View. And I just want to just share because I think the the direction was also to have the city manager look at city property. And so I really want to uplift what Councilmember Valenzuela brought up on looking at private properties. Because last April in 2020, when this council was debating about putting on Measure O on the ballot, and actually, we debated and y'all voted to put it on the on the ballot. Councilmember Valenzuela and I shared a map showing like the 300 and 500 buffer zone that staff actually analyzed for the comprehensive siding plan. And that map shown how even that even with the 500 buffer zone, and maybe this might be different now. But I actually think it's actually more restrictive because we just did the city infrastructure. That when you do that overlapping, it actually resulted in land. And I know that you're going to present the data if this passes that the available land is really concentrated in North and South Sacramento, like just straight up. That's the reality, right? And I share the concern as it stands that, you know, whether that was Measure O, whether that's any resolution, even the one before we voted, that the lack of any strong language on any resolution or any proposal that does not require shelter and safe ground in each district for me is flawed. And I simply, that's my starting point, right? And if we don't have that, I want to do everything I can to ensure that, you know, this council fully understand that that is the collective responsibility of everyone. And so we can't even start with the fact that every single district will be required to have a safe ground. That is, yeah, that is where I'm starting from. So I I hear the importance of safe ground. I am in full support of it. Like during the siding plan, we had sites ready to go. I'll even talk about the RT, the Franklin Light Rail Station. I went to Deerfield Mesa Grande, my neighborhood association, who's probably out celebrating National Night Out, and they're going to watch us later. You know, we went through an intensive community conversation, right? Tough conversations about safe parking. And we were able to, you know, decide on good neighbor policy. And while, you know, some of the residents were really upset at our office, I wanted to push forth, move forward. But that plan never happened, right? And so, and I'm sharing that, because there is a genuine commitment from my district and my office and myself, that we got to do something short-term and stabilize what's happening on the street at the same time during the long-term piece. I understand that it's a comprehensive approach that needs to happen. But again, I think it's going to be really important that every single council member steps up. And if we're just only looking at city site, that's going to be really problematic. And so I just want to share that with you, Mayor. I think that's really important for me, to make sure that we have distribution throughout every single district when we're talking about safe ground.
I'll save my response for my close. Go ahead, Councilmember Telamontes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so people are going to be upset about the site locations that we proposed, just as people are upset of our failure and our institution's failure of homelessness, of having people on the street, behind our houses, in front of our houses, next to businesses. And we absolutely need to do more. But one of the most important things that we can do when addressing homelessness is have the best communication possible with our residents to explain how and why we're going through what we're going through, and working with them to help find solutions together. That being said, we do need sites up and running fast. But I do want to see that there are checks and balances, because ultimately, we up here who are elected have to be, have to live by that decision made by the city manager, who is our employee. He was not elected, we were. And we're accountable to our constituents. And to be honest, I feel like we're looking at a half-baked proposal, where a lot of us still have a lot of questions, because this was just posted on Thursday. And so we have to ask these questions on the dais in front of everyone. So there is, this is something I could potentially approve if I'm, with an amendment, but also with some, I have some questions that I'm asking right now that are lingering in my mind. And so, the city manager is our employee, and he can do anything that we direct him to do. We don't need to give him unilateral authority to spend up to $5 million to have him do more safe ground, like parking or camp sites. We can ask him to do that now, like this meeting, today. We don't need this resolution. But we do need community input. And we are a brand-new council, so allow us to identify the sites ourselves. We're brand-new districts. Like have that confidence in us to be able to talk to our neighbors and identify sites. Don't force this on us. We knocked on hundreds of doors, thousands of dollars, and we felt the frustration from the community. And it is a humanitarian crisis, and we see it with our own eyes. And doing nothing is not a solution, but neither is giving the city manager unilateral authority. So my question to the mayor and to our city manager is, where are we at looking at different sites? I mean, I know we have this, well, the siding plan from back then. Have we looked at any new sites in the last few months?
Well, we are looking at a new site in South Sacramento in conjunction with WellSpace. That's going to be a major site for half or so, give or take, of the manufactured homes that are coming from the state. We've now, the administration, the administration now has identified Lot H at Cala Expo. And so we have looked at other sites, of course, and we continue to.
How quickly can Cala Expo come online, and can we give...
We have no, we have no...
Support to the governor's office on this project?
It isn't, this is, there's a supply procurement issue, and so we do not have a timetable, which is one of the reasons why we're here today. Because these are difficult choices, but we, our 1,100 beds are full most every night, and we do not have other short-term options.
And then our budget sets our priorities for the year, provides direction to our city manager and our departments. So bringing this policy, like policy after adopting a budget is just not a good process in my eyes. So how does this work with revenue adjustments after we pass the city budget?
There's always mid-year, and we will come back and reconcile. Oftentimes, in fact, most of the time during my tenure, there has been additional money in mid-year. I also said that I have a good guarantee that we are, we have accounts receivable of about $8.5 million in terms of the bonus money from the last several runs of HAP. That's a start.
And we can borrow against that?
Yeah, we'd borrow against it, sure, why not?
Okay. And I guess I'd love to have it on the record, what would the process look like for this? I want to hear step-by-step on how it would be implemented.
It's as I discussed earlier, we would run an updated list of the vacant parcels citywide. There's several hundred parcels throughout the city, in all the districts. You know, I have Ryan Moore out here too, who's trying to help me with this a little bit. But the first screen would be, okay, what are those parcels that we cannot use? Because they are part of water treatment plants, detention basins, expansion of parks. And so you take those off the table. You start distilling all those things, those filters, until you get to those sites that are completely unconstrained, we have complete site control, and those fall into Tier 1. I don't know where they're at. We haven't run that report. And then you have this next tier that could, maybe it requires Caltrans, federal highway, the Water Board, flood control district, SMUD, PG&E, UP, all those things. That's going to take longer. The third tier is that you have all those things in Tier 2, but we don't have site control, because we have to acquire, you know, the parts of the parcel that belong to someone else. And so there's, it's very complicated. But again, for me, it's very, it's going to be very simple.
Okay.
What's going to be ready?
Okay, so this is why I'm having a really hard time with this. I have Joshua's House in my district, and this is a project that I support that's very necessary in this homeless crisis. And Councilmember Jeff Harris, who was here earlier, championed it. As soon as I came, became council member, the city, on your own good, or mayor, have done no good neighbor policy conversations with my community. So tell me, like, when is the last time, Mayor, that you went out to District 3 and had a conversation with the neighbors in my area?
I think every time you've invited me, I've gone to your community meetings. I've been to several, I think. I've been out to a number of Joshua's House meetings. That was a decision made by the council. And the way it usually works is that you live by the decision of a majority. That's what happened. And now, and by the way, I've actively engaged in trying to find alternative sites with the proponents and with the Twin Rivers District. No viable site has come up, which speaks to the very problem that we're talking about here today. You can talk all you want about, well, let's have a process to find sites. Guess what? I've been through this a number of times. And you know what you end up with, with a comprehensive siding plan? You end up with a lot of good motel leases and project home key. You don't end up with a single site. So I don't want to be here, excuse me, you asked me a question, six, nine, 12 months from now, with nothing to show for increasing our capacity beyond 1,100 beds, and with the public screaming for more relief for the people who are suffering, and more relief for our businesses in our neighborhoods. So if you have a specific suggestion about how to do this that will get good, a quick relief, please state it.
It's having more good neighbor policies. You can't set up a site without having good neighbor policies.
Why don't you add that to the motion? That would be appropriate.
Well, then that's perfect.
Good.
And so, you know, District 3 has a few projects that I'm really proud of. North Viewpoint, Vista Nueva, and Joshua's House Hotel vouchers. And I actually have two sites in mind that I would want to put up online. But all that requires community input. And I'm not passing anything on this dais without the blessing of my community. And if that means I'm going to go out there and talk and do more community conversations, that's absolutely what I'm going to do. But I'm not voting on something that doesn't require my input and my relationships with my community. So with that being said, I asked the city manager, so I'll make a motion, because Councilmember LaLolli made one, but there was no second. So I'll make the motion to ask the city manager to come back in two weeks, explaining...
He said he was going to make one, but never finished.
No one seconded it.
Never made it, so yeah, please make a...
There was no second, so...
Make a main motion, please.
I'd like to make the main motion to ask the city manager to come back in two weeks, explaining why the safe sites of 2021 did not, did or did not work out. And at the same meeting, have city manager identify sites in each council district for safe ground camping and RV vehicle parking for council to take expedited action with tier levels on how quickly they can be set up at all costs, with all costs associated with the site, and a good neighbor policy.
So second?
Okay, that's moved in second. We'll see if there's a substitute motion. But we have Vice Mayor Geta and then Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, you know, let me start off by saying again that Measure, start off by saying, Measure O dictated to this council, by the voters of Sacramento, an urgency to respond to this. It also set up a standard, even the $5 million number was a benchmark that was put in Measure O, with even dates for the public, for the city to respond to public inquiries of 20 days. That in itself tells the urgency that the public wants to removing encampments, to finding respite for folks, to cleaning up the city. So I think that's an important framework to think through this. And that's why I mentioned earlier that it would have been important for us to have this itemized, this dual conversation, enforcement with also capacity. And that's because whether this council, members who got elected to this council agree with it or not, Measure O dictates that to the city. And that's a matter of public law at this point. And to the point of this item here, now that we're talking about this, this is, as Councilmember Vang mentioned, this is like deja vu all over again. I mean, we had this conversation literally a year ago. And again, even before that, two years prior, three years prior, the city, we issued, this council, the prior council issued a request to the city auditor to also go out and find public sites. And there was an audit done about that area. So I want to set those points out in itself. So there's been public information, public output about locations and access to site. On the issue of cost, I haven't, I haven't known Councilmember, I mean, City Manager Chan to be a frivolous spender here, you know? If anything, we're always fighting with him about what to spend. But as a member of the Budget and Audit Committee, I feel comfortable, and Councilmember Telamontes and Councilmember Vang are members of that Budget and Audit Committee, so is Councilmember Jennings, have no objection that if this motion passes, or if this item, as the mayor proposed, passes, that we scrutinize that those expenditures and ask for that during that timeframe, and have a public hearing process about how that is done. But I will say that I agree with the mayor. If we continue down the path of layers and other obligations, and with all due respect, Councilmember Telamontes, you were involved at the staff level in those prior discussions. And you know very well where those items are. And so I would just say that this is not a new item. Now, is there public outreach that needs to happen? Yes. In fact, I'm engaging that on a private site, because District 6 doesn't have any viable real public land. We have limits of feet and squares here in that area. But I'm glad that we're working with a private property owner to try to find a location so that we have the capacity to enforce these areas. So I will say that, you know, and to my colleagues here, that as a member of the Budget Audit Committee, and I would ask the other members of the Budget Audit Committee, that if we don't see that the city manager is holding up his end of the bargain here of making sure that we're providing the level of security and safety, that we can call this item back. Five votes can give the authority, five votes can take it away. And so that's what I would tell my colleagues here, that we are in a position where we need to move quickly. But also, one, that we shouldn't let time go by, because we have an urgency. If we're going to make sure that we can withstand the suits and the lawsuits that the city attorney mentioned on when we're addressing any of these issues, then we have to make sure that we're doing our due diligence in providing options as well. As to the question about whether the county is meeting up to their end of the bargain, I'll put that onto the city attorney's office, that, you know, if the legally binding agreement, you know, isn't being held up to its standard, that we make sure we take action on that. That's why it wasn't an MOU. We made sure that it was a legally binding agreement between the city and the county, voted on by both entities in that partnership. And so I'll ask that of the city attorney and the city manager, to make sure that the wraparound services are provided, and that we continue those efforts. And I still have, you know, trepidation about the safe ground, you know, camp resolution process. I do, I feel that there are better options. But we are, what this resolution says is it's giving the city manager a wide array of solutions, including motels, which we've done before. So to that effect, you know, Mr. Mayor, you know, as much as I have trepidations about the safe ground model, and it does give the city manager options to look at different ways to provide respite so that our teams can go out there and actually provide an option, then I'm willing to make a substitute motion with a couple of points here that you mentioned, Mr. Mayor. Number one, you mentioned early on in District 6, I'm very proud of the work that District 6, including the Stockton Boulevard Partnership, the Power and Alliance, all of our major five neighborhood associations worked on the good neighbor policy and framework that now SHRA also uses a component of it, and the county's even used to be able to do that. That came out of the siding plan. Actually, the city council approved the framework of a good neighbor policy. So I want to make sure that that's part of it. To your point, Mr. Mayor, you also mentioned about buffer zones. I think the decision to have, you know, whether it was a Meadowview or WX Shelter, was an important decision to move forward. But I thought, I think where the failure happened in that, it was not enforcing around it. So immediate enforcement anywhere around these vicinity, I think, is an important factor for that. And in parity, if we're on a city-county boundary, because I know the site we're looking at could be in that situation, that we work in parity with the county on that, on the enforcement part of it. Yeah, so, and then finally, a directive to the city, just direction to the city attorney to continue to look at, at making sure that both on the obligation of wraparound services that they're being met. And we heard that from the county when they responded. And the positive thing is, the majority of the respondents, when they're getting the FSP, they're accepting it, when they're offered it and they're eligible. So I'll make that motion, that substitute motion, Mr. Mayor, to do that, buffer zones, and good neighbor policy.
Good neighbor policies.
And then there was another piece that I had brought up. Oh, the city attorney's office, yes.
City attorney's office. And the city manager would bring back the good neighbor policies and would include buffer zone in any of the sites in terms of the...
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
So I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor, and...
I could support those modifications. Second, by Councilmember Valenzuela, we do now have a substitute motion. Councilmember Valenzuela?
Thank you.
Then I'm going to close.
Thank you, Mayor, and I want to thank you for bringing this forward. The third attempt to get us to think of how to address this. You just, your tenacity is to be commended. You know, I know folks love to talk about District 4 and the central city a certain way. But, you know, when the siding plan was going on, I made a point of continuing to remind people that actually, the central city, and even more so when we officially include the River District, has most of the permanent supportive housing units, the transitional housing units, the shelters, the safe camping and parking sites. We, and I have the numbers to back that up. And I'm sitting here saying we need more. I'm saying here, saying it's not enough. Because I understand that without those options, that enforcement protocol that we just voted on will not only not work, as it hasn't currently not been working, it will criminalize people, because people exist in public spaces. They accumulate stuff. They get traumatized and victimized, and they start to act, get their own personal crises that start to affect themselves and the people around them. Like this is a predictable trajectory that we are on if we do not provide people with the basic physics of where to be. So I do hold nervousness, right? I mean, the city manager and I don't always agree on how to do this stuff, right? And so I'm like, oh no, what is this going to look like? But as was just stated by the vice mayor very clearly, he does work for us. And all of the other methods don't work. I know that this is a newer council, and I appreciate that. However, we were elected to solve these problems and continuing to try to rewind time, to go back and try again, something that we have tried not once, but twice. And I'm pretty sure at least another time or two before that. And expecting different results is not the solution. It's not the sense of urgency that our constituents demand. And when I think about Measure O, which obviously I didn't support, because I didn't think it would work, I think about all of the constituents who said they voted for it because they wanted more shelter. It was not, yes, they care about enforcement, but they, like, a lot of the people that I talked to care about making sure people have a place to go, because we're also seeing, as I detailed earlier, people getting moved back and forth and back and forth and back and forth. And they're like, wait a minute, this doesn't make sense. This seems really cruel. What are you doing? Let's solve the problem. So I think it's up to us to really monitor this closely. I think it's, it is an anxiety writing step, but it's something that I think us as leaders need to trust our staff. We are not capable, and I can say this as someone who was literally using Google Maps and parcel viewers to try to identify parcels in my district at one point. We are not, we are not able to do this without help from the city manager. That was the piece we were missing in the siding plan before. And so to have him be identifying sites for us is setting us up to learn from what has happened. And I just have to say again, because I know I'm defensive of Miller Park a little bit, and it's not just because it's in my district, it's because the numbers are clear. We set that up in days, we set WX up in 10 days. We did it at a fraction of the time, and for a fraction of the budget, the traditional shelter costs. And it is three times more effective at getting chronically unhoused people off the streets and into shelter or housing, or reunited with their family, or whatever is next. And we have the numbers to back that up. We have the numbers to back up that the 311 calls related to homelessness went down. We have the numbers, and we have the personal testimony by the fact that South Side Park Neighborhood is still showing up, saying, "We want safe ground," when they were the experimental bed of us figuring out how a city is going to engage in this with community partners. So I guess I cannot say strongly enough that I don't not hear the concerns about geographic distribution. Obviously, redlining is a horrible history in our city and across our country. We understand that. But not doing anything, or continuing to wait, or continuing... But not doing anything or continuing to wait or continuing to talk, especially when seven people on this dais just voted for an enforcement protocol, is simply not an option tonight. It is not an option. We've made this choice. We have got to follow it through. And with that, I'm happy to support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. We do now have two other colleagues that want to speak. I am going to close because I do want to respond to some of the arguments made by my colleagues. I got Councilmember Kaplan and Laloey.
So I've, I've heard my colleagues. I hear what you're saying. I just want to make it very clear. I do support Safe Sites. I do support items that work. I just don't support how this is being presented today. And that's why I supported Councilmember Talamontes' second motion, because I'm not asking to create a new process or go back to the siding plan. I'm just asking for a pause for a couple more details so that we understand, because this is our job of accountability. And, Mr. Mayor, I will have to say, I hope you take time to go back and look at the video. I know this is a very passionate issue, but I do have to disagree with how you cut off Councilmember Talamontes when she was talking. We have to respect each other, and it is about listening to each other and, and, and not cutting each other off because I was offended by how you were treating her. And that is important for me to say to you because we, as women, need to stand up when we feel that our opinion is not being valued and heard for what it is. So it's okay that we agree to disagree, but I want to make it very clear that while I trust council, our, our city manager, I do support Councilwoman Talamontes in the balance of how do we have accountability. But I also go back to, we have to do more, but what does more mean when we don't have a plan and how we're spending the money? And I don't support the unlimited use of money and going into our reserves. And that's why I'm voting no. It's not that I don't believe we can't do good things with safe shelters. I just don't think this is something that is, is presented to me in a way that I, I can support.
Thank you. Councilmember Laloey.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Valenzuela, I, I hear you. I, I think, yes, we, we have to make decisions that are outside the box, especially right now with passing item number four. So these two do go hand in hand. However, my concern is literally looking at the history of City of Sacramento and the decisions that have been made when it comes to District Two. This item number five, the writing is on the wall. The list of the properties that will come to the council, majority of it will land in District Two without any kind of benefit, investment, or any of that. And, and we did this with, when cannabis became legalized. You know, a heavy concentration in exclusively two districts, two and six. We made promises to those residents that you get all these wonderful, you know, tax, you know, some of the revenue will come to the district. We're going to see changes. None of that has happened. So as much as I am for safe parking or facility that we can bring this vulnerable community in a much safer area, and really, that's the way to do it because there's an option. You're either outside on the sidewalk or if we can bring you in an environment that both you're safe and the community is feeling safe as well. But because I know the end result, which is going to be the, the heavy weight of this item number five, would definitely, without a doubt, fall on District Two. I cannot support item number five unless there's a clear direction from our city manager that at least we can look at other districts and what's available in those that have almost one or zero facilities within their district. Before we come to districts like District Two, I, I cannot support the item number five. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for a very spirited discussion. First, on the personal, the Councilmember Talamontes, if I interrupted you or was rude to you in any way, I apologize because that's never, never my intent. I thought you were asking me a question, and I thought I was answering your question. And if I didn't let you finish the question before I answered it, then I apologize. I do my very best around this dais to respect everybody, and I do, and try to create a civil atmosphere where everyone can participate. And I think by and large, I do a pretty good job of it. So if I, if I didn't.
I appreciate that, and I know this is a very passionate subject for all of us because I know we're all frustrated.
So I thought you were asking me a question, but I, I, I'm sorry. So on the, on the issue itself, so homelessness is complicated. And your jobs and my job, all our jobs as elected officials are very complex. We have to balance a lot of things. And so, you know, you want to talk about getting a little hot tonight. I got a little hot with the city manager at one point, as you remember. And, you know, that's sometimes what friends do. So it was equal opportunity passion here. And so I want to, I'm going to challenge him again here in, in a, in a, in the spirit of friendship and, and, and great results. I want to encourage you again to, I support Eric's motion. I cannot support a strict 100 times eight, as Mayor Protem Vang suggests. We tried that before. In fact, I left that out of one of the chapters. That was chapter, chapter something back in 2000 whatever. I, I cannot support that because that, it will bog down, and it, the, the end result won't be possible. However, city manager, I urge you, when this passes tonight, which I think it will, to also listen very carefully to the members who opposed the motion. In this sense, I know you say, I know you say that if you want to do this in 30 to 60 days, then, you know, I'm paraphrasing, then don't, don't speak about geographic diversity. And I want to challenge you, without changing the motion in any way, I want to challenge you to do your very best to try to accommodate all of the things that are being asked of you, because that's the nature of your job, and it's also the nature of this problem, frankly. The expectation is that, yes, you get this up and going within 30 to 60 days, that you consider, that, that, that you consider doing this in such a way that creates dignity. And again, we've talked a little bit about what that means. And that you do your very best, you do your very best to try to achieve some form of geographic diversity. And those may seem irreconcilable to you, but here's what you're really being asked, Mr. City Manager. You are being asked to use your skills, your experience, and simply this, to do your best. Just do your best, okay? And that's the faith we're actually putting in you. And I don't think it's impossible for you to achieve some form of geographic diversity. I don't. I do not. I don't want to put it in the motion, but I'm saying it here because Sean Laloey makes a darn good point. I know most of those Tier One sites are in North Sacramento or in South Sacramento, but guess what? There's Tier Two. At least we ought to be exploring how quickly we can get Tier Two or the private site or whatever other sites are there. At least we ought to try. So I want us, I want you to, one, feel the confidence that the members are, are showing in you here, number one. But number two, to know that this is a very tough task and to do your very best. That's all we're asking. Call the roll, please, on the substitute motion.
Councilmember Kaplan?
No.
Councilmember Laloey?
No.
Councilmember Talamontes?
No.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Maple?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Vang?
No.
Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. The motion passes five to four. Thank you all very much. If there's nothing else to come before the city council, we are adjourned.